Good morning, everybody. We welcome you to the September twenty ninth, two thousand and twenty five meeting of the Calver County Board of Commissioners. At this time, I'd like to ask Reverend Turner if he would give us an invocation, please.
May we close our eyes and bow our heads. Father God, we thank you for giving us this day to lift up your holy name. We thank you, Lord God, for the breath of life. We ask, Father God, for your hand to be on this Board of Commissioners, all of our leaders and those who are in authority, for we know that you have created all authority, and that those who are in authority are your servants. So we pray for your servants today, to give them wisdom and knowledge, to be men and women of character and integrity, to uphold your truths and your values, Lord God, and to obey your word. We pray for our men and women in uniform, our emergency responders, and we pray for our police officers and firefighters, those who are willing to sacrifice themselves for our safety and freedom. We lift up all of our teachers, educators, and everyone who is in the school system. Please guard our children, watch over them and keep them in the schools, whether they be at home or in a public school or in a private school. We pray that the angel of the Lord would surround them and guard them. And now, Lord God, bless this meeting. We pray, Holy Spirit, that you have your way as you continue to lead and guide the people of Calver County in all truth and righteousness. In Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Reverend Turner. Reverend Turner comes to us from Brooms Allen Church today, and he's new to Calver County, so we want to welcome you. It's a great community, as you'll find, as long as you stay here, and we welcome you back here anytime. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we do have some special guests in the audience today. Some of them we're going to get to a little later, but I do want to recognize Superintendent. If you have anything you want to say.
Good morning. Thank you for this opportunity. I realize you have a long agenda, so I just want to greet you. I'll do this.
He's a professional.
Thank you. So as I've shared with several of you, that my family and I moved to Calver County several years ago because of the reputation of the school district for our grandchildren who are students in the school system, and I just happened to be living here when the call came out for someone to step in to fill the gap as superintendent. And so over the last several weeks, I can't tell you how humbled I've been by the reception that I've received, not only from you, but from our teachers, our students, educators, and members of this community. This is an amazing community with an amazing school system, but we have a lot of work to do. We have to roll up our sleeves and continue to make our schools even better so that we can provide a quality education. I think you all know the power of a strong school system. It builds the economy. We have healthy citizens, healthier citizens. Our property taxes are up. We have less dependence on social services and government when we have a strong school system. And so I thank you for your support over these many years supporting our schools, and I just want you to know that we're ready to work hand in hand with the Commissioners, the School Board, and our staff and this community to make our schools even stronger. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you. Just want to officially welcome you here, and we've heard great things, so we appreciate all you're doing to improve our schools. It's a big job.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right, the first item on the agenda is to approve the agenda. Is there any additions or corrections to the agenda as presented?
I have none.
I have none. I move that we approve and adopt the agenda submitted.
Second.
A motion of second to approve the agenda as submitted. Is there any discussion on that motion hearing? None. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. First item on the agenda is public service announcements. We do have a couple this morning. Last week was the Calver County Fair, and as always, it rained. Luckily, it only rained one day instead of all four, as I think they were calling for at one point in time. But, you know, a Calver County Fair has been going on since eighteen eighty-six. It's got a very long tradition here in the county. It's a great activity, but it wouldn't happen without volunteers. That fair, people don't know, the fair is run completely by volunteers. So I want to thank all those volunteers that work so hard all year long to keep the fairgrounds in order and operate the fair. I want to thank all the people that came to the fair, all the vendors that made it successful, and on Saturday night had a very successful 4-H auction.
Yes.
How much did the hospice pig bring?
It was right around twenty-nine thousand dollars for hospice. It was outstanding.
So if you don't know, every year, a young person in 4-H raises a pig, and they sell it, and all the proceeds go to hospice. So, and Commissioner Ireland's sons started this, good lord, eight, nine years ago?
Either eight or nine.
Yeah, yeah. So that's, I think it's the biggest fundraiser hospice has in the year.
It's in the top three every year.
And it's a great, if you ever have a chance to be there on Saturday night, you should go and watch it. It's very, it's very rewarding to watch the auction of the hospice pig or the auction in general.
The auction in general. A lot of members of the community are there doing their thing and giving back to the community, which without them, it wouldn't be what it is.
Well, a lot of people in the community will buy an animal, and then they donate it back. So it gets sold, an animal might get sold three times, and the child gets all that money. And the hospice pig gets sold eight times?
At least eight or ten times this year.
And one man, one man probably bought it five times.
I bet he spent twenty-five or thirty thousand dollars there total with all the kids.
Wow. So this one individual from Prince George's County comes every year, buys a lot of animals from kids, and then the hospice pig, he'll buy that thing three quarters, however many times it's sold, he'll buy it three quarters of the time and donates it back every time to resell. And I think the first time he bought it, he paid twenty-five dollars a pound for it, and then he just kept buying it.
He did. He was betting against himself at one point, I think, just to get the number up where he wanted it.
So we are very happy to have this individual from Prince George's County come to our fair every year and support our 4-H kids. I don't know if he wants his name mentioned or not, but I'm not.
And there are other companies too, as well.
Yeah, local companies, yep, that come out and support the kids at 4-H. So I want to thank all those people that work so hard at the fair.
And one thing to bring up, one thing to bring up as well, a lot of people think that we run the fair. The fair is its own entity. It's its own corporation, because, you know, a lot of people come to us and say, why don't you do this? Why don't you do this? Well, reach out to the fair board. I mean, they're receptive. That's how they're going to learn as well, so. But just, just so there's that distinction, that we do not run the fair.
I did buy a pig. Young, young lady there this year, this was her last year at eighteen. You can't be in the 4-H auction anymore. She cried the entire time she was in the ring with her animals, because it was her last time. Generally, it's the first timers that cry, because they know it's the last time they're going to see their animals.
Yes, I can do it.
There were some of that as well. There was some first time.
Yeah, yeah.
If you had a farm, there'd be so many animals running around, it'd be crazy.
You can't name them. That's.
Ah, yeah, yeah.
But if you ever get a chance to come to the 4-H auction, you should come. It's, it's very, very rewarding. And just want everybody to know that starting tomorrow, October, or starting, yeah, tomorrow, October the first, no, that's not tomorrow. Starting October the first, public access to Calver County Government Public Meetings through Zoom will be discontinued. Public meetings access will continue to be available virtually by Microsoft Teams, in person and by phone for public comment. Meetings will also be available to view live on Comcast Channels ninety-nine and ten seventy on the county YouTube channel at www.youtube.com/calvercounty.gov/streets. So this, this change is a cost savings for us. It will help our platforms perform better and allow more accessibility to the public. Just a reminder that starting October the first, they won't be on Zoom anymore. It'll be, excuse me, on Teams. We do want to welcome back, the Battle Creek Nature Center recently hosted its reopening after being closed for nearly three years due to a fire. Celebration included exhibits, guided tours, ambassador animal meet and greets, and arts and crafts. We encourage you all to visit the reopened nature center, which has been a cornerstone of the environmental education in the county. And that brings us to the animal of the week. I see we have multiple animals this week. So those who knew to our meeting, every meeting, we bring in an animal from our shelter for adoption, and until we meet the next time and have another animal, these are free for adoption.
Good morning. I did bring a duo this morning. These are two of seven of a litter. They came to us about four weeks ago. They were about three weeks old when they came, so they're about eight weeks now. They've been in foster, getting big enough to hopefully be spayed neutered soon. They're still a little bit too small. They are able to be like foster to adopt, so they can be fostered until they are fixed, and then they can be completely adopted. At that point, where are you going? This one is always on the go. So this is our litter that we got from, I think we named them after Charlotte's Web. So the mom was Charlotte. This one right here is Fern, and this one is Avery. Like I said, we have five others that are also in foster. Couldn't bring all seven, but, but yeah, so like I said, they are available for foster to adopt. I think they are scheduled for their spay and neuter in about a week or so. Hopefully, they're up to wait by then. They're very playful, very sweet. Once they get their energy out, they love to cuddle. They'll just curl right up. These two are in foster with one of our employees. So, but yeah, come on down. I think we've reached another kitten season. It like just keeps hitting us. Usually, it's the beginning of the year. We're at the end of the year, and we're at another kitten season. We have quite a few, not just this litter, but we have others. So come on down. We have older hospice cats too that need a place to go for their, the ending of their life. They deserve a home versus a shelter, so. Very sweet guys. We have lots of dogs. Still, we have some younger ones, some older ones. Where are you? You're just kidding me.
She's a climber.
Very much. I'm just nervous she's going to get loose and run around in here. That'll be fun. So yeah, come on down. If you can't adopt, foster, volunteer. Donations are very helpful, too. I say we take pretty much anything. The only thing we don't take is open food. But other than, yeah, any, any help is warranted. You know, we really appreciate it.
Shelter full?
We're not quite full. We have quite a few cats. I'd say in the last week or two, we, we got quite a few cats in. Dogs were not quite full yet, but we're, we're getting there. Like it, it kind of, I feel like we've gotten more out than we've had come in recently, which usually is not the case, so that's good. But yeah, we're, I'm sure we'll get there, so.
So if you're not familiar, the shelter is on two thirty-one down by Hollin Point Park. They're at the bottom of the hill. So you stop in, volunteer, donate.
Come walk some dogs or cuddle some kittens.
Yeah, it's good therapy.
We had a Girl Scout group just recently too donated our, they built us an agility course for out in our big play yard. So we have that out there for the dogs to play on, so. They're loving it. But yeah, come on down and volunteer and.
I wish our hearts hoping you have a snake for adoption, but.
We haven't had one in a while, but I, I will, I will get my nerves, you know, I'll, I'll conquer it to bring it in. I'm not a snake person, or I'll have somebody else do it.
All right, these kittens are free.
Just leave it where it's at.
I can do that, too.
Yep, do that.
Yep, yep, I'm fine with that.
And these kittens are free for adoption until we meet again.
All right, we'll see you next week.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So the next item on the agenda is meeting with Department of Planning, Zoning, Maryland Department of Transportation Consolidated Transportation Program Tour. Madam Secretary, good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Welcome to Calver County.
So nice to be here.
It's wonderful.
Got a little bit of that feline therapy.
Did you have a good drive down?
It was wonderful. All the green lights, sir.
You know I don't believe that.
Okay.
Glad you brought those lights up.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I know where we're headed. I'm not seeing a green light here.
Uh-oh.
Katie?
Yeah, you're good.
You're good.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Well, good morning. Good morning, everyone. Samantha Biddle, Acting Secretary of the Maryland Department of Transportation, and thank you so much for hosting us here this morning to provide an overview of our draft six-year Consolidated Transportation Program, more commonly known as the CTP. With me today are several members of the MDOT team. They'll come up and join for individual presentations on what's going on in each of their modes, but we do want to keep our presentation and remarks very concise this morning just to encourage, you know, the question and answer part of the dialogue, which I think is always the most beneficial. We get to hear what's top of mind for you, provide you with those updates, what's on your mind, what's on the mind of your constituents and all the residents of Calver County. We do want to thank you for taking the time to visit with us down at the Mako Conference over the summer. It's always a good opportunity to, as I said, hear about, you know, what's going on and prepare for this meeting to make sure that we've got some of those answers to the questions that you have, and hopefully come along with some good news about projects that are moving forward here in the county. One of the things that we did discuss was the signal timing through Dunkirk and opportunities through Dunkirk and Prince Frederick to improve mobility through that corridor. And while we know that the longer term, larger infrastructure project does remain unfunded, our team at State Highway, specifically in the District Office, has made some additional adjustments there on the signals, and we're going to continue to monitor and see what we can do moving forward. We know that that is a top priority, and I think that Will and Kim can provide some more detail, and we can always be listening to where we can make some opportunities for advancement. If we do turn to the CTP document itself, I want to point out that the department is utilizing every dollar to make strategic investments in the Moore-Miller Administration's transportation priorities. Those three, top three priorities include enhancing safety, maintaining our systems so that it's in working order, and driving economic growth across the state. The draft CTP is an exciting follow-up to a very productive legislative session this past year, so we want to thank our partners in the General Assembly, along with the governor's leadership. Through this effort, we were able to secure approximately four hundred million dollars in additional transportation revenues annually. With these additional dollars, the department is stretching the funding by combining it with federal resources and financing options to turn four hundred million into an additional almost seven hundred million in annual transportation funding. Without these transportation resources, we would have sustained deepened cuts to transportation, and that is not what any of us are shooting for, and thankfully, that is not necessary. Instead, we can share that the draft CTP includes investments in Calver County and all across Maryland. Further getting into the details of the program, the program is balanced, six years at approximately twenty-one point five billion dollars, which is a modest increase of approximately three hundred million over the final CTP published this past January. The additional dollars are being used to take significant action to further maintain our system and keep it in working order, ensuring millions of Marylanders can get where they need to safely and reliably. Some of those highlights include enhancing safety at three intersections along Hollin Point Road and providing eighty-eight thousand dollars to the Tri-County Council for Southern Maryland to support a Safe Streets for All Action Plan demonstration project. The draft CTP also keeps highway user revenue funding at the current level through fiscal year two thousand and twenty-seven. I do want to take a moment before closing my portion of the remarks to just talk about how MDOT is serious about safety, and the draft CTP reflects this. We're going to continue to push forward, to expedite progress, and sharply bend the curve on roadway fatalities across Maryland. We are leading the way to deliver bold policy changes and projects needed to improve safety outcomes. We know that one serious injury and fatality on our roadways is just one too much. So I encourage you and your teams to join us and partner in these efforts. I will now turn the presentation over to other members of the MDOT team, starting with the State Highway Administration Administrator Pines.
Well, good morning, everyone, and thank you for having me. I'm Will Pines, Maryland State Highway Administrator. And unfortunately, our district engineer, Kim Tran, couldn't join me, but good news, we have our deputy district engineer, Karen Fiasco, who is here with me. As the secretary mentioned, we are serious about safety at State Highway, and on the Maryland two thirty-one corridor, we have thirty-two point five million dollars in safety projects planned at three locations. First being at Maryland two thirty-one and Maryland five oh eight, a project to add a westbound Maryland three thirty-one left turn lane that will complete design in two thousand and twenty-six, and construction is anticipated to start in two thousand and twenty-seven. Also, on Maryland two thirty-one from Toy Lane and Prince Frederick Road, a project to add a center turn lane is in design with construction anticipated to start in two thousand and twenty-eight. And then last but not least, Maryland two thirty-one at Skipjack Road will add a left turn lanes, bicycle lanes, and drainage upgrades. We anticipate the county's contribution towards the ongoing design, and construction is anticipated to be completed in two thousand and twenty-eight.
But you, just, do you know what the length of those projects might be at this time?
If you give me a second, I can look that up. If you don't mind, can I finish the remarks, and that way we can have Karen come up. We can get into the real weeds on it.
Okay.
I don't have all the lanes memorized, but I do have them where I can look them up quickly. This past year, in Calver County, SHA made slope and drainage repairs on MD two sixty north of Perrywood Lane and resurfaced southbound Maryland two from Cox Road and Maryland two sixty-three. Regarding something that I know you all care about deeply, the Thomas Johnson Bridge, SHA is continuing the ongoing underwater surveys to map the proposed replacement bridge alignment, and we are completing a navigation study to determine the clearances of the new bridge. We've received a letter from the Coast Guard inviting us to actually advance the permit, and they've assigned a dedicated resource for that process to be able to get that Section nine permit. Finally, I'm pleased to announce the Tri-County Council is receiving an eighty-eight thousand dollar grant for Safe Streets for All efforts in Calver, Charles, and St. Mary's Counties. And Karen and I are happy to answer your questions. I promise I'll look it up and come back on the project limits on two thirty-one, and we'll do that after the other speakers work through their remarks, and I'll now turn it over to Melissa Williams with the Maryland Transportation Authority.
Good morning. Thank you for inviting me to speak with you today. As Will said, I'm Melissa Williams. I'm the Director of Planning and Program Development at the Maryland Transportation Authority. With another busy travel season wrapping up, MDTA is working tirelessly to enhance safety at the Nice Middleton Bridge. In two thousand and twenty-five, MDTA police officers assigned to the Nice Middleton Bridge detachment removed twenty impaired and wanted fugitives from Maryland roadways. Concerning the key bridge rebuild, the rebuild team has accomplished more in one year than most projects of this magnitude have in five years. We began mechanical demolition of the remaining bridge and undertook vital pre-construction work to inform design, which has reached fifty percent. Still, there is much work to come in this once-in-a-lifetime project that is generating nationwide interest. As we advance bridge design, MDTA will be updating the estimated project cost and schedule. I'd like to thank you for your time and turn it over to Travis Johnston with MTA.
Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa, and good morning, everyone. I'm Travis Johnston, Local Transit Support Director for the Maryland Transit Administration. The prioritization of transit in the Moore-Miller Administration's budget ensures a bright future for transit in Calver County. A robust public transit system also means economic and social mobility. As you know, our locally operated transit systems are critical partners in providing transit throughout the state. MTA is proud to support Calver County by providing nearly one point five million dollars in grants to support your local transit operations, which includes preventative maintenance, the ride chair program, design and engineering funding for the new transfer station, as well as two new small buses. Thank you for your time. Next up is Administrator Neiser with the Motor Vehicle Administration.
Good morning. It's great to be here with you. Again, my name is Chrissy Neiser, Motor Vehicle Administrator, and I'm proud to report that the Waldorf Branch Office wait time continues to be five minutes for our second year in the row. Really proud of that. It is possible because of our great employees who prioritize efficiency and accessibility of our services. We do continue to encourage customers to sign up for our MyMBA account, where you do have access to over sixty different types of transactions to make it as convenient as possible. But we have turned Waldorf into a one-stop shop where you can access other government services in addition to MBA. And so that's really exciting for the residents who don't have to go other places, can come to the local MBA branch office. As part of our ongoing outreach, we conducted a mock crash at Calver High School and Northern High School and hosted impaired and distracted educational programs for young drivers at Northern, Patuxent, Huntington, and Calver High Schools. We also partnered with Calver Recs and Parks on a youth mentoring program to conduct interactive distracted driving and distracted passenger programs. And these are all really in the goal of Vision Zero, which the secretary talked about. We are committed to our partnership. As you probably are all too familiar with, we lost fourteen people right here in the county last year. The good news is the numbers are down this year. There are three people, but that's still three lives too many, and those are neighbors and friends and family. And so we know there's more work to be done. We are proud to, that we announced recently twelve point nine million in highway safety grants. Those go right into the communities for law enforcement. It makes such a difference with that partnership. We are in the process of updating the state plan. That'll be completed by the end of the year, and we'll continue to work with you going forward. But thank you for the collaboration, and up next, we have the Maryland Aviation Administration.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you so much, Chrissy. Hello again. My name is Ashish Solanki. I'm the Director of the Office of Regional Aviation Assistance with the Maryland Aviation Administration. Pleasure to be with you again this morning, brief you on our aviation program and support for our tri-county area and airports here. The Maryland aviation system, as you well know, plays a critical role in supporting travel, tourism, as well as commerce. We have 33 public use airports, not counting BWI Marshall, and those airports across the state, they create jobs. They connect our residents and, of course, provide business and global reach and opportunity to our citizens. These airports, the 33 airports I just mentioned, they generate over $1.4 billion in economic impact. That's not counting BWI, by the way. And also generate over 10,000 jobs. These are direct jobs impacting our communities. And so the MAA is supporting these airports through our statewide aviation grant program. This is a grant program that supports the safety initiative with our runways, taxiways, apron areas to make sure these airports are safe for our public. This year, we're supporting $3 million in this grant program and as we go and support all of the airports across the state of Maryland. Brief, but I want to turn it back over to Acting Secretary Biddle for all of your comments and questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ashish. Thank you all. Really, that wraps up kind of our prepared remarks. I can turn it back to Administrator Pines, who I'm sure has the details ready to answer your question, Commissioner.
I do, thank you. So appreciate your patience while I'm pulling it up. So again, there's three projects there. The first I'll talk about on Maryland 231 is from Prince Frederick Boulevard to Toy Lane. That's the exact limits that we show for the project limits. There were public meeting boards that were prepared in May of last year, and all of this information is on the website, so we'll be happy to follow up with the link so you can look at it in more granular detail. The intersection of Maryland 231 at 508 does extend just beyond the actual intersection itself. It goes, as a point of reference, I don't, there's no route right there, but there's a couple of landmarks. One being to the east of the intersection is Guy Motors of Prince Frederick?
Yeah, that's up at the old gas station.
Yep. So that's one end of the project. And then just west of the Howling Point Park is the other limit of that improvement. So it's going to be the focus on the intersection, but there's resurfacing and other work that extends beyond that. And similarly, the project limits extend beyond the intersection at Sixes Road for the improvements there at 231. But happy to provide the exact graphics that show the full limits.
And the project at Toys, that's going to go down past Yardley Hills, right? How far west is that going to extend that turn lane?
What's shown in the details right now is to end at Toy Lane, but if you feel like there's more that needs to happen a little beyond that, we can...
But there's a, there's a townhouse subdivision back in Yardley Hills, which is probably another 100 yards past Toy Lane.
100 yards past it.
You should probably, if you're going to do that project, you should probably look at that as a little extension. I know it's not little probably financially, but...
Lot of accidents on that right-hand side of the road.
Because it's the same issue. A lot of people making that turn.
You have two more crossroads there. It's almost identical to Mason and Toy.
Yeah. No, the Knowles is on the north side of 231, and then Yardley Hills is on the south side of 231. Like I say, it's, I don't know, it's not very far past Toy Road, maybe 100 yards. I thought, because I always thought you were going that far.
No, it stops right at the Dusmecko substation.
Yeah. So if you wouldn't mind?
We could take a look at that.
Definitely.
While you're there doing. I know it'll probably, who God knows what it'll cost, but it would be important.
Now, we can certainly take a look at that, kind of follow up as, you know, now's the right time to have a conversation, so...
And that's scheduled for '28?
So there's three projects there.
Yeah, the first one is Adelina Road, 508, and then Toy, and then Skipjack.
Correct.
And the first one is in '27, '28?
Construction's starting in '27, then the Toy to Prince Frederick will be '28.
Twenty, okay. That'd be '28.
What's the length of each of these projects? Timeframe of start to finish?
Duration, we're still in design and don't want to...
No, no, just, just...
Just so people have an idea how long the construction's going to be going on. We've got plenty of time for that.
Well, we will definitely have a project schedule that we'll be able to communicate for each one granularly, but let us look at if there's new scope to add and other things. We want to make sure we know what we're building before we give a schedule.
Well, especially on that one, because you choke down and you get, you know, choke down three times and...
So widening issue.
Yes.
Yeah, so as soon as we kind of progress through the design phase, we'll have a better sense of construction duration and can obviously work with you to understand the best ways to maintain traffic during construction. The State Highway Team always does a tremendous job of working with local governments to understand, you know, where there's school impacts, where there are, you know, communities that might be on a peninsula. We have a lot of those in Maryland as well, so, so full confidence in Will's team that they'll be able to work through that for you all. I also want to commend them and commend you all on kind of working through the partnership. These intersection projects are one I think we've talked about for a number of years. I think the thing that I appreciate the most about our dialogue is that really the focus has been on safety, and because we focus on safety and safety benefits of these projects, it's allowed the State Highway Team to identify the right resources and the right pots of money to be able to get that construction going. So I just want to really thank you for the focus on safety with these and, you know, really excited that we're seeing them move forward.
Because 508, Adelina Road, that's going to start next year. '27.
That, '27.
You talking about fiscal years or?
I feel like he's giving me an exam here.
That's my job.
No, this is calendar year.
Calendar year, all right. So that's a little longer than we thought. Because it makes a difference, fiscal year and calendar year. So that's calendar year '27.
Correct.
Okay, so that's two more years. And that project, do you know what that's going to cost, just so public understands what all these things cost?
I don't have the cost with me.
You don't have a cost estimate?
I have our current, I do. I have our current estimated cost for the Toy Lane to Prince Frederick Boulevard is just over 14 million. The intersection at 508 is estimated at 13 million, and the Skipjack Six Road is just over 5 million. So we will certainly be continuing to update our cost estimates for inflation and everything as the project progresses, but as the secretary mentioned, we've been using highway safety improvement program funds to support these projects because of the safety focus.
I just want the public to understand, these aren't cheap projects. You know, they don't understand why you're not just doing them and, you know...
A lot of things that we used to be able to get done for a six-figure sum are now well into a seven-figure sum, and so that really is why these conversations are helpful. So if there's an opportunity to, you know, mobilize once and kind of capture some of the additional scope that was discussed, we can certainly look at the potential for that. So that's why these conversations are really beneficial. As Administrator Pines noted, we do maintain project portal sites for each of these projects, but given the interest and knowing that they're kind of all tethered together, we're happy to work with, you know, your body and staff to understand if there's a good cadence for doing some additional outreach, sort of the 231 project newsletter or something like that on, you know, quarterly basis or something, just to make sure that, you know, we're not just relying on people coming to us that we're bringing the information out to you all as well, so we can have a follow-up dialogue to determine the best way to keep those updates coming.
As we get closer, we just want to communicate to the public what's getting ready to happen so they can plan ahead.
Exactly.
There may be their own projects they want to do that they might want to delay, so it is important that we know when they're going to start and how long the duration is, so the public has some idea of what the impact's going to be for them, and they can make adjustments. That's why we ask, so...
So keeping on safety, you want to go to a crosswalk?
Sure.
So we have identified another crosswalk right there in Prince Frederick on Armory Lane, which we do have a housing project across the street and new businesses on the other side of the street. So it would be Armory Road. I think we have one already identified at Cherry Lane, and that would be the last one that we would have in that...
Prince Frederick.
Prince Frederick.
That's the new light at the shopping center.
Yep.
You can follow up on that, Karen.
Yep.
All right. We'll follow up with you on that one.
Thank you.
And the crosswalk, while we're talking about crosswalks, Dunkirk?
Dunkirk.
I thought we had gotten approval for that. I just didn't know what the timeline was. And I can't, the name of the road, it's Dunkirk Park.
Town Center, Town Center Boulevard. Maryland Fort Town Center Boulevard.
Yeah.
Yep, so we have that one that has been approved for installation, and we currently have it in design, and we have to do some signal modifications. There's a little bit of geometric modifications that need to be done because of the drainage in the median, and so that is currently in design and has been approved, and we're anticipating construction in the summer of '27.
Oh, that's great.
Yeah, we appreciate that, because that park, the kids go across the street to McDonald's, and they're always, you know how that goes.
Yep.
So we'd like to provide them a safer option than just starting through the traffic, so... We appreciate that. '27 fiscal or calendar?
Calendar.
You operate on calendar?
Well, not always.
Everything's calendar. Just trying to keep this straight. And so we've talked about funding, so 2027, what's the funding looking like for 2027?
For fiscal '27, I think that, you know, by that point in time, we will have, beginning to see kind of what the new sources of revenues and how they're coming in. Right now, we're basing a lot of things off of projections, so we're continuing to track how a lot of the estimates from last legislative session are going to come in in actuals. We'll start to get some of that data in as we go into early calendar year '26 to inform fiscal '27, but we're looking to kind of stay, continue to stabilize the program, everything that's in there right now, keep it advancing, sort of the, a little bit of a roller coaster that we've been through the last few years is what we're trying to avoid, and we feel as though the actions that were taken last session are going to allow us to, you know, continue with stability of a lot of the projects that we just talked about. Where we're still kind of monitoring with a conservative approach is in the ability to bring on new projects, so that's where we're going to look to continue to leverage federal dollars and to bring things on, you know, as we work them through, work them through the process. So we're looking stable with, you know, some opportunities for growth, but limited growth at this point.
Good. And just to follow up on Thomas Johnson Bridge, we talk about the bridge every time we meet, but you are getting ready to do, have a planned project there that's not going to replace it yet, but at least it's part of the process towards replacing it.
Taking the steps forward. I know that's something that was really important to Administrator Pines, to be able to have, you know, a solid work plan underway, so I can let him kind of restate with a little bit more detail perhaps.
So the public can hear what we talked about?
Exactly.
Sure. So as you may recall, we had received a million-dollar earmark, and then the state matched that. That earmark took us a while to get obligated through federal funding processes, but we now have that in place, and so we've opened up the permitting process with the Coast Guard. We've received their letter. They've assigned the project officer who's going to be supporting that. The next steps, we're in the process of procuring a solar-powered mast height measurement system to install on the bridge that will actually monitor all of the vessel traffic underneath and actually tell you exactly what their heights are, and that will help to inform the navigation study. That study, we anticipate having the draft report prepared in the spring of 2026, at its calendar year, in case there was any question there, and finally expect submitting the actual application to the Coast Guard, which will make that what they call preliminary determination on the height in the summer of 2026. That is a forward progress on the funding that we have dedicated. Beyond that, we're also doing what's called hydrographic surveys or bathymetric surveys to measure the depth of the water and the soil conditions underwater. If there are any remaining funds, once those two activities are complete, and some of that will depend on the complexity of the navigation termination, if those, if there's any funds available, we will utilize those to do geotechnical investigations to classify the soils.
And just for public consumption, the bridge is safe, correct?
Correct. We inspect it regularly. Based on those inspections, the bridge is rated in fair condition, still safer than... We like to tell the public regularly, if the bridge wasn't safe, it wouldn't be open.
And you inspect under the water, too?
Correct. Yeah, we do, we do those hydrographic surveys that are ongoing, but beyond that, we have regular dive inspections where we send folks out to go underwater on a four-year basis.
And you'll have to correct me if I'm wrong in my memory, but the bridge was designed for like 25 or 3,000 vehicles a day, and today there are how many vehicles crossing that bridge?
I don't have the traffic counts in front of me for the bridge, but...
I think it's like 27,000?
That's right, 30, I think.
Yeah, it's getting close to 30,000, so...
Certainly, though, we see statewide, there are a lot of bridges that have functional obsolescence issues where the, they're more narrow than the volume of traffic can support. We see that kind of regularly, a lot of bridges, but that, you know, from a structural standpoint, usually bridges in the older code were designed for loading that's forecasted for 50 years ahead. So again, the bridge is safe. It does have a traffic issue, and we know that that's the key driver in the near term, and while we're advancing, we've completed the NEPA, and we're advancing the preliminary engineering line right now.
And, excuse me, I wouldn't be doing my job if I didn't ask, so, I mean, we have asked for years, we know there's no plans to replace it in the near future. It's strictly fiscal, but is there any expiration date on certain things like that? You know, is there a time where a bridge is deemed it must be replaced? I mean, is there any light in the tunnel? I can tell you, my folks down there, the frustration level on a daily basis is epic about that bridge. So if I, is there any tipping point to go, well, you know what, it's never going to make the CIP? There's just every project that's going to keep bumping it. It's all fiscal. I mean, if all of a sudden you guys hit, you know, billions of dollars lottery-type thing, okay, you'd build a bridge tomorrow. I get it. I know it doesn't rank enough, but is there a time span that goes, well, this thing can only be here X amount of years, and it must be replaced? Does that exist?
No.
So it could go 300 years. If it's standing and you guys deemed it safe, it could go 300 years.
The way to look at this is if you look at like Brooklyn Bridge in New York, right? This is a monumental structure that's had significant billions of dollars of investments over many years in order to keep it safe for the public. Is that the best way to invest your money, to spend a lot to keep an old thing going? Most would say no, and that's not how you operate your car or many things that you deal with in life. However, as you're pointing out, the capital investment at one time to do a major bridge replacement like this is significant, and so the key timeframe driver is really how do you put together a financial plan that works? We can continue to invest in maintenance. Sometimes, though, the maintenance activities, deck replacements, superstructure replacements, the traffic impacts from that operation become so extensive that it kind of tips you over the balance and puts you into where you're starting to say it really just makes sense to replace it.
Well, sure. I mean, because as Commissioner Hans was saying, it was never intended for the use that it has now. I believe it opened in '78, '76?
Seventy-seven years ago.
Something like that. The population wasn't there. Nobody could foresee the population explosion. So, you know, adding money to something that's non-functional, obviously, like you say, is just, it's not the way to go, but for the folks down there, they're just so discouraged because, I mean, we don't have the numbers here. I mean, let's face it, we're competing against PG and Montgomery County and Baltimore for dollars, and the brass reality is it's politics. We're 90,000 people, you know, and however many is in St. Mary's. So, I mean, barring that thing falling in the water, I tell folks, I don't know how it'll ever get replaced.
I don't want to make it more complicated, but this is a statewide challenge. It's not just a Thomas Johnson Bridge. We have Maryland 90, we have US 522, we have US 11, and I...
Oh, I know, we rank in the bottom.
About major, very costly bridge structures that have the same challenge statewide. So I don't want to, like, look at, to think that the state is looking at it like, well, you're not in the right county. It really is just how do we figure out a way to manage the cost of such a large structure and the similar structures statewide?
And compared to Howling Point, 1952 was built.
We talked about that bridge at Mako, too. We've been doing some work on it.
Got a lot of history lessons there.
Just for rumor clarification, what's the likelihood that that bridge will end up being a toll bridge when the state does replace it?
to manage the cost of such a large structure and the similar structures statewide?
And compared to Holland Point, nineteen fifty-two was built.
We talked about that bridge it may go to. We've been doing some work on it.
Got a lot of history lessons there.
Just for rumor clarification, what's the likelihood that that bridge will end up being a toll bridge when the state does replace it? Can you, can you talk on that at all?
It's currently not in our planning.
It's currently not in your planning?
Correct.
But it almost seems though, that's the only way they get replaced, is because they come with a funding source. I mean, unless I'm missing something. It seems like, that seems to be a driving factor when you see something replaced. Um, you know, high population and a funding source. Is that accurate?
Obviously, we need a funding source, but the funding source being toll revenue is not a requirement. Uh, you know, I think that the nice bridge having been part of a previously existing toll trust is, you know, how that one advanced forward. But, um, to Administrator Pines' point, you know, the way that we do a lot of our structural work across the state is through federal formula dollars. And when we talk about what that allocation looks like annually, it's enough money to get done the remedial work that we need to do to keep all, however many thousand structures you got, will, um, save, save, twenty-five hundred, safe across the state. And it's enough to add on some of those structures that are in that mid-range of maybe a, like a five million to a thirty million dollar type of replacement. But these types of, you know, multiple hundreds of million dollar structures, they fall without, they fall outside of the allocation of that federal formula pot of the dollars, which is why we are looking at different funding sources specifically for major bridges, for projects like this. And that's another strategy we're going to look at, is one of the things that's part of, you know, a lot of the conversations around transportation funding nationally, because we are not alone as a state who has these large structures that just do not fit within the traditional way that they have been funded in the past because of the growing costs upon them. So, it's one of the things that we continue to work with. Um, there will be a new, uh, federal transportation bill next fall. Uh, no one's talking about that right now because there's a lot of other things going on in Washington. Uh, but that's one of the things that we talk about is the fact that federal formula dollars allow us to do a lot of great work, but it doesn't always unlock these mega projects. And so, what can we do to kind of structure that dol, structure those dollars so that there's enough to take care of the day-to-day, but there's enough to plan for these future more monumental type efforts as well?
And the toll conversation comes up a lot now because, you know, we were approached by private company who's going to replace the bridge if it was a toll bridge. And people did not want to hear that. But in the back of our minds, and all of our minds is the state, you know, is in the same situation as we've talked about with funding and tolls seem like a way to maybe move projects forward quicker if there's some funding. But I understand you don't include that in your process, but.
Not currently in our plans. Uh, you know, certainly, we look at, you know, creative mechanisms to deliver all, all sorts of things. But I think we need to just be mindful of what the right fit is for each project, for each context, for each local government that we work with. On this one, in addition to the bridge, we also have to consider that there, you know, we have the corridor, um, and, you know, the interchange on the south side as well. That was part of the original environmental document. So, all those things together, um, make for a complex, uh, you know, a complex problem. But I think that while the initial investment that we have going right now is modest and will not get us the whole way, it is foundational work that will directly relate to the construction of a future span. And I don't want to underscore the importance of the mast height study as well, because that will, um, you know, largely drive kind of what the future, you know, cost, um, ends up being as well.
We hope it's not that tall.
I have a couple of questions. A year ago, in September, we requested, um, Purple Heart County designation signage. And we've not heard anything on that. Is that in the pipeline?
We are at, our county, uh, the county staff is actually coordinating with the secretary's office and with our team on, um, how that dedication process could work or if our approval at state highway would suffice. We're working through the logistics on how to make sure that that signage meets all the legal requirements.
So, it's on your radar screen?
Absolutely.
That's good. Thank you. And, um,
Big screen, little screen.
Small screen, big font.
You've done this before.
Well, needless to say, we appreciate, um, all state money that's being invested into Calvert County to keep our citizens safe. This is a question for outside of the county. We have approximately seventy percent of our commuters leave Calvert County and go into, well, not all of them go into Washington DC, but a large portion do. And we've got some, um, construction at Sutland Parkway and Route Four. I'm just curious, what kind of, and this is for public knowledge, so our public can hear this, what kind of backups are we experiencing now for our commuters? And how long is that project going to be in effect?
So, sure. The project, uh, at Sutland Parkway, Maryland Four started in March of twenty twenty-four. The planned completion date is in twenty twenty-eight, calendar year.
Okay.
And, uh, it is a six-phased project. It's a very large project. Um, and currently, we are in phase two of the six. Ongoing right now is the, um, installation of stormwater management facilities, uh, for future phases, uh, mitigating the poor soils within the project limits. It's very clayey soils and that road is actually getting undercut down into, um, the existing soil bed. Instead, they're doing some geotechnical type improvements in the corridor that take time to complete. They're building bridge structures right now. You probably could, as you drive through there, see those going up. And, um, the roadway alignment will change temporarily. We will realign, uh, Maryland Four during construction to allow for that undercutting of the roadway construction. So, that realigned roadway is being built right now. Um, just had a good visit to the project with the lieutenant governor. We are on schedule. Uh, got a great contractor out there working and, and feel pretty good. In terms of the, the traffic delays, you know, we're following our sequence of construction. The, the project, uh, a major portion of the reason for the project is the economic development in that area. Uh, I have been down there several times and am amazed at how many houses are going in right behind the project.
It's unbelievable, isn't it?
It is.
Boy, that's really, I'm, you'll finish with this road and traffic will probably just double for sure as you're going along. So, it's, it's going to be a mess.
So, the, the, you know, hard thing about construction projects is a lot of times people think the traffic came from the construction, but we're doing the project because of the, the traffic trips that are there today. So, there was congestion before the project. We're effectively managing with our, our maintenance of traffic and it's within the expected limits. And, uh, we're on schedule and going to keep working.
That's good news. And I can imagine you've seen even more traffic now that employees are going back to work. I have a son who works in Crystal City and sometimes he'll say, my God, my commute was two hours. So, um, yeah, a lot of traffic on the road. But it's good for, for our citizens to know that they will be dealing with this until twenty twenty-eight. That's good. Thank you.
So, the, along the same lines for people going out of the county, it's actually Anaroma County, but it's actually from two sixty to two fifty-eight with no shoulders and there are all the trees and there's a lot of crashes through there, a lot of backups through there. Of course, no way around because there are no shoulders. Is there plans to approve that section of Route Four?
We'll have to follow up on that one. As you said, it's on the Anaroma County side?
It's, it's from two, right at our county line, from our county line to two fifty-eight.
Okay.
Right, well, basically to that overpass, the two fifty-eight.
Northbound.
So, we'll follow up on that one. Thank you for being
It used to come up a lot, not so much anymore.
Then we look at the, you know, the crash patterns that we may have in the pipeline there.
That's where we added the sign.
Okay.
Yeah. So, we had something, we did some signage and some improvements. This was a while ago. Sorry, it just flashed back to me in the last second. I was like, oh, yeah, this one. Um, and so, we implemented some signs. There were some crash issues and other things going on initially. So, we did implement some signs and our district traffic division is sort of, they're collecting data. They wanted a couple of years of data, traffic data to see, did the signs make any improvement? Are there more crashes or less crashes? And if so, once we analyze all that data, we can sort of come up with, um, an alternative or another approach if what we did didn't work.
Well, we don't keep exact crash data on it, but I can tell you, there's been a lot of crashes at Talbot Road, which is right in that section. So, if you look at Talbot Road intersection, I think it'll pop up.
Okay.
Yeah, it goes back to Mike Beller days. It's got a couple little hills in there and no shoulders and it's not good.
Yes.
So, uh, in Prince Frederick, we still have two phases left on the expansion through. Is that anywhere on the radar screen?
Yes, it very much is.
Little screen, big screen. Big screen, little font.
Oh, no. I'm a joke now. So, certainly, uh, you know, we do understand, uh, you know, the, the challenges through that region as far as kind of how we're balancing out the metering of the through traffic along with kind of all of those movements that are introduced because of the change in land use there. So, our team at the district office continues to kind of work with the signal infrastructure that's there to find that right balance. But to your point, uh, you know, to see the level of improvement that, you know, I think is desired there would be probably a larger corridor investment that is not currently programmed. But as we have seen, you know, kind of even taking like the two thirty-one approach of looking at, you know, what could we look at, you know, in smaller sections? I think that would probably be the next best conversation to have, absent the ability to kind of fund these things on this broader corridor level. To be frank, it's just not how we're advancing projects really broadly across the state right now to get them done. We are kind of looking at opportunities to break things up into smaller component pieces. One of the, um, tactics that we have taken is, you know, something that may have been an environmental document that's quite aged by this point, you know, over ten years old, taking it back through a new process of planning and environmental linkages study. We've done this in other counties where kind of takes previous studies, takes it through a new filter, updates the traffic, and then looks at opportunities for breakout projects and things like that. So, that's something, you know, that's kind of the approach that we're trying to take to see if there's something that might have been a project that would have been at this point well over a hundred million dollars. And as I said, like, though, that, that type of price tag is one that's hard to fit into our funding. But if we break it up into a smaller piece, something that fits into a district system preservation bucket, then that gives us the opportunity to look at how many other boxes does it check? Does it check a safety box? Does it check a state of good repair box? And that makes it ultimately more competitive to advance. I don't know if there's anything that you would want to add on this corridor.
Just, uh, I'm going to say this more globally, statewide initiative. Um, the governor has, uh, signed a housing executive order. Uh, part of that is focused on streamlining permitting and, and that includes access permitting. And so, we've set up a work group to kind of look at how we may be able to improve the access permit process. Current state law, uh, doesn't have any requirements that if a county project occurs, doesn't tie directly into a state highway, that a traffic impact study has to be done for the impacts to that state highway that's neighboring the, the development. And so, what does that mean? It means that a lot of times, it relies on counties having strong, adequate public facility ordinances that will drive, um, outcomes that don't harm state highways. We have seen many corridors, uh, including in Southern Maryland, where the growth around the, the major throughways are just well beyond, um, what the corridor can handle. And so, like a core principle of access management is to make sure that development's happening in a way that improvements are made as those developments occur and not, uh, not look to have full grade separation, super interchange, uh, you know, uh, interstate highways in every area. That's just not practicable with the funding levels that any state has, uh, including Maryland. So, it is something I, I kind of like task, a, as this conversation comes up, just ask every county to think about how your ordinances are written and how that does have an impact to state highway for projects that are happening off of state highways, but that ultimately have lots of trips coming to us.
So, I can help you. I think the last estimate I heard on this project was only forty million. So, it's way less than a hundred. But, and for those of you listening, we're talking about Foxstrom Boulevard north of the hospital. And, uh, we're trying to do our part. We've slashed density to the point that Maryland Department of Planning wasn't very happy that we slashed our density so low. But we do have some old projects that are coming that are going to add traffic that we can't, we can't stop. But that's what we're having to deal with. And, you know, that light at Stokely Road, I know that's the meter for Prince Frederick, but it backs up to, it'll back up to the bowling alley on certain days. And, uh, you know.
So, what technology are you all using with your traffic lights and timing? Is it cameras? Is it trip cards? What, and like you said, when we have a accident auto drive, you know, that just starts a backup. But what other measures are you all taking with, with the traffic lights and trying to get them timed perfectly through Prince Frederick?
It's a great question for this corridor and also kind of from a statewide perspective because, you know, every corridor, every signal is a little bit different. I can let Administrator try and, try and speak more specifically to this corridor. But I know it, there are, um, different tactics that we're looking to implement to address kind of situations like this.
So, um, state highway has what we call our TSMO master plan. That is a transportation systems management and operations plan. What that plan includes is the, uh, types of infrastructure using technology that help to manage existing roadways without building wider highways. So, that gets into having smart signals, synchronized signals. Signal synchron, synchronization is dependent upon how close the signals are to each other. If they get too far apart, then the platoon of vehicles can separate too far to where it's not effective to have synchronization. And so, we evaluate every corridor, the signal spacing to determine, um, if the, the synchronization is appropriate or not and how to balance that based on the cross-highway traffic. We do have areas where we've installed, uh, smart signals throughout Southern Maryland, uh, to get into specific corridors. I'd have to know the specific intersections. But, um, that technology will actually utilize a camera system on the signal to see if there's vehicles there or not. And we'll use the adaptive technology in the software to change the signal timing to benefit those who are waiting when there's not cross-traffic. We are increasingly utilizing technology to also improve safety at signals, recognizing that your, what you call recurring congestion, that's your daily peak hour volumes, um, isn't our only challenge, especially areas where we don't have a chart program with, uh, recovery vehicles. Managing non-recurring congestion like crashes becomes really critical. And so, we have technologies in our signals like dilemma zone detection that can see if a vehicle's traveling too fast towards a red light and actually give additional red time to the cross-traffic to prevent a collision. That is, uh, a type of technology that we're deploying statewide at various signals. So, we are utilizing these tools and, uh, are prioritizing signals based on crash frequencies and congestion measures to, to help us determine where statewide to deploy them.
Are your turn bay trigger cameras recorded? Do they record the intersection at all or are they just trigger cameras that you're seeing?
We generally, on any of our chart program, do not have a record. There can be, um, an option to if, if we're asked to do that. And, and oddly, there are private companies that take our chart system feed and, and do a map over, but we don't endorse that in any way. That's just something that they do.
He's also referring to just loop detection. Loop detection, not just kind of, um, like our chart cam, let's be, you're talking about ones like a left turn?
Yes. Like in a left turn bay, you have the, the camera. They're not recording the actual intersection. They're just a trigger camera, correct?
Correct.
Okay. There was some confusion. We've talked about with several people on that. So, none of our intersections are really videoed, so to speak, with any cameras on the light?
Um, I, I've got to be careful in, I can't go that far because we do have some video technology that will look for like pedestrian conflicts and things. Um, however, the, the majority of cases is to just identify if there's a trick, trigger to, uh, for the movement.
All right, that's fair. Thanks.
So, we talk about traffic lights in Prince Frederick every time we meet, don't we?
Yes, sir.
For the public. So, we have eight traffic lights in Prince Frederick now. And I got an email this morning. It said in October of twenty-four, the lights in Prince Frederick were synchronized to maximum flow. So, the camera's on. I want to, I want to hear you say that nobody driving through Prince Frederick is going to stop six or seven times for traffic lights.
That is not the goal.
Yeah. So, again, I got to be careful. We have synchronized the signal to the extent that they can. There is ongoing work out there that, um, there were, were two signals that were impacted from a contractor that impacted an underground utility. We, uh, the interconnect was damaged through that process. And so, we've installed a temporary modem, uh, to help manage the signals. But we're monitoring that and we'll be back to make sure that it's up and running again.
Which, which two signals are we talking about? It was Stokely and Sixes?
Give me a second.
Sixes for sure.
Traffic signal at Armory Square. The, uh, so, it was the interconnect damage at Armory Square between the signal cabinet and the nearby Taco Bell.
Okay.
Because I mean, in Ocean City, I can drive through twelve lights that are all green at one time. But in Prince Frederick, I got to stop eight times.
Understood. Yeah. And again, there are, when you, when you talk about signals, not every signal can be synchronized. If they're spaced too far apart.
In Prince Frederick, they're not spaced any farther apart than they are in Ocean City. Pay attention when you leave here. We can do a drive-by. I'm free.
Yeah. The only thing I can say is we've visited it repeatedly now. We did have some damage.
Because I keep asking the question.
Yeah. They are synchronized as of today. Yeah. They are synchronized as of today. We will have to go out and do some work to deal with the replacement of the modem that's there temporarily. And then we'll have to resynchronize again.
Because you should have paid attention when you came in here today. When you passed the hospital light, how many lights were there in the next half a mile?
I don't personally recall hitting a lot of lights, but I'm, you know.
Four lights. They're a hundred and fifty yards apart. There's no way traffic is gonna separate because those lights are too far apart. But as I've told you before, when people sit at that Stokely Road light and sit through three cycles to get through that light, and go a hundred yards and stop again for a light, how happy do you think they are?
Right. And that's why we-
How happy do you think I am?
That's why I sent our signal text on September seventeen to make sure that they're synchronized.
Oh, I'm, I'm told in October twenty-four, they were all synced up, and we're good to go. But I can, I can drive you through Prince Frederick on any given time, and you'll stop six times through eight lights in this little short span of Prince Frederick. And that's why we get all these complaints about Prince Frederick's turning into Waldorf because of all these lights and stopping every hundred yards for a red light. I know this morning you got lucky, and they were all green, and I'm sure all the way down. But in the morning during rush hour, they do pretty good at staying all green. But when you get to this part of the day, it's whatever the side traffic triggers that light. So you can stop, pull off, stop, pull off, stop. It's horrible. I'd even offer you an alternative. Just sync some of the little lights up to the major lights. At least then I'll only stop four times. Because when you're driving a truck, and you stop at those lights, it's no fun. And traffic behind you is not happy either. Because just about the time I start to get up to some speed, light turns red, and I'm dead in the water again.
Can I say, we used to only have like two lights when I was a kid?
Oh, when I was born, one. And that was in North Beach.
It was the place that Mr. McKinney directed traffic, wasn't it?
I got an email that says they're synced up the best you can do. But we're gonna keep talking about lights in Prince Frederick.
No, as I mentioned, there was a damaged interconnect. We put in a modem to fix that. We talked about this at Mako. We sent some teams out. They found some damage. We put in a fix. We synchronized it after that. I don't doubt that between October twenty-twenty-four and when that damage occurred, that they did get out of sync from that. But we've, we've fixed it since then.
I think some frustration folks have too, is they say, you know, you, they, they think we'll just allow the floodgates, right? So you allow this stuff to be built, but you still only have one road. I've heard, and I, and I don't know this, you, you're the state, but I, I know you keep very close controls on what you allow, what you don't allow. But do you guys look at a project sometimes and go, okay, you may allow it, but we can't give you any more access or anything else? I mean, what role do, do you play in that? Because, you know, like on, like Cove Point Road, we tried to make that road safer years ago, and you guys told us no. Um, that median strip over there should have been moved. It's dangerous as all can be with Little Cove Point Road in there. People that come out of Little Cove Point Road to make a left to go Route Four, a lot of times do not see the traffic coming from their right side. When Dominion was built there, obviously, it, the, the uptick in traffic, I don't know an exact number, but it, it, it had to at times double on that little community road. It was never designed for that. But when you see projects, whether it's here or anywhere else, like the, the new shopping center here, what is your guys' position on that? I mean, because if we're doing something you can't sustain, we need to know that, you know? I mean, and maybe, maybe zoning has to be even more stricter. I mean, I, I say it all the time, we only have one road. So if that's what we got, is there something from the state of Maryland going, hey, look, you know, you guys are just digging a hole more and more and more because you got what you got. These lights are what you got, and there is no relief. We don't have any money to change anything else. I mean, where's your guys' take in that? I mean, do you, do you have any say in that? Or is there a position?
Short answer is that all, we view that all development is local. As you said, the growth is driven largely by planning and zoning at a local level. Our role is not to deny developments. Our role is simply to confirm that developments that tie into existing state right-of-way mitigate the impacts of that traffic. They are not required to fix all of the traffic that the county as a larger whole generates. And so if there are developments that are off-state highway that contribute to state highway impacts but are not tied into state highway, there's no requirement in state law that that be mitigated. That is left to the county to have an APFO that decides that that's still an important thing to do.
So you're, so you're guys, so like in, like with our APFO, which we just finally have upgraded it from the Stone Age, but you guys don't have a traffic study requirement on yourself? Because Route Four is the artery. So we went from a D, and if someone misspe- is speaking, somebody, correct me. Basically, from your, from the establishment to the first artery. Now we're a C all the way to the major artery and its effect. But you don't have anything on yours that state, whatever you do, if you, once you hit this major artery, which is ours, you must maintain a certain grade. You don't have that.
No, the exist, the existing state law only supports that we can require traffic impact studies when a development ties directly to state highway. We cannot control what happens throughout the rest of the county.
And, and, and I, and I get that, but I think that's, that's a major piece going forward that, that any type of development or whatever, um, and maybe it's our fault. I, I have no clue. But, but, um, should understand that that road is that road. And if it's not satisfactory now, it's not gonna get better with any more stuff put on it. I mean, because if you're not gonna require it, then maybe we need even to be stricter in our APFO.
I, to be clear, it's not that I don't want to require.
Oh, yeah, I know. Right.
It's that state law doesn't support that I require.
That's what I mean. Yeah. So, so if that's, you're not giving any guidelines on that to where we could open up an airport next to it, but your guidelines are still the same. Maybe our APFOs need to be much stricter, where we have said in the past, "Hey, if something's zoned for it, well, it's zoned." But it was zoned for that maybe back in the seventies or eighties. Because we're not really working in sync together. Because you guys are like, and I get it. You guys are like, hey, do what you do, and our road is our road, and we do what we can do it. But, but you don't have any guidelines to control any of that either, if I'm hearing you correctly.
Existing state law doesn't support that we have corrections or require traffic impact studies for developments that do not tie into state right-of-way. So we can't.
And we did strengthen AR, AFPO for the grading on intersections.
But maybe we should look at that even further, because, I mean, we're hearing today, you guys are the state, that we have what we have. The bridge is what we have. I mean, this is what we have. So maybe we need to really look at it hard and go, you know what? It's foolish to, uh, put any more stress on those arteries because they can't, they can't take it now. So certainly not gonna be able to take it in the future.
What do you think's gonna happen with Dears Beach Road?
I think it's disaster.
A disaster. A thousand cars feeding into Route Four.
Well, Fox Run should absorb some of that as well. That is gonna be tough, but I mean-
It's gonna be rough with a thousand additional cars on the road.
And that's an old project that was on the books that's just coming to fruition.
Wasn't us.
So, yeah. But we did change our standards on intersections. We raised the grade levels required. But it doesn't impact those projects already approved. It only affects new projects moving forward. So.
And as Administrator Pines noted, even on new things moving forward, it's that delta of new trips, not kind of the accumulation of, you know, all of that other, other traffic. You know, we do try to think as creatively as we can and kind of, you know, stretch things. But it is, as I mentioned previously, it's, it's a balancing act. But we're continue, we will continue to be partners in the conversation, and, you know, monitor as things change, keep things synchronized, um, and, you know, while we kind of look at, you know, what other longer-term solutions might be.
And we, we do believe that the state scoring, scoring system is inequitable for rural counties, especially counties like us that only have one road. So if there's any accommodation that can be made in the scoring system to sort of give us some-
No, and thank you for bringing that up. It's one of the reasons why we're doing this as a pilot, where it's not actually, you know, associated with kind of funding decisions at this point. I know that kind of teams may have met last week to review, you know, your project specifically. I think that what we know anecdotally about how that road functions is not necessarily what was, what resulted in the scores themselves, I think, especially on the mobility delay side of things. So I think the teams are headed back to the drawing board to make sure that all of those kind of factors are fed in properly because, um, kind of how it all works itself through the, the scoring process. One thing kind of being a little off-sync in terms of that mobility factor seeming a little bit off, I think results in other areas of the scoring kind of being negatively impacted, where I think there would be additional benefit. So thank you for participating in the process and working with us through it. I hear, I hear your comment, and we're gonna, we're gonna kind of keep working at this to find something that is, you know, kind of equitable and transparent in all the right ways.
Yeah.
Well, thank you for, you all for being so responsive to us. I mean, since I've been a commissioner, and the past couple of years, we've met with you all at Mako. You've come in here, and we do appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
On to St. Mary's, right?
Uh, Charles first.
Charles.
Thank you all so much.
Absolutely. Thank you, Madam Secretary.
So the next item on the agenda is a public hearing. We are definitely on schedule. Department of Planning and Zoning, Madam Amendment Case twenty-five dash zero one, text amendment cases twenty-five dash zero two, and twenty-five dash zero five through twenty-five dash thirteen. Master Plan of the Town Center's chapters one and two. Director Brinkley.
Good morning, Commissioners.
This is gonna be easy, because after what we just heard, um, we don't need any expansion at all whatsoever, so.
We have done our best to take care of that.
Yes. So I think we should just continue with that thread and then make that easy.
I mean, the next level is cut the density to zero.
Is that a motion?
I don't make motions.
I'll second it.
Don't make motions.
So good morning, Commissioners. Jason Brinkley, Director of Planning and Zoning. The two public hearings scheduled today, we have two public hearings scheduled today. All public hearings were duly advertised, and certificates of publication is made part of the record for each hearing. Citizens are invited to provide comments on any and all, or all, of the hearings at each presentation after the presentation has concluded. Each of the two hearings will be a separate comment period following the brief presentation. Anyone in person must sign in at the sign-in sheet located next to the county attorney. And all of the items before us on this particular item, uh, our particular topic, have been found to be consistent with the comprehensive plan by the Planning Commission. And with that, I will turn it over to Will Hager, Planner Three, to walk through the amendments. And then following, uh, him walking through the amendments, we'll turn it over to, to Tay Harris to walk through the, uh, long-range, our long-range planner to walk through the town center changes before opening it up for the public hearing.
Okay. Excuse me. Thank you, Jason, and good, good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
I'm Will Hager, Planner Three, with the Department of Planning and Zoning. And in addition to what Jason just said, I did want to mention that we did receive one written comment on the proposed map amendment, which was shared with the Commissioners prior to today's public hearing. And so with that, um, we're first here today to present an application for a zoning map amendment that we received in March of this year. The properties subject to the zoning map amendment application include one thirty-six East Chesapeake Beach Road and one fifty East Chesapeake Beach Road located at the intersection of Maryland seven seventy-eight and Maryland two sixty, directly adjacent and north of Owings Town Center. The existing zoning of the property at one thirty-six East Chesapeake Beach Road is rural commercial. At one fifty East Chesapeake Beach Road, the zoning is rural neighborhood district. And the existing uses at one thirty-six address is an automobile, automobile filling station. At the, and at the one fifty address, it is a residential, single-family dwelling. The proposed zoning for the subject properties in this application is Town Center Core District for both parcels. The Owings Town Center zoning ordinance describes the core district as "The intent within this district is to allow for a variety of complementary uses appropriate to the scale and traffic volume of a regional thoroughfare, but adjusted to the village scale of the Owings area, and to promote and sustain commercial development." The proposed use of the property is an enhancement to the existing automobile filling station at one thirty-six East Chesapeake Beach Road and expand it onto the one fifty address. Automobile filling station is not a permitted use in the rural commercial district, making the existing filling station a non-conforming use. And if the rezoning request is approved, the proposed development would be in a conformance with the requirements, regulations, and conditions set forth in the Calhoun County zoning ordinance, which permits automobile filling stations as a conditional use in the Owings Town Center Core Sub-District.
So Will, was that gas station grandfathered in when the zoning's?
Yeah, uh, correct. I, uh, from our information, I believe the original structure for that filling station dates back to nineteen seventy, so that predates a lot of zoning.
Is it expanding the footprint, though?
From the current property, it's, it's expanding onto the adjacent property, that one fifty address. The filling station is currently only located on the one thirty-six.
So would we be expanding the town center with that?
We are expanding. We're, the amendment proposes to expand the Owings Town Center Core Sub-Dist- Sub-District onto those two properties, one thirty-six.
And, and, please, I'm not, I'm just, just because I've been down the road for years, would that be spot zoning?
No, I don't.
No.
County Attorney?
No.
Okay, because I just want to be, uh, these things are tricky, so I just want to be clear. But, but it would be expanding the town center, but, but it, where, where else? So if, if that piece expanded, and it's not just relegated to there, what else would be able to be expanded?
Well, that's really a determination up to the Commissioners in terms of how far any future expansions would, uh-
Right. But I mean, if we, if we allow just that, then how would it not be spot zoning?
Mr. County Attorney?
John Norris, County Attorney. So Commissioners, spot zoning is taking an individual piece of property and applying a zone to it that is irregular for the neighborhood in which it exists. This is a planning proposal to explain, expand the planning boundary for a town center, and then apply a map amendment to the zoning maps for that town center that make it conforming to the neighboring property, um, the existing gas station. That it's that area, it's the, it's the neighborhood in which the property exists that it is conforming to, would become conforming to after the planning action is taken.
See, and, and, and please, I, this is all, with all respect, I've been caught in these things a few times before where trying to make something make sense or what have you has, has burned my fingers. So I have a very new policy in life. If it is not extremely black and white and clear and no gray to me, then I'm, just can't support it. So unless you, just me personally, can show that, um, that we're not expanding the town center, which it sounds like we are, and we're not just doing it for an individual, then I, I, I can't do it. And, and maybe I'm wrong. Just like I say, um, I, I don't know the area as well as I should. Um, it's not like, like Lesby, I know the back of my hand. Um, but I, I know Owings, and I know it's very small, and I know it's fragile. So I, um, and I, and maybe, maybe I'm completely wrong here, but like I say, if, if that's what we're doing.
Is, is the gas station in the town center?
So Commissioner, no, the gas station is not in the town center. Neither parcel is in the town center. This is an RC and an RND, I believe. And the, these two particular parcels are in the comprehensive plan to be included in the town center. And really, we should have taken this up as well when we did the comprehensive rezoning back approximately nine months ago in, in, in February or April. nine months ago in, in February, or eight months ago in February. This should have been taken up then, and that's actually one of the things that had to be found, has, has to be found, is that this was a mistake that should have happened then, and it should have happened, and there was no logical reason why we couldn't have done it at that time. The particular applicant had requested this, I think approximately two years ago. And so we prob, we should have done it then when we did the comprehensive rezoning. We did not for policy reasons that I'm not necessarily going to go into at this time. But that's why it's before us today, because the applicant is requesting that they were told to wait when we should have done it at that time.
But that existing building's been there, my God.
Seventies, and how is that not in the town center? Because the bank is right across the road.
I'm assuming that was part of the reason why it's in the comprehensive plan to be included in the town center.
Jason, um, the bank is in the town center, correct? I thought all those four corners were in there.
I assumed that as well.
Yeah, Grace Brethren is, um, is in the town center.
No, it's not.
It's not?
No, they're.
What is the town center?
If you look at the map on the slide now, you'll see what the town center is.
So the, the town center is colored purple. The current boundaries of the town center is colored purple on this map, and the two parcels in question, the red parcel, rural commercial parcel, that is 136, that's where the dash-in is currently located. And then the orange parcel, that's, uh, 150, that's the 150 address.
Does this go up to Route Two and 260?
No.
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 It's the old road, the old road.
That's the old road.
That's the old road that goes.
Yeah.
So the post office is in that bottom corner, Commissioner?
Okay, okay. Now, the, um, this, this here where the current gas station is, I'm very surprised that that wasn't a part of the town center. Owings isn't much of a town center to begin with. And what is existing there already, because I, I've lived here 50 years, it is so darn hard to get in and out of there to get gas and cars coming in. The footprint is just absolutely awful. And I, I've been involved in this almost from the beginning, and what is proposed to be put there is definitely an upgrade and would be such a great anchor for that area. What I think that we have to worry about, and the citizenry will probably ask of us, is, okay, if you're gonna do this, which I think should be in the town center and will just add so much to that area where there's nothing. I think the citizenry is worried, if we're gonna do this, are we gonna put houses, you know? Are we gonna start changing the rules? And that's what we have to get across. Um, the rendering of the new dash-in is absolutely spectacular and just, in my opinion, would add so much to the area and possibly open the door where the bank is to get something there that would benefit the Owings community. Um, we have a lot of little businesses here. I'm not very good with spatial stuff, so work with me. But we have a lot of little businesses here, and then we have Grace Brethren, and the housing that's behind is almost like a hamlet that goes to Friendship, which is not in Calver County, which is not in Calver County. So talk us through it. Um, you know, what, what the benefits are, um, if there are any pitfalls for the citizenry, because that's our biggest concern, is conveying that we're not trying to pull something here and we're not going to be, um, expanding with townhouses and apartments and homes, because that's what we all worry about. And this, this board has pledged not to do that.
So Jason, correct me if I'm wrong, this has been through the planning commission, and they did find it consistent with the comprehensive plan?
That's correct.
With a seven oh.
That's correct.
So that's, that's my, you know, it's been through the planning commission and, and they did evaluate it and.
Additionally, that is an awkward intersection. So was there a turn lane study done for that to this point, do you know?
Not at this point, no. And as it goes, if, if this is approved, then there will be a site development process and development review process for that.
Is that gonna require an access lane?
I think that's part of that determination when it goes through development review in the case that this was, uh, this was approved.
But you don't know if that'll be required at this point?
I, I don't know at this time.
But would that make it too late? We approve it and then say, okay, now it's approved, so it goes through the things and then traffic study, and then you go, so it really didn't matter what the traffic study says?
This is a.
The traffic study, to me, I'm sorry, Jason, but the traffic study in this particular circumstance isn't a quantitative thing as much as it is in egress and access, you know what I mean, from the, the filling station itself. And also just touch on another point, the closest filling station to the dash-in is all the way at the end of 260, or the beach, or the circle in Lothian, or the two of them are split. So, I mean, it, it is a great location for, for that filling station to be. Um, but like I said, that, I would definitely require intersection improvements at that location, and I think will benefit our citizenry.
And, and Commissioners, I just want to remind you all that this is an applicant requested change, and we do have the, the applicant here that I think plans to speak here a little later. Uh, and there, as part of their justification, it is on the next few slides on why they feel like this, this change needs to be made.
And they intend, they can answer this question when they get, but, but they intend to fully use both properties at, in the end, right?
That's my understanding.
It's not like there's gonna be access that could be converted to something else now that it's town center. So they're gonna absorb the whole property, so there's no.
Right.
Got you.
There's nothing that's gonna sneak in the back or anything. This, this is distinctly and specifically for dash-in.
Yep.
Okay, moving forward, just gonna take a look at a few more maps. So, uh, as we said, on this slide, we're looking at the current zoning of the area around Owings Town Center, and the two parcels circled in the middle are the subject parcels. And on this slide, uh, we're looking at the, the zoning in the same area, uh, what it would look like if the zoning map amendment were to be approved. And on this slide, you can see the delineation of the sub-districts within Owings Town Center as they exist today. Those sub-districts include the core district, village district, and edge district. And on this slide, you can see, uh, we're looking at the future land use map from the Owings, of the Owings area from the comprehensive plan. And in the comprehensive plan, as we can see on this map, the Owings Town Center boundary is proposed to be expanded to include additional properties north of Maryland 260 and east of Maryland 778, and the subject properties are included within this expansion area.
But on this property?
It's just that one little.
Is that just that one business?
That's correct.
Right.
I want everybody to know that.
So what is this for, then?
So this is the future land use map that is currently in the comprehensive plan today.
But that hasn't been adopted.
This, well, this is in the actual, this is the future land use map. The, the actual land uses haven't changed, but this is the, this is essentially the plan on what was adopted back in 2019.
That's proposal.
But that would expand the town center even further.
So.
But that hasn't, that's not what we're doing today.
That's not.
Not what we're doing.
There, as we walk through the, the town centers, and we'll have the, the presentation on Dunn, on, excuse me, on Prince Frederick today, as we walk through those changes to the town centers, we'll have plenty of opportunity to discuss whether this is indeed what this Commissioner body wants to see or not at a later date, but that is not necessarily here today. This is just informational.
And there is another debate whether it remains a town center or converts to RC indeed.
That is also potentially on the horizon.
Right, before you even get to that expansion.
Correct.
But today, it's just this one little piece.
Correct. We're just talking about two parcels.
For a gas station, nothing else.
So in regard to the proposed development, uh, the proposed rezoning would enable the expansion and renovation of the existing automobile filling station. The applicant proposes to demolish the existing gas station and single-family detached dwelling and redevelop the subject property with a new, modern, and better designed facility. The proposed renovation would enable the installation of modern improved landscaping, lighting, and stormwater management facilities, an upgraded septic system, better onsite circulation, safer entrances, and other aesthetic improvements. And on this slide, we have an image of the elevation drawing of the proposed redevelopment included in the application package. And on this slide, we have an image of the concept plan of the proposed development. The subject property is a focal point of existing commercial activity in Owings Town Center, as depicted in the comprehensive plan. This is the only major intersection including both the current and the planned future Owings Town Center. And Maryland State Highway Administration, uh, traffic counts from 2023 indicate an average daily traffic volume of 7,045 vehicles per day along MD 260 as compared to 7,971, uh, in 2013. So now we're getting to the applicant's justification for rezoning as, uh, described in their application package. The current rural commercial zoning of 136 East Chesapeake Beach Road reflects the historic use of the property, which has existed since before county's town center concept. Uh, the, as we mentioned previously, the, the existing primary structure was constructed in 1970. Changing the zoning designation of the subject property to town center would support the redevelopment of the existing automobile filling station and is consistent with the goals and intentions of the comprehensive plan. Although the existing use of the 150 East Chesapeake Beach Road, uh, address is residential, the appropriate zoning of the property should have been considered in the context of the surrounding properties and the future land use to conform with the comprehensive plan, rather than placing it in a holding zone, which is not reflective of the plan's intent or surrounding properties. And by designating the subject property in the rural commercial and rural neighborhood district zones during the comprehensive rezoning, the existing facts were not considered. The actual character and use of the property, as well as the property's location in an area designated, designated for future development, is more consistent with the town center designation. Reasonably foreseeable trends contemplated by the comprehensive plan and supported by the existing facts and nature of the subject property were not considered. And retaining the rural commercial zoning for the 136 East Chesapeake Beach Road property and rezoning the 150 East Chesapeake Beach Road property to rural neighborhood district was a mistake of fact, because the RC and RND zoning designations inhibit the type of development envisioned in the county's comprehensive plan. So that's the conclusion of our presentation for the zoning map amendment. Are there any further questions on that?
Public comment?
Not yet. We'll run through all of them, do one round of public comment at the end.
Do, do we want to vote on each one, or are we gonna?
We gotta do public comment.
So Commissioner, my suggestion would be, let, let us run through, it's quite lengthy slideshow, but let us run through all of it. If y'all have got clarification points, I think that's great.
Yep.
And then we'll have public comment for anybody wanting to comment. And then if y'all want to break up the motions, you can do so however you see, so choose.
Okay.
Okay, we'll move along then. So up next is our presentation on the text amendments. And before I begin the presentation, I just would like to mention, uh, that we've received no written public comments on these text amendments in advance of this public hearing.
Any of them?
No.
Even the one we just did?
Well, we, that, that's the map amendment.
Oh, that's right. Sorry.
And it's, it's my understanding that these amendments in general are cleanups to amendments that are already in existence. It's just tweaking them, cleaning them up. Am I correct?
Well, um, what we would say.
That's a tweak.
True.
Well, it, I mean, along those same lines, I think it's also bringing the ordinance in line with, uh, the critical area regulations.
Yeah, there's a, there's a, there's, um, there was originally 13 tax amendments proposed. Uh, two of them didn't make it past planning commission. Um, so there's a, a lot of different reasons that we're proposing this group of tax amendments. One of them, uh, is to address recent changes made to state law. Uh, another is to update, uh, requirements, uh, by the Critical Area Commission, following their comprehensive review of the zoning ordinance, and also to address a few outstanding issues not addressed with the recent zoning ordinance update. And so we're here to review and discuss proposed tax amendments 2502 and 2505 through 2513.
Quickly.
As quickly as, as humanly possible. All right. Um, the first tax amendment, 25-02, proposes to revise the definition of retaining, of retaining wall to make clear that it doesn't include walls less than 36 inches in height. Anything less than 36 inches in height isn't considered structurally suitable for retainment. So this is really about making a clear distinction between walls that are constructed specifically for, for retainment, which must meet requirements like setbacks and are inspected, and smaller decorative law, walls used for things like landscaping.
So I do have one question there. So 36 inches and I got 18 inches in the ground. Where does my rule start? At grade level, correct?
Close to adjacent grade to the top of the wall.
I believe so.
Good.
Yep.
Okay.
And this doesn't apply to any specific thing, this is just generally going forward.
Correct.
Got you.
So tax amendment 2505 makes clear that if a use is not listed or does not fall within one of the general categories as determined by the zoning officer, it is not permitted either by right or special exception in any district.
And the impact of that? Give me an example.
This is to clarify some, uh, confusion that recently happened through some Board of Appeals cases that were, uh, sent up. So this was just clarifying a position by the department.
Who can and who can't?
And who, who makes that determination.
Moving on to 2506, this proposes to allow garden centers or farm supply stores in the farm and forest and rural community districts, with the condition that the combined floor area of all buildings supporting the use be limited to 7,500 square feet. And the 7,500 square foot threshold was chosen because, uh, greater than 7,500 square feet would trigger the requirement for a category one site plan.
Is there anything now that exceeds 7,500? So this is, this is to, to limit to 7,500? Is there anything on the books right now that exceeds 7,500?
Not that I'm aware of.
So not the Walmarts or anything?
Well, that wouldn't be in your farming, that would be.
That, that condition would be specific to those two districts that we're proposing to expand that.
It's just in rural areas.
So it, it classifies all of them the same, and there's a possibility that we've had others that were classified a different classification, and it brings them all under FFD.
Correct.
Okay.
So is that a typo right there, Jason? In seven, so 75,000 square feet?
No, that's on town centers. That's town centers can go up to that, not.
Yes, got you. Okay, thank you.
In, in the FFD and RCD, it's, it's, it's your mom and pop stores.
So, I'm sorry, just, just for clarification, so, and, and I'm sure I'm reading it wrong. So is, are you saying right now it's been limited to 2,500 and it's expanding the use to 7,500? Is that what?
Right now, it's not allowed.
It's not allowed?
So it's going from not, that use not being allowed at all in the farm and forest and rural community district to it being allowed but capped at a limit of 7,500 square feet?
So, so a farm area currently right now is not allowed to have an area that sells farming supplies?
Correct.
Really?
Correct.
How'd that happen?
It's the way the ordinance was written.
So from that a farm, and I need, I don't know, whatever farms do with that, I can't buy it there?
So you, without this amendment, you cannot have a farm store in a farm and forest.
How'd that happen in Calver County?
This is, this is more about like Jake's.
Okay.
Produce and that kind of stuff.
Similar.
Store, you're thinking of a supply store, not really a supply store.
But this doesn't open the door for, um, Walmart to.
No.
Unless they want to build a 7,500.
Absolutely.
And an FFD or RCD.
Okay.
So Jake's is 5,000 per feet.
Yeah, that's about as big as he.
Got you. I, okay. Okay.
We just want to make sure we're doing the right thing with the right information.
Okay, next amendment, 2507 adds a condition that specifies that an accessory dwelling not be greater than 75,000, or 75% of the gross floor area of a single-family detached dwelling, bringing it into alignment with how the state defines accessory dwelling units. And, uh, with the legislation, uh, on ADUs that was passed in Annapolis recently, the state is limiting how local jurisdictions can regulate accessory dwelling units. And one of the limitations is that the local jurisdiction cannot establish setback requirements that exceed existing accessory structure setback requirements from the side and rear lot lines. So that's why we're proposing to remove the existing language from condition number six. And I should note that our requirement currently on the books is that all accessory structures 500 square feet or greater must meet the setback requirements of a primary structure. So this amendment would essentially only be a substantive change for accessory dwellings less than 500 square feet. for accessory dwellings less than five hundred square feet in size. And we're proposing to add a condition that the accessory dwelling have adequate vehicular access as determined by the Department of Public Works. We believe that this type of requirement is within the purview of the type of regulations allowed by the state for accessory dwellings, and we believe it's common sense.
Are you saying the primary dwelling is only five hundred square feet? So explain to me again, so. So the, the pri, you're saying the, the primary house, what the, when somebody builds an addition, it can't be greater than seventy-five percent of the primary house, correct?
Correct.
So, but there's no limit on what size the primary house is?
No.
No.
Nope.
No, but there, there are other limitations on the size of the accessory dwelling.
If you have a four thousand square foot house, this has to be no greater than three thousand square feet.
Yeah, but it, it, that wouldn't be allowed to, that wouldn't be approved because there's another limit at fifteen hundred square feet that we passed with the ordinance update in February.
What is it currently? The, the percentage now currently?
We don't have a percentage overall.
And this just aligns with the state's recent.
That's how the state defines it, so we're bringing our definition into alignment with how the state defines it.
That passed between whenever we adopted everything in March or A R, February, and now. So we're, this is just a change to bring ours in alignment with it.
Okay.
And the revisions being proposed in this tax amendment twenty-five oh eight address some outstanding issues related to daycares and home daycares as home occupations. What we're looking at on this slide and in the next slide addresses parking requirements for home daycares. These revisions would require home daycares to provide one drop-off parking space in addition to the parking spaces required for the dwelling, as well as an additional parking space for each employee that is not a permanent residence of, resident of the dwelling in which the home occupation is located.
What do you have now?
What, what's the requirement currently? So there were some changes made with the zoning updates earlier this year that changed how the parking requirement was measured versus how it was done under the previous ordinance. It increased the parking requirement just a little bit. So the proposals that we are bringing forward today would make the parking requirements for those home daycares into closer alignment with how they were under the old ordinance.
You could potentially put somebody out of business if they don't have the room for that. No way. I tell you, we, we've got such a lack right now of daycare. We are screaming for daycare. In fact, they need relief.
That, that's what this, that's what this proposal is doing.
We're relaxing the standard.
I'm sorry, I thought you were going the other way.
No, no, we did in, 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 in February. We're backing off.
We're, yeah, we're basically correcting something that.
Okay, so, so if, if I have a home daycare, is there any parking restrictions right now?
Yes, you have to have certain.
Yeah, there, there are parking requirements.
Enough for your employees and for people to drop off.
And that can be C R six millings, correct?
Can be. They can't build parking lots. They can't build parking lots that are measured out to twelve feet wide or what have you and six feet long and all this kind of stuff. I mean, I mean, we're at the mercy in this small county, especially with blueprint, to help these home, these home daycares as much as humanly possible. And I don't want to stop a kid from going somewhere because the, the thing's not six inches wider than what it needs to be. I don't know why we need much of restriction at all. I mean, pretty much they're running these businesses the way they've been running them for years. So I, I want to make sure we're not screwing these folks up.
We're making it easier. If we want to look at making it even easier than that, we can look at that for the next round.
I want it as easy, my twenty percent, I want it as easy as humanly possible because these home daycares are struggling. They're fighting for employees. They are, and when you're, when you're working, like we said, what, seventy percent of our population drives out here? And you need a daycare slot? Boy, that's, that's, if you've ever been in that situation, man, that is stressful.
But, but Mike, they have to have some parking somewhere. You have to have some requirement because what if I live down a tree-lined driveway and I have parking for me and my car? And now I open a daycare. I've got to have somewhere for my employees if I have employees. I got to have room enough for people to drop off and turn around.
Sure.
So you can't say, let's not have any. So I think what they've tried to do is come up with a formula that's the minimum, the minimum they have to have. It only asks for one drop-off spot.
Yeah, I've got one more slide where we'll, we'll explain the rest of it, but, but I can do a summary just to clarify.
Pertain to this?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
So the revision on this slide reduces the parking requirements for home daycares and daycare centers with twelve or fewer clients from a pickup, drop-off areas that accommodates two cars and reduces it down to one car. And so like I, I said earlier, the revisions on this slide and the previous slide would bring, bring the parking requirements for home daycares into closer alignment with requirements under the previous ordinance, and they reduce the requirements compared with what's on the books now.
But you said what we got on the books now, didn't we mess it up or something like that?
Yeah, they're trying to fix it.
Okay, so what about before we messed it up? How, how's it to that?
That's what we're going.
So we're going back to where it was before we messed it up, but better?
We're going it back to basically where it was before we messed it up.
And was that sufficient at the time since we're doing this?
I'm not aware of if, if, if we were getting, because that was before my time as director, so.
I, I think that, that what we're proposing here is, is in line with what was recommended by our permit reviewers. And our, I can tell you that our permit reviewers share your, your instinct on this. I think that we're trying to, to.
So if I have a home daycare wherever, and I'm under twelve people, how many parking spaces do I have to have with this new proposal?
One.
Just one parking spot?
You gotta have one pickup and drop-off.
So I gotta have one spot for a car to drop off and pick up and one other parking spot?
And you can fit that spot on your driveway potentially.
So a single-car driveway was going, so if I got just a regular driveway and I put three cars in there, I'm good?
You need parking spots for your employees too.
If you have employees, you need a parking spot for them.
And, and, and if the, only, that, only if the employee doesn't live in the house.
So if I have three employees?
And you can't just use a single-car driveway, Mike, because, or Commissioner Hart, because, you know, I pull in first, I drop my child off, two more people pulling behind me, I can't leave now.
And it's a safety factor.
Sure, okay, so, one that's got a little you or what have you or whatever. Where I'm going is, if say I got three employees, I need three parking spaces and a drop-off one.
Depends on if that employee is a permanent resident of that.
Say they're not, but let's say they're just dropped off there.
You're gonna need four or five.
You know what I mean? Say, say they take the bus there, they carpool to there. I mean, to have a permanent space. Because if somebody has ten employees, you, ten parking spaces is considerable.
What if they have?
You couldn't.
Well, ten or whatever.
If you have ten employees, you couldn't have a home occupation.
Okay, so, so talk to me of that. So, so this, this particular person here that's got, how many, how many employees would that person have?
Well, it goes by age limit also.
See, that's what I'm saying, where it's, nothing's never as simple as it seems. Because, right, all those questions are valid. I want to make sure, number one, I'm not putting anybody out of business. You're talking about a, 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 a service that we need desperately.
But, but all they're requiring is a spot to drop off, pick up, and employee parking. How can you get any minimal, how can you get any more minimal than that?
That's what I'm asking, so, I mean, because if they got three employees but not all of them drive, they don't need three spots. Is there any contingent in for that?
Oh, Lord.
See what I'm saying?
Yeah, but that's getting really.
Or three of them ride together.
But I drive next to them.
Right, but three of them drive together, and we're saying you can have three parking spots and they don't have three cars.
And I think it's, it's trying to balance the safety of the drop-off with the.
Yeah, I'm all about that. I'm all about that.
And, and a home occupation, you, you can only actually have two non-resident employees. So if you have that third, you actually wouldn't be eligible for a home occupation.
How many kids can, how many kids can you have with two employees, with yourself and two employees?
This allows up to twelve for this particular.
So there you got twelve people, maybe, picking up and dropping off. That's twelve cars coming in and out.
Worst-case scenario.
Yeah, they're all, you know.
Sure, sure, because they all might be between four and five o'clock, get pretty busy.
So they gotta have.
We're trying to balance.
I'm okay with, with the, with the designated spot, absolutely. I'm okay with that. I just want to make sure that on the parking area, we don't have them having unnecessary parking spots that they don't need to add stress on that, on that business. That's all I'm worried about.
So the adjustment's being made based upon a complaint probably from what was put into zoning laws?
Based upon feedback that we got.
That person was in agreeance with what we have here.
That's a great question.
We were making this to accommodate their, the issues.
If the daycare people are good with it, I'm good with it.
Right, exactly.
And they've had, as you stated, there were no comments on this. And you didn't hear anything through the grapevine from the daycare community.
Not that I, I, we didn't hear anything.
Okay, that's, that's what I worry about.
I've, I've done this. This is common sense. You got to have it. And when you go into it, you know what you got to have.
But you feel comfortable.
I feel comfortable.
Okay, okay. Okay. Tax amendments have teeth, so sorry.
They do.
Yeah, so.
All right, so there's a little bit more to tax amendment twenty-five oh eight. It also proposes to relax some of the requirements for home occupations generally. So special exception approval from the Board of Appeals would no longer be required for Class A home occupations. Class A home occupations are those where employees must be a permanent resident of the dwelling, but onsite appointments of customers or clients are permitted. With the exception of home daycare centers, only two clients or fewer are permitted on premise, premise at, at a time. And special exception approval for Class B home occupations would only be required in the waterfront community district and residential district going forward. Class B home occupations are permitted to employ up to two equivalent full-time employees in addition to employees that are permanent residents of the dwelling in which the home occupation is located. And the proposed amendment also adds a special exception requirement for daycare centers that serve thirteen to nineteen clients in the F F D, R C D, R N D, W C D, and R D. And special exception approval would be required for daycare centers with twelve or fewer clients in the W C D, R D, and R D in order to make it more consistent with the changes being proposed for home occupations and home daycares.
And where would they go for the special exception?
Board of Appeals.
Still, okay, okay. And is this consistent with what we've heard from the daycares?
This effectively makes it easier to have a home occupation when you're not having any other employees, any non-resident employees working there. It's just a conditional approval.
Does this open up the door for, I, I, I don't know, it, it, there's so many things out there because we're going to talk about going into a residence now for something that is not consistent with what our neighborhoods look like?
You still have to go through the conditional approval, and I think that's why we have, if you're having employees actually coming. But if you're an individual and you're doing work in your home and you already have a cap on how many people you can.
I mean, like, if you've got a insurance business, who cares? But if you're trying to, I don't know, sell, you know, a vast amount of things out of your garage or what have you, now that could be a nuisance to the neighborhood.
So I don't want to muddy the waters anymore, but we've had this issue before about shared driveways where somebody does a home business on a shared driveway. Where, where are we at with that? Because there is a process that they have to go through for that.
Typically, if it's a shared, just in general, when it's a shared driveway, it does require you to go, if you don't have consent, to go to Board of Appeals.
But you can get consent.
Correct.
So I think, okay, that's a little bit of what you're getting to.
Yes, yes.
I can't just open a business and have all this traffic coming in my, the neighborhood now.
Right.
Unless the neighborhood says they're good with that.
And we, and we have that in place. Okay, okay.
And during the zoning ordinance update, one last-minute change we made was removing the use of public utility lines and accessory structures from the ordinance, and we've since decided that this use should remain in the ordinance. And that is what the proposed amendments in the next two slides here are addressing. And so public utility lines and accessory structures would be a permitted use in all of zoning districts in the county. The revision shown here under tax amendment twenty-five ten are relatively minor and mostly just clarifying existing policies for accessory structures. And a few additional revisions in this section have been proposed. Item seven allows for an accessory structure or use to be located on a property adjoining the primary structure or use if the following conditions are met. And the text in condition C has been replaced with the following. Power generating systems and solar energy generating systems require a use and maintenance easement be platted. And item eight is proposed to be added, which states that on a property without primary structure, an accessory structure may be permitted if special exception approval is granted by the Board of Appeals. If item seven above applies, a special exception is only required if conditions A or B cannot be met.
So Will, is this again getting us compliant with the law that was passed for accessory dwellings?
No, I think this was just something common sense that we, we all.
What? Common sense of garment? Are you sure?
Trying to from time to time.
We'll be the judge of that.
I said trying.
So the revisions proposed in tax amendment twenty-five eleven are mostly just clarifying existing policies. Specifically, that final detailed site development plan approval shall be attained prior to issuance of any building permits for all category one and category two development. No permits are allowed to be issued until site plan approval is finalized. And final subdivision plat approval shall be obtained prior to the issuance of any building permits. No permits are allowed to be issued until subdivision approval is finalized.
So I'm surprised this has happened where I can get a building permit before I even have site approval?
Doesn't mean you'll get it, but doesn't mean people won't ask, so. Tax amendment twenty-five twelve, under, this is addressing temporary signs. Under general provisions, condition seven would say, temporary signs shall not be, shall not be posted on any non-designated public's property, including but not limited to rights of way, utility poles, signposts, or landscaping. For the purposes of this section, non-designated shall mean that public property for which the poster has not received express written permission to post the temporary sign from all, from the appropriate governing authority for the public property.
Okay, go back, I'm just gonna make sure, I'll just read, just. Okay, thank you.
And so the remainder of the slides address the revisions proposed in tax amendment twenty-five thirteen. The Critical Area Commission conducted a comprehensive review of Calvert's Critical Area Program earlier this year and recommended changes to the Critical Area Regulations within the county's zoning ordinance as a condition of the commission's approval of the local program. So those changes recommended by the Critical Area Commission as a condition of the commission's approval of our local program are why we're proposing tax amendment twenty-five thirteen.
I thought you already had that in place.
They made some changes, so we've got to adjust.
The, the commission wasn't able to review, do their comprehensive review until after we passed the updated zoning ordinance earlier this year. So that's the reason for the tax amendment.
And I know that's a real deep, deep dive. I'm not gonna hit on that. But I, I'm assuming it's to protect the waterways because of, I mean, like going unless the erosion, everything else like that. And this, this is, gotcha, gotcha, okay, I'm good.
Okay, moving forward. So the revisions shown on this slide are adding a couple additional statements to the Purpose and Goals section of the Critical Area Article. They state to reduce vulnerability to the impacts of climate change and incorporate measures to improve the climate resiliency of the Chesapeake and Atlantic coastal bays and its tributaries and ensure an equitable distribution of the burdens and benefits of development, mitigation, restoration, conservation, and adaptation to climate change with the critical area. The revisions presented on this slide change the requirement that the critical area provisions of the zoning ordinance and critical area maps be comprehensively reviewed from every six years to every ten years and clarifying that if the county requires a one-year extension to the ten-year deadline, they must notify the Critical Area Commission in writing. The revisions shown on this slide state that the county may grant a change to the critical area land classification on proof of a mistake if the proposed critical area classification conforms to the state critical area mapping criteria based on land uses in existence either as of December first, nineteen eighty-five, if part of the originally mapped critical area, or as of the date of the land was included in the critical area due to a critical area boundary remapping effort, follows the Calvert County mapping methodology for critical area classification at the time of mapping and is consistent with the purpose policies and goals of the critical area law and regulations.
Can I ask a question, guys? This is extremely intensive, and we're speed reading through all this. Certainly a brokenness in half or something like that. I hate to go down the road.
Well, a lot of this, Mike, it's, yes. I know a lot of it's cleaning up. It's mandated by the Critical Area Commission. It's mandated by the Critical Area Commission.
We have no sense.
Changes that they made. So you're just adopting the changes that they've made.
To bring it into compliance.
You really don't have any.
Okay, okay, okay.
Yeah. We're just making amendments based on them.
I mean, a lot of them reading makes a lot of sense, but boy, it's.
It's a lot.
Yes.
We were not necessarily happy with the number of comments we've got back from them because we provided a draft of our zoning ordinance to them prior to multiple occasions, and then they came back with this after we had already adopted it.
I mean, I mean, this, it's really deep in the woods, and you know this place is either up on a cliff or underneath the water. I mean, everything's in the critical area.
So let me ask you a question, Jason, on this one here. Suppose I'm building a house, and I got half my lot in the critical area and half outside. We're not taking that whole lot and put it in the critical area, are we?
I'll defer to, I think Ron Marnie's here, our environmental regulator that is our critical area expert. So I'll let him potentially address that.
He's not here.
Is he not here? Rachel's here. Rachel may be able to address this.
Well, I'm just asking because you know what I'm saying, if we got that circle and.
Ron couldn't be here because he had court this morning. But no, the two pieces would be treated separately. So it's basically divided into two calculations.
Okay, no, that's fine. Perfect, thank you.
Wherever you put your house?
Yeah, perfect.
Okay, and the revisions shown on this slide are maybe some of the more substantive revisions, including this text amendment. The provision is in regard to lot coverage limitations in the limited development area. So the new text in this provision states that for development that uses previous materials that have been approved by the commission as part of a local program, the limits established in this subsection may be exceeded by up to five hundred square feet using permeable pavers or permeable pavement installed to the manufacturer's specifications. The degree of perviousness shall be agreed upon by the Department of Planning and Zoning and shall fall within ranges as defined in section two dash two of this ordinance.
So we're expanding the area that could be used?
Allowing some flexibility if, if it's permeable.
Thank God. Okay. Right, Jason? Am I right on that? Am I, I'm looking at you.
Yes, it's, it's allowing flexibility and it was requested by the Critical Area Commission.
Because of the unmovable line, this, okay.
And I, Ron isn't here to correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that this is one that I personally lobby for. And unless the commissioners want me to go over these definitions, they're pretty lengthy. I was just going to skip over them. That's what I thought. Moving on, on this slide, the revisions are applicable to the growth allocation section of the Critical Area Article. They state that when locating new intensely developed areas or limited development areas to locate those new IDA or LDA areas outside of areas vulnerable to climate change as identified by the county, and in, and unless the county proposes and the commission approves measures that assess climate resiliency and vulnerability and incorporate citing design, construction, and other natural features to significantly enhance climate resiliency and reduce vulnerability. And in reviewing map amendments or refinements involving the use of growth allocation, the county shall consider the following factors. Environmental impacts on underserved or overburdened communities. And more definitions here that I'll skip over unless I'm asked not to. And the revision, the revision on this slide is in regard to habitat protection areas and states that maps identifying these specific habitat protection areas are maintained by the Department of Natural Resources Wildlife and Heritage Division. The most recent updated inventory was completed on March tenth, twenty twenty-one. And recommendations contained within WHS's report Habitat Protection Areas for the Calver County Critical Area and associated maps are hereby incorporated into this ordinance. And there are a couple definitions I would like to go over on this slide. The Critical Area Commission wanted to make some changes. The following changes to our definition of dwelling unit so that it would now state one, one or more rooms forming a single, single-habital unit with facilities for living, sleeping, cooking, sanitation, and other activities associated with daily life. Examples of dwelling units include but are not limited to accessory dwelling units such as living quarters for a domestic or other employee or tenant, an in-law or accessory apartment, a guest house, or a caretaker residence. And we had some concerns about how that revision would impact our definition of density. So we were also proposing to add the following statement to clarify our existing, our existing policy on density. Unless otherwise specifically stated, accessory dwelling units do not count towards the permitted density of a parcel. And on this slide, the definition of project approvals is proposed to be revised to specify that the term includes approval of both preliminary and final subdivision plans. And some very minor revisions on this slide, which just address some of the wording in the definition of lot coverage, but these aren't substantive changes. And so that concludes our text amendment presentation.
So we'll turn it over now to Tay Harris, our long-range planner, to walk through chapters one and two of the town center.
We can't vote on the text amendments and the map amendment before we get into the town centers?
We did it all, you can take individual votes at the end. We did it all as one public hearing to save time and money for advertising cost. So we did it as one.
We might have participants in the audience that don't want to hear all this other stuff that we're getting ready to do.
That's up to the county attorney on whether we can, we can break it up in that way.
Yes, sir, we accommodate that. We'll, we'll open the record for public comment for the first.
What we've heard so far?
Thirteen items.
We're already running an hour behind, so.
Correct.
People have lives. We don't.
So do you public comment?
If that's the pleasure of the board, we'll ask everybody that wants to speak on what we've already heard to either use the raise your hand function if you're online or to use a sign-in sheet to my right. We'll have a separate signup sheet if anybody wants to come back up and speak about the master plan of town centers.
Right, so so far we've heard the map adjustment in Owings and all these text amendments, so let's, let's get those out of the way.
So as a formality, the floor has been open for public comments on this hearing. Resolution six dash eight nine was adopted and is available here today to maintain order and decorum of the governmental process. Those attending in person will be asked to speak first. For those joining virtually, if you would like to speak, please press star nine or raise your hand or use the raise your hand function. Virtual participants will need to identify themselves by the screen name or the last four of their phone number and unmute one at a time. Speakers will be asked to state the name and address, their name and address, and speakers are providing comments as individuals will be allotted two minutes, and those speaking as a designated representative of a group will be allotted five. So I'll let Will say who the speakers are.
So our first speaker on our list is Matthew Tedesco.
Good morning, Commission President. Commissioners, my name is Matthew Tedesco with the law firm of McNamee-Hosey in Greenville. On, here on behalf of the applicant for the zoning map amendment twenty-five dash zero one. I've represented this afternoon by Mr. Tony Williams from the Will's Group, Carib Dashing Food Store, Inc. We also have on your signup sheet, Mr. Mark Ferguson from Site Design, Inc., Mike Lenhart from Lenhart Traffic Consulting, and from GS Procter and Associates, Ms. Michelle Goodwin. Mr. Lenhart and Mr. Ferguson did sign up, but unless there's questions for the expediency of the hearing, they don't need to actually address the commission. I will do that on their behalf and on behalf of the applicant. A couple of things. First and foremost, I want to thank your staff, Jason Brinkley, Rachel O'Shea, Will Hager, for their review of this application. We were before the planning commission back on August twentieth. A lot of the comments that were made by commissioners here this morning a few, an hour or so ago were actually vetted in quite considerable detail at the planning commission with respect to some of the concerns that we all understand that some of the residents may have. Does this application do anything more than what it purports to do? Let me stand before you and assure you it does not. The application is specifically for these two pieces of property. One currently owned by Dashing and one under contract by Dashing. This goes back more than two to three years, as Jason indicated. My office has been representing the applicant for, since twenty twenty-three. We had meetings with staff back then with respect to what do we do with this old outdated gas station that is in desperate need, revitalization, economic redevelopment, and expansion? It's just, it's, it's served its useful life. Unfortunately, the zoning as it exists today has handcuffed us. The use is not permitted in the current zone. It's not permitted in the adjacent property, which is currently under contract by the Will's Group for purchase and the expansion. We had meetings with your staff. What was determined was it should be designated town center zoning. It will implement the comprehensive plan that was adopted in two thousand and nineteen, updated into two thousand and twenty-two. It is a piecemeal rezoning, a zoning map amendment. It is not spot zoning. I agree with your attorney, Mr. Norris, on that. Spot zoning is a term of art from case law. This is not spot zoning. This is a application presented by us for these two properties alone to implement your comprehensive plan, to facilitate the economic redevelopment of this station. And it will not impede this commission's ability going forward with its view of the Owens Town Center, whether to expand it or not expand it in the future. It is limited to just these two properties, really to unhandcuff us. So with that, commissioners, we're happy to answer any questions you may have. But again, I want to thank Jason and his staff. I want to thank the planning commission. We had a pretty lengthy discussion back and forth, and I think at the end of it, they understood what, what the request was for. I will just hit on one final thing as thoughts are popping in my head in the limited time that I have. We do expect, I think there was a question this morning about traffic impact analysis. Mr. Lenhart is here. We do expect and anticipate that a traffic impact analysis will be required. This property is at the intersection of two state roads. To pull an access permit, you heard this morning, we will be required to do a traffic impact study in addition to anything that the county may require with its site development plans. State administration will require that. So anything that's required as, as related to that, we will be required to do, whether that be turn lanes or any type of intersection improvements at that location. With that, again, I would be repetitive that we would submit on our justification, but one hundred percent this implements the comprehensive plan. It will facilitate the ability for this site to be redeveloped. And I thank staff and I thank you all for your consideration and hopefully for your support this, this afternoon in approving this application. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so the only other names that we have signed up on the sheet are Mark Ferguson and Mike Leonard. So unless there are any questions that the commissioners have for those two individuals, that would conclude our public speakers.
No one has.
I think the attorney pretty well took care of it.
I'm good.
No one has raised their hand. I'm sorry. We have one individual who's raised their hand. Please use star six to unmute yourself. Last four digits, zero, four, four, one, related to the first map and text amendments for the Calver County zoning ordinance. This is not public comment. I say that because the caller just joined at twelve fifteen. Yes, caller?
Yes, I have a question about road signs. Is there a way for the public to know if temporary road signs have been approved? Because I noticed there's a lot of road signs at the intersection of Route four and Route two. Some of them are duplicate, and there is no identifying factors to know if they've gotten through the approval process.
So, I apologize.
And that's my question.
There is a text amendment before the, I'm sorry, that one's not even before the county commissioners today, is it?
No. That would be a public comment issue.
That is a public comment, which is later on the agenda. This is pertaining only to the zoning text amendments.
Who is this individual? They did not state their name.
Um, my name is Michelle Tucker, and I live in Owings. Thank you.
And Commissioner, we do.
And I was looking at this, yeah, I was looking at this on YouTube, and then I couldn't raise my hand, so I switched to my phone, and they're off a little bit.
I would recommend for the.
Behind.
That you want to keep the record clean of what you're doing for a public hearing? Public comment is advertised on the agenda for approximately this time, but we are running way behind.
Okay, so should I call back then?
Yes, please.
Okay, thank you.
I can, I can give you a call when it's coming. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
So the board has asked, there are no others online that have raised their hand. The board has asked to close the record and adopt and enact the ordinances implementing map amendment case twenty-five dash zero one, text amendment case twenty-five dash two, text amendment case twenty-five dash zero five, text amendment case twenty-five dash zero six, text amendment case twenty-five dash zero seven, twenty-five dash zero eight, twenty-five dash zero nine, twenty-five dash ten, twenty-five dash eleven, twenty-five dash twelve, and twenty-five dash thirteen to close what you've done on, on.
Set moved?
Second.
Set the motion in a second. Any discussion?
This is just.
This is all of them.
This is all that you've heard.
The map amendment and the text amendments that we've heard so far.
All together?
All together.
All together.
To close the record and adopt and enact.
Yeah.
Okay, I agree all with, but with one, so, okay. So I'll just clarify.
You can amend it if you want.
I, I don't want to expand town centers. So I'm good with the rest of them, but I, but I can't vote for an expansion of the town center.
You want to separate that out?
So let's separate that out. Let's, let's.
Do twenty-five oh one.
Let's do twenty-five oh one first.
Just the map amendment.
Just a map amendment. So moved on twenty-five oh one.
So he's gonna amend his motion. It's only to approve map amendment twenty-five dash zero one. Second or agrees?
Yes.
Is there any discussion?
So this is the town center.
Yes.
Yeah, I just, I just, and, and I'm, I just, my, my fear is it's just opening the door to just keep going, and I'll reference back to Huntington. That was a mistake I made trying to clean that up and went across the road and just, it was a mistake. I had good intentions, but it was a mistake, which I was thankful to be able to vote again to, to take it back to where it was so that it didn't cause any damage. So that's just where I'm referencing from, so.
Is it the town? I can make a comment?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Are you finished?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, okay. I just want to clarify for the public, this is not an expansion, extension of the town center. This is a, and you all can correct me if I'm wrong, the way I see it, this is a reconstruction of the Dashing on the existing property with the acquisition of additional property so that, so that this new Dashing can accommodate the traffic flow that is needed to get in and get out to get gas, to make purchases. It is not an extension of the town center. Actually, from where I'm sitting, it is an enhancement of the area.
Yeah, so the only thing I, yeah, I do see it as different, for sure. I was here in that Huntington debacle, and this is completely different because we have an existing business that needs to be updated. It's outdated. It needs to be updated. I understand your position. The only thing I will say is, my comment is, we don't have much faith in traffic studies. I would implore you to put turn lanes in that station. I don't care what the traffic study says because we don't have good success with traffic studies. It will probably come back and say you don't need them. But we believe you should truly put turn lanes in for that station because two sixty is a very busy road. I don't know if we can mandate that or not, but we would strongly encourage you to put turn lanes in for that station, so.
I, I would second that. As you go down that road, and I know that you all probably already know, what is beyond the Dashing is an awful lot of traffic that comes in and out of the beaches. I travel it quite frequently, and you, you have a lot of people who will just stop dead and then everybody's, or you have people that will go around. I mean, it really is a dicey intersection. So I, I echo what Chairman Hans is proposing as well.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries. Thank you.
So now we'll close the record and act the ordinance implementing twenty-five oh two, twenty-five oh five, twenty-five oh six, twenty-five oh seven, two thirteen.
So we have a motion. So we adopt twenty-five oh two through twenty-five dash thirteen. Any discussion on that motion?
None.
Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Jason, I better be right.
Understood.
We'll find out later.
Yeah, you're gonna find out in about fifteen minutes.
That's what you're afraid of.
Okay. Thank you.
And, and, go ahead.
Yes.
Yes. So, so next is the, the master plan chapters one and two by Tay Harris, Long Range Planner.
Tay Harris, Long Range Planner for the Department of Planning and Zoning. For the chapters one and two, we received two comments, which they are addressed in the proposed revisions to the draft master plan that are listed in this PowerPoint on a future slide. I believe that everyone was present at the last presentation that we did for this master plan update, which was on August twenty-sixth, except for Commissioner Hart. I'm not sure.
Not sure.
Okay. Well, the reason why I'm bringing that up is this PowerPoint presentation is very similar to the one that was provided on August twenty-sixth. The only real difference are the proposed revisions to the draft plan based on public and department comments. But I'll proceed and try to go through this quickly.
May I interrupt you for a minute?
Of course.
Just for clarification. What we are looking at today is being presented again, and it includes public comments.
Yes, it was originally presented on August twenty-sixth, which you gave us direction, planning and zoning direction, to go ahead and have the public hearing. So once we advertised the public hearing, we received comments, which we included as recommendations for revisions in this draft plan for your consideration today.
Thank you.
Sure. On July sixteenth, two thousand twenty-five, the Planning Commission determined that chapters one and two were consistent with the Calvert County Comprehensive Plan required by Title III of the Land Use Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland. On August twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-five, the Department of Planning and Zoning presented chapters one and two to the Board of County Commissioners to solicit feedback. And today, we are holding a public hearing to consider comments on chapters one and two for potential adoption required by Title III of the Land Use Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland. Okay, so chapter one is applicable to all town centers and the town center master plans. It includes town center master plans' relationship to Calvert County Comprehensive Plans, specifically the plan's visions, goals, and objectives. It also includes implementation measures, for example, local, state, and federal regulations, policies and government programs and services, and partnerships with local agencies, nonprofits, and regional planning organizations. Chapter one also includes functional plans and studies on how they relate to the town center master plans. Highlights of plans include transportation, water and sewer, parks and recreation, public transit, as well as pedestrian and bicycle studies, findings from the Housing for All Task Force, and findings in the All Hazards Plan. Chapter two, Prince Frederick Town Center Master Plan, has seven sections. We're going to discuss highlights from each section. Land use section includes three proposed sub-districts. These sub-districts are the guiding principles for future development in the town center. The first sub-district is traditional suburban sub-district. It is shown in purple on the map on the left, and is intended for single-family low-density residential development. In this sub-district is the forest overlay, and this is shown on the bottom southern portion of the town center in green and yellow striping. And it is there to heighten awareness, heighten awareness that the Parker's Creek headwaters is located in this portion of the town center. The second sub-district is the Old Town Sub-District. It is shown in pink on the map, and it is intended to allow for mixed uses along Armory Road and Commerce Roads and Main Street north of Calvert Town and Symphony Woods subdivisions. It is shown in pink on the map. And then, and within this section, there is a potential for a Main Street designation. This would be determined and designated under separate process from this master plan update. And then the last sub-district is Commercial Sub-District, which is shown in blue on the map, and is intended to allow for commercial redevelopment, infill development in the town center. The plan also includes expanding or delineating new boundaries for the town center. The map on the left shows the existing boundaries in red. The new boundaries are shown in purple, and they include the Calvert Health Campus to the north, the Employment Center districts per the zoning ordinance update to the west, and then Calvert Town and Symphony Woods subdivision to the south. The chapter also highlights environmental and natural resources in the town center. I briefly go over our regional watershed management strategy for each town center, specifically the Prince Frederick Town Center. With the existing or proposed boundaries, the town center lies in three watersheds: North Battle Creek, Hunting Creek, and Parker's Creek. These watersheds all have impervious surface of under ten percent, which is a threshold that, once it gets above ten percent, is indicative of stressors to the ecosystems within these watersheds. These watersheds also have ninety percent approximately, a little bit less or more each one of them, of riparian buffers along their streams, which deems these ecosystems healthy, protected by these riparian plantings. And then it also looks at the impervious surface in the town center, which is twenty-nine percent, and the tree canopy coverage within the town center, which is forty-nine percent, which really just indicates that while these watersheds have indicators that they're not stressed, there's local stress caused by the impervious surface in the town center because of its concentration. The plan also includes a section on heritage. The highlights include that there are ninety-three historical sites, thirteen archaeological sites. Prince Frederick was established in seventeen twenty-five as a government and commerce center. This section focuses on preservation in connection to outlined cultural and natural heritage areas and the protection of scenic roads. These roads include Stokely and Barstow Roads and Double Oaks Road south of the Dairs Beach Road. The section also recommends establishment of a heritage marker trail. The plan also includes a section on housing. The highlights include the majority of houses in the town center are single-family and townhouse. The homeownership rate is forty-six percent. The median home price is three hundred and eighty-three thousand. Median monthly mortgage is two thousand two hundred and ninety-five. The monthly rental rates range from nine hundred dollars to thirty-four hundred dollars. Thirty-eight percent of the housing in the town center is comprised of assisted housing. And households able to afford housing in the town center are forty-six percent, which is commensurate to the homeownership rate. The economics section in the plan highlights major employers, which includes the Calvert County Public Schools, Calvert County Government, Calvert Health Medical Center, the Ark of Southern Maryland, and Calvert County Health Department. Targeted industries in the town center include healthcare, high-tech, commercial, and retail. This section focuses on small business retention and attraction. As, and additionally, this, the Prince Frederick Town Center can boast the lowest commercial vacancy rate in Southern Maryland. The transportation section of the plan continues to recommend the widening of M D two four from Fox Run Boulevard to Stokely Road. It also includes the planned loop roads that have been in the previous plan, and highlights the fact that the completion of Fox Run Boulevard Loop Road segment is scheduled to happen in the winter of two thousand twenty-five. It emphasizes failing intersections as of two thousand, July two thousand twenty-five, along M D two four at Stokely Road, Dairs Beach Road, Main Street, and Church Street. It also discusses the public transit that is available, the services available to the public. This includes six local bus routes, an M T A commuter bus, and online ride-share resources. It also includes sidewalk analysis. There are gaps along Dairs Beach Road, Fox Run Boulevard, Adder ton Drive, and Dairs Beach Road slash Armory Road roundabout. And it also recommends bicycle lanes to be installed on Main Street, Armory Road, and along Prince Frederick Boulevard. The last section of the plan includes a discussion on the community and government facilities within the town center. Because the town center is the government and commerce center for the county and has been established since the seventeen hundreds, there are many buildings and services available within town center. It's just highlighted list is located on the right side of the slide. And now I'm going to go over the proposed revisions to the plan based on public and department comments. So based on comments from the public, the Department of Planning and Zoning is recommending adding that exceeding impervious surface cover by four percent within a watershed can stress sensitive aquatic organisms. This revision is consistent with the watershed health indicators in the draft plan. It also recommends adding impervious surface coverage percentages for both North Battle Creek and Parker's Creek watersheds. This revision includes data previously not included in the draft plan. We also recommend adding an objective to assess impervious surface cover when data becomes available every five to seven years, and an objective to evaluate current potential impervious surface to establish a recommended impervious surface threshold. The revisions are consistent with the watershed health indicators in the draft plan. In addition, we recommend revising the impervious surface cover percentage for the Hunting Creek watershed. This revision updates outdated data in the current draft plan. Another revision is recommended is to revise mitigation measures for deferring a project approval up to six years to requiring infrastructure funds, infrastructure funds, or a donation to improve facilities as necessary to determine adequacy for roads. This revision is consistent with Article Three of the Calvert County Code. The last recommendation is to add recommendations to the transportation section to improve the Prince Frederick Local Public Transit Services and M T A's commuter bus service. These recommendations are consistent with the two thousand twenty-two Calvert County Transit Development Plan and the two thousand twenty-two Calvert County Transportation Plan.
So I've got two questions for you on this. One, that Hunting Creek watershed's pretty fragile. So are we making it more restrictive, or are we relaxing it?
Well, really, these are just discussing the watershed, the regional watershed management indicators. So for Huntingtown Creek, what it is, is that there's a ten percent threshold, and once it exceeds that, and that's, this is the whole watershed, right? Once it exceeds that, then it indicates that the ecosystem can become stressed. Right now, it is at nine percent, but it's approaching the ten percent. We're just tracking this data information in the plan so that we can make informed decisions. But we're not restricting it. No, we're just making this data obvious in the plan.
And then on the adequate facilities for roads, does that give a way to relax the new A P F O? By saying, are you sure? By saying, okay, so if we allow a road, now we're gonna, now we're gonna meet the traffic study requirements. So if somebody wanted to build something, but it wouldn't meet the regular A P F O because the road, the infrastructure wasn't there, now we're gonna allow them to put in a side street or widen something. So now that they do meet that, is that, does that do that?
But what this does is, in the draft plan that we had, we said that the project could, would be deferred up to six years. And that is incorrect. That is not how the county code reads in Article Three. The county code, that, that six years pertains to A P F for schools. Okay, so what happened is we took, we took a motion from the Planning Commission, which included deferring the development or the project approval up to six years. And when we went back and looked at it after, after we incorporated it back in, we realized that that is not how the county code reads for adequacy for public roads. Instead, adequacy for public roads, that's why we're saying we want to change it to requiring infrastructure funds or a donation to improve facilities as necessary to determine adequacy. And the Department of Planning, in consultation with the Department of Public Works, would make that decision.
Yeah, but it sounds like I can buy my way through. So it's, when I read it.
I'm just explaining to you what the county code says.
That's what I'm asking. It makes it sound like I, I can buy my way through. If I don't like something, then I can donate a swing set and say, I'll, I'll do a sidewalk for you, and this, that, and the other.
Well, you have to, you have to look at that language, as necessary to determine adequacy, and that's for roads. So they, and then in the, in the code, it talks about the level of service.
Correct.
Yes.
Right.
Well, if it triggers a study.
If the existing structure that somebody wants to build, say, in the property it's on, if there's not the infrastructure there to support it, whether, was returning to roads there, and I say, well, if I widen that road, or I do whatever, now I'll meet the traffic study. Is that what that says?
I, no, I think this is more referring to level of service of intersections. I think what you're referring to, and although I don't review plans for road, you know, infrastructure, I think that that would be covered in the road ordinance, but it would be great to have J R to answer this question. But what you are thinking this does is not, that does not say, the intent of this language in the A P F, from my understanding, talks about level of service.
So the A P F O requires a certain traffic study rating all the way out to the main artery. But if, if, if I come out of my parking space or what have you, and I go to the very first artery and say it's just a service road, does this language say, because you would fail at the service road, say, I can widen that service road, so now I meet the A P F O to get to the major artery?
I think, I think, I'm just zooming in. I think this means that a developer could go in and make road improvements that we're responsible for, that he's waiting on to move his project.
All this is doing is clarifying what is already in the county code. It's not adding anything additional to it, just the way it was.
The question is, what does it do?
Right, and why, and why?
The question is, what does it do?
And why say funds or donation? That, to me, man, that.
But it says, or donation, to improve the facilities. So that means.
But why would they need to make a donation?
So they.
If it was already compliant, why would they need to?
That's the language in the county code.
Because if there needs to be an upgrade to a road, and they're waiting on us to do it, they can make a donation to cover the cost to do it, is what I think it means.
Yes.
So like, going back to dash-in, what we just talked about, we talked about the turn lanes and that type of thing. That's gonna be on them.
Right, but, but if, if, but going, going to that, say, okay, so that now allows a project that wasn't allowed before, and that gets dicey to me, because if, if I have a lemonade stand, and I just don't have the money of the guy that has the root beer stand, now he can buy his way in where I can't.
That's always true.
And I, and I understand that in the business world, but you know how I am with that. I, I like a very level playing field, and I, and I don't believe that it's government's job to, like, my old boss Brian Bozzi used to say, things, sometimes things are the cost of doing business, and it's not our job to supplement that or to put a vehicle to let the big boy win, if I'm saying that right.
So is the word donation is.
That gives me pause, big time.
Pause, yeah. I can see that.
So that language tracks what is currently in our county code, almost verbatim, to improve facilities directly or to donate necessary facilities in order to allow approval of the application under this article. So it's, it uses the word donate necessary facilities in order to allow approval of the application.
It's not a donation lieu of.
It's not, it's not.
It's a donation to improve.
Correct.
No, but Commissioner Hart's point is that maybe I can't afford to do that, so my project don't move. You can afford to do it, and your project moves. He's, he's on an equity.
Which is an understandable concern, but that would be changing the language in the county code to, to, if that's the.
Not that there's any merit for it at all, but being here as long as I have been, we're constantly accused of being on the take. If I had one millionth of a percent of what people say that I'm on the payroll all the time, you ain't looking at me right now, because I own an island, okay? I mean, I get my check from here, and that's all I get, but the keyboard warriors and the Facebook tough guys, you know, have you on the take all the time. And when I see that, it just gives me a lot of pause that says the big boy can come in and buy his way in. Whether that's accurate or not, that's why I'm asking the question.
So can we work on the verbiage on that to change it, make it?
This is one of the recommended revisions. You can simply just not go with the recommended revision.
Can take that out.
But not to complicate things, it already sounds like this whole thing is an expansion of the town center.
There are three areas that would, the town center would.
Knocks me out of the equation anyway, but I just, I just, I saw that in expansion, and I, 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 I mean, I, I know.
What if you got rid of a donation and put monies?
It's.
I don't know.
It's to improve, it's to improve.
I mean, I mean, so I'm maybe making an argument that, I mean, I already know my vote. I, I'm not voting for an expansion of the town center, so, so I'm, I'm not trying to.
This expansion's only for boundary lines, right?
The expansion is, and Tay had a slide on it earlier, that's the three areas, which is the Calvert Health Campus, Calvert Town, and, yeah, right, go back one.
Okay.
Right there are the three areas that the town center would incorporate.
And let me just add, through the zoning ordinance update and the map update, the intent is to change all the employment center districts that currently exist, and every town. In every town center that we come across, it's in the comprehensive plan that you would expand the town center to include those employment districts. So even when we were discussing the Owings Town Center, the future land use map that you saw in there included Employment District, Center District, that was in the future land use that was proposing in the future to expand the Owings Town Center.
But like, we just heard the state of Maryland say, pretty much, they have no safeguards on what you do. So if you overbuild or overextend, Maryland's like, we don't tell you what to do, but you're only getting what you're getting.
You did it to yourself.
And so you hear many times about things that were done in the eighties that are haunting us today. And that's a fact, okay? Um, those commissioners on those walls never dreamed that these type of projects would happen. In the eighties, there was no thought that some of these things should happen. Well, I don't want somebody sitting in 2040 going, well, those commissioners in 2025 didn't think of that, that's why, um, you know.
I can see the health campus, and I can see the employment center district, but I do not like Calvert Town and Symphony Wood subdivision. I do not like a subdivision in there.
Because it's in, the short answer, it's in our comprehensive plan.
It's already built out?
It's already built out.
It's already built out, so including it would be.
It's surrounded by natural resource lands.
By gullies.
Yeah, so, so it really, to meet the definition of town centers, it really kind of makes sense to put that residential, which is already built, nothing else can happen there.
There's no other land to develop in those subdivisions.
I, I would, I would say I don't think so. By the looks of it, because there is forest conservation requirements there, I, I don't know. I'd never reviewed the, I would have to go back and verify that, but I believe that's the case.
Put in there would.
You've been in this car before. It's not the right answer, Tay.
Well, it's the best answer I have for you. That's the most honest answer I have.
Somebody, somebody very smart said to me, because there's been so much gray, if it's not so black and white and so clear that there's nothing up for interpretation, so I'm gonna leave it alone.
The best answer I can give, commissioners, if you would like clarification on that one previous slide that we talked about regarding donation, and if you want a clarification on this, we can leave the record open and be back here at a later date to provide that clarification.
Existence the way it is, I know that. But that's just me.
First time I've seen Calvert Town and Symphony Woods. Okay.
Go back to the slide that was in question and keep going, I guess.
Fifty-five or fifty-six, wherever you were.
Well, I think this is to the end.
I think that was the potentially last slide.
And then this is, when we were gonna.
Well, this is where you get to just say your motion.
Yeah, yeah, so we're at number twelve on the, on this last slide. You've already breezed through the rest.
So the next, uh, the next portion of this is to conduct a public hearing. So speakers will be asked to state their name and address and provide comments as individuals if they're speaking, or as individuals, they have two, allotted two minutes. And speakers designated as a representative of group will be allowed five minutes. We do have the sheet. I don't know that.
There is one participant online. If you use the raise your hand function, if you wish to speak for this public hearing regarding the master plan of town centers.
And while we're waiting on that, we had no sign up speakers.
We have no speakers.
So we'll make a motion to keep the record open, pending the, I guess, clarification whether or not Calvert Town and Symphony Woods are completely built out.
And then we'll look at that additional language.
For another public hearing.
And that additional language on APFO.
Yes, yes, definitely.
So it was a motion?
That's a motion collectively. That was a motion.
It's a group motion.
Second.
And a group second. Is there any discussion to be grouped as a motion?
Is that in Robert's rules? Can you do that?
Sit in the back.
Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, commissioners. You'll see me again later.
Okay.
Oh, my God.
I am too. Department of Community Resources, Calvert County Family Network Budget Amendment.
This should go fast.
Yeah, this should.
And consent, consent.
Consent will go fast.
Oh, my God. Oh, my God.
Good afternoon, commissioners. I'm Julie Machino, Family Network Coordinator, Department of Community Resources.
And I'm Jaclyn Culver, Deputy Director of Community Resources.
Okay, I'll start with the memo. Background, the Department of Community Resources, Calvert County Family Network, is Calvert County's local management board. CCFN oversees on behalf of the Board of County Commissioners multiple programs supported through funding provided by the Governor's Office for Children through an annual allocation from the Children's Cabinet Interagency Fund. Discussion, the office approved CCFN's fiscal year FY 2026 award and budget amendment number BA 2026-00027 aligns the FY 2026 CCFN budget with the FY 26 CCIF grant award. Fiscal impact, the budget amendment has no impact on the general fund. Staff requests that the Board of County Commissioners hold a public hearing, close the record after public comment, and if appropriate, approve budget amendment number BA 2026-00027 and sign and enact the resolution. So with that, we'll move to public comment.
Is there anybody here who wishes to speak regarding this public hearing? Please use the signup sheet. And there is no one online, so.
Discussion, motion.
Mr. President, I have a motion that we close the record and adopt an act of resolution approving budget amendment BA 2026-000027.
Is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion, a second. Is any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, commissioners.
Next item on the agenda is consent at 11:30. Item one, Department of Community Resources, fiscal year 2026 agreement with Calvert County Health Department for a home visiting hybrid program for high-risk moms. Item two, Department of Community Resources, fiscal year 2026 family engagement agreement. Item three, Department of Community Resources, fiscal year 2026 workforce innovation opportunity act outreach and enrollment agreement. Item four, Department of Community Resources, fiscal year 2026 community partnership agreement. Item five, Department Parks and Recreation Soil Conservation Plans for Bisco Gray Heritage Farm and Gatewood Preserve. Item six, Department of Community Resources Memorandum of Understanding for Diabetes Self-Management Program. Item seven, Department of Community Resources, Americans with Disabilities Act Service Animal Policy and Mobility Device Policy. Item eight, Calvert County Sheriff's Office State Fiscal Year 2026 Gun Violence Reduction Grant Program Award. Item nine, Office of County Administrator Memorandum of Agreement with the Calvert Marine Museum Society Incorporated. Is there any objection to those items listed under consent today?
Have none. I move that we adopt and approve and consent agenda items.
Second. Have a motion, a second, that we allowed those items under consent today. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is new business. Item one, Department Parks and Recreation Out of School Time Youth Mentoring Program Grant.
Good afternoon, commissioners.
Eleven thirty-five agenda time.
Nate Smith, Recreation Division Chief. If it pleases the board, I'll read the memo. Background, in June of 2023, the Department of Parks and Recreation PNR received a $70,000 cost reimbursable grant from the U.S. Department of Justice, Office of Juvenile Justice and Delinquency Prevention, OJJDP, through the National Recreation and Parks Association, NRPA, to develop a youth mentoring program over a two and a half year period to support youth affected by substance misuse in Calvert County. The current grant period expires on September 30th, 2025. As a result of our success in developing a sustainable youth mentoring program during the grant period, NRPA has offered the PNR an additional $60,000 grant to continue to develop our youth mentoring program over a two and a half year period beginning on October 1st, 2025. Discussion, the Department of Parks and Recreation must provide NRPA with a signed copy of the Memorandum of Understanding to receive the grant. The grant will be utilized to continue development of our youth mentoring program utilizing NRPA's youth mentoring framework to implement group and one-to-one youth mentorship and family engagement and opportunities within PNR. Fiscal impact, in compensation for services rendered pursuant to the agreement, the county shall be paid a total of $60,000 over the full grant period from May 1st, 2025 through September 30th, 2027. The county will receive funds through a cost reimbursable model, submitting quarterly financial reports to the NRPA program officer that will contain an invoice, itemized transactions, and receipts for all expenses to NRPA. A budget adjustment in an amount of $60,000 is requested to support this program. Conclusion recommendation, staff recommends that the Board of County Commissioners, if appropriate, authorize the Board President to sign the Memorandum of Understanding and approve budget adjustment BA 2026-000140 for $60,000. Any questions or concerns?
And how, how are we going to mentor some of these youths?
Well, in a, through this, we were able to establish this program through the grant in 2023 from, from the ground up. So we'd never done this before in Parks and Recreation, and we've been able to offer mentorship at the Southern District and the Northern District since, in the spring and the fall. And we, this past summer, we were able to do a five-week mini-session. So we've probably had a total of 50 children involved in this. And NRPA actually came down and visited our program. Commissioner Ireland, you were at that presentation, Commissioner Grasso down at the Marine Museum, and they saw firsthand how well we've managed this. And I'm, you know, very proud of the fact that, you know, they, they see what, what we're all about. And to start from the ground up and have all these children and have all the support of our partners, Sheriff's Office, all of the departments within government have had a hand in this. So they know that we're gonna handle this money well and, you know, spend it on our youth and continue outreach and development. Very proud of this, and, you know, they saw firsthand, and we didn't apply for this grant. So they reached out to us and said, we have $60,000 for you. We, we've earned it. Our team has really done a great job, and we're gonna continue to develop this program.
Great, thank you.
Motion?
Yes, yes, sir.
I move that we authorize the Board President to sign MOU and approve and adopt budget adjustment BA-2026-000140.
Second.
A motion, a second. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carries.
Thank you, commissioners.
Have a good day.
Thank you, sir.
Next item on our new business, Department of Finance and Budget Declaration of Intent of the county to reimburse from bonds or other debt obligations. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
It's a good day twice in one day.
Hey, Dad. You guys have a long day today.
We do.
Good afternoon, commissioners.
Good afternoon.
I'm Deputy County Administrator. And with me is Mary, who will be reviewing the declaration of intent of the county to reimburse from bonds or other debt obligations. I'll read the memo. Background, the Board of County Commissioners intends to issue tax-exempt bonds or other debt obligations to finance certain projects in the fiscal year 2026 capital budget. And attached is Table One with the details of those items. In Table One, the acquisition, alteration, construction, reconstruction, enlargement, equipment, expansion, extension, improvement, rehab, renovation, upgrading, and repair of public buildings, roads, and facilities, including but not limited to the projects listed below, and issuance costs together with the cost of acquiring land or interest in land as well as any related architectural, financial, legal, planning, or engineering services. The fiscal impact, if funds are expended for the projects in Table One for the issuance of tax-exempt bonds or other debt obligations, a resolution of intent to reimburse is required to reimburse the general fund from the proceeds of such bonds or obligations. The conclusion and the recommendation, Department of Finance and Budget requests that the Board of County Commissioners review and if deemed appropriate, sign the attached resolution, which indicates the intent to reimburse the general fund from the proceeds of tax-exempt bonds or other debt obligations. And again, the attachment lists all the related projects. And, and myself and Mary are here to respond to any questions. Thank you.
So we're gonna have money?
That's the plan.
Reimburse ourselves?
Yes, that's the plan.
It's a good day, Mary.
It's a very good day.
We want you at every meeting. Questions?
Motion?
Yes, sir.
I move that we adopt and enact a resolution indicating the intent to reimburse the general fund from the proceeds of tax-exempt bonds or other debt obligations.
Second.
A motion, a second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
Every meeting, Mary. Every meeting.
Have a good one.
You too, thank you.
Thank you.
Item three, Department of Planning and Zoning Purchase Retirement Fund and Transferable Development Rights Reserve for fiscal year 2026. Director Brinkley, Jen, how are you? They should be hot.
Good afternoon, commissioners.
Good afternoon. Yeah, please.
All right, so just so you know, myself and Commissioner Hans and Commissioner Cox need to acknowledge that each of us has an interest in one or more TDRs, because recusal would leave the board without a form to conduct business. We are each disclosing this interest and participate as prescribed by Ethics Code, Section 41-13A2.
So commissioners, we are here to discuss the Purchase and Retirement Par Fund and the TDR Reserve Fund purchase price for fiscal year 2026. I will read the memo. Background, the Board of County Commissioners established the Purchase and Retirement Fund in 1992 to purchase, retire, and permanently remove transferable development rights from the development rights market, thereby protecting additional farmland acres from development. The TDR Reserve is a county-managed program that facilitates TDR sales between farmers and developers and acts as a revolving fund. Discussion, there is $10,282,957 available for par fund purchases and $655,630 available for the TDR Reserve in the budget for fiscal year 2026.
And, and just for clarification, that's 10 million, not 10,000?
Oh, oh, gosh, I'm sorry. 10 million.
Just for the public that hears that.
$10,282,957. My mistake. I am so sorry. Since 2021, the Agricultural Land Preservation Fund has also been funded by $1.170 of each of $5 collected in recordation taxes to directly support land preservation in Calvert County. The par funding for fiscal year 2026 includes $2,788,000 allocated from the general fund, comprised of intergovernmental revenue generated by the state agricultural transfer tax and the revenue collected from the recordation taxes dedicated to the land preservation fund. The TDR Reserve funding comes solely from the prior year's balance in the revolving fund. The Agricultural Advisory Board recommends a purchase price of $6,230 per TDR for FY 26, for the FY 2026 par cycle and the TDR Reserve. The Agricultural Preservation Advisory Board assessed TDR and land values when establishing the recommended price and reviewed the value of recent private market sales of TDRs. Private market sales of TDRs in the county program averaged $5,000 per TDR in calendar year 2024 and $4,600. year 2024 and $4,671 in the first half of 2025. Agricultural Preservation Advisory Board continues to support the need to fairly compensate participants for the value of the land they have protected while seeking to reach as many applicants as possible and utilize the available funding to its maximum potential. A maximum impact of $10,938,587 is available in the fiscal year 2026 budget. Conclusion/recommendations. Staff recommends the B.O.C.C. consider the Agricultural Preservation Advisory Board recommended purchase price for both programs and direct staff to open the par cycle to receive applications and continue with the TDR Reserve program. I'll take any questions you may have.
Questions?
I'm good.
Answers? So, Jason, or the minor and major subdivisions that we have in the pipeline is how many?
There's not very many major subdivisions, if any, in the pipeline at the moment.
So, do we know how many TDRs we will be possibly selling this year?
Let me take a step back. There are a few in Prince Frederick, but outside of that, there's nothing new in the pipeline, other than what's currently being finalized.
What's currently there? Okay.
And I'm not sure if all of those have purchased their necessary TDRs at this time.
And how many did we sell last year?
So, last year, we had applications of, 10 applications were received for a total of 133 TDRs. In the end, two of those, one of those applications did not qualify. Two applications were rescinded. They were withdrawn. In the end, we sold 55 TDRs from seven complete applications.
And that was in both the par and?
No, no, the...
That's just the par?
That's just the par.
That's just the par?
That's just the par. That's not for the reserve, no. No, I don't have the number memorized for the reserve, but it is...
So, the one applicant was disqualified for what reason?
They were under the impression that because they were a farm, they had TDRs, but they did not realize that they had to be in the program first before they could certify TDRs. There was a disconnect in what they believed to be true.
So, why the increase in the purchase price?
So, the Agricultural Preservation Advisory Board, they, we looked at various factors. We looked at the purchase price for the private transactions for the past year and a half, and we also looked at the price of inflation in housing that is put out by the, that is put out by the federal government. We also looked at the ag census that comes out every five years, and we also looked at mouth settlement prices in the region for mouth properties. Taking all of that information, particularly, the board was focused on what the going price would be for a typical, you know, small size, an acre or so lot within the county. And they use that and the inflationary data to come up with a purchase price. And they felt that, they felt that it, that the landowners need to be fairly compensated and felt that they would want to recommend an increase.
That's all that happened. About something?
What was the price last year?
6,000.
6,000 even.
6,000 even.
Motion?
Sure. Nobody has any more questions?
I don't. I read the Advisory Preservation Board's letter, looked at it, asked my questions. I'm good with it.
I'm moved that we set the purchase price recommended by the APAB of $6,230 per TDR for both the par and reserve programs and direct staff to open the par cycle to receive applications and continue with the TDR Reserve program.
Second.
Thank you.
A motion of second. Is there any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. President, I'm moved that we recess until 1:40.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion of second to recess for 30 minutes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We'll see you back in 30 minutes.
I understand that.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. I will call the Board of County Commissioners meeting back to order. Our next item on the agenda is a presentation, Divide Community Resources Americans with Disabilities Act Self-Evaluation and Transition Plan Update. Ms. Culver.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Come on up.
So, good afternoon, everyone. Commissioner Skeetko Nash, Special Projects Manager for the Department of Community Resources with.
Jacqueline Culver, Deputy Director, Department of Community Resources. Would you like us to read our memo, or would you like us to just hop right into the presentation?
You can just hop right in.
You know, we're slow talkers over here.
I know.
I think they're getting it up.
All right. All right. So, again, today, I will be providing our annual update on the Americans with Disabilities Act and Self-Evaluation and Transition Plan. This is the first full year update since the plan was adopted in September of 2024. So, over the next few minutes, I will walk you through our progress, what's underway, and what is to come for the next year. So, the purpose of today's presentation is pretty straightforward. It's to provide the Board of County Commissioners with an update, an overview of progress since the adoption of the Americans with Disabilities Act Self-Evaluation and Transition Plan, including key initiatives that have been accomplishments, those currently in progress, and the planned physical barrier removal projects planned for this year. So, the plan is not, the plan is not just a document. It's roadmap for improving accessibility across county facilities, policies, and services. Our goal is to make sure that residents with disabilities can fully access county programs and services. All right. So, again, in terms of background, the plan was adopted in September of 2024. It provides a roadmap for accessibility improvements across county facilities, including policies and services. So, we'll jump right into our key highlights and policy updates. So, we have our grievance procedure was updated for clarity and increased visibility through CMR. Our ADA webpage improvements are continuous. We have methods for feedback and our grievance mechanisms. I'm sorry. Our grievance mechanisms are, have been updated. Our service animal and mobility device policies have been developed and completed. And department liaisons assigned for each implementation procedure have been assigned for accountability. So, let me begin with our policy and procedural updates. We identified a total of 46 items to complete as a result of the plan that was adopted. So far, 17 of them have been completed, 13 are currently in progress, and 16 have not yet started. This means that nearly about two-thirds of our. of our policy and procedural work is either done or underway. It's also important to note that many of the items that are listed as not started are actually dependent on the progress of the items that are currently in progress. So, once that work is finalized, the next steps can move forward with the rest of the policy and procedural updates. This ensures that we're approaching implementation in a structure and logical order rather than kind of rushing pieces before the foundation is ready. In addition to updating our webpage to ensure that it is clearer, more visible, and our policy and things that we've mentioned before, I also want to pause to stress that the policies that were adopted, our service animal policy and our mobility policy, were not created in silo. They are actually the result of cross-departmental collaboration. So, for example, with those two policies, we received input from public safety, specifically animal patrol, parks and rec, and the sheriff's office. So, that kind of collaboration ensures that our policies are practical, enforceable, and reflect the realities of operations and service delivery. In addition to our department liaisons, we also have additional champions. I do want to highlight one person, Rosalyn in CMR. She has really been like our champion.
Coke getter, yeah.
Yeah. She's been making sure that other departments are including accommodation disclaimers on their flyers for events that go out so that citizens know who to contact should they require accommodations.
Anytime she reviews items in CMR, she makes sure that they have the ADA language needed. So, that's been really nice because we don't have to keep eyes on that. We know that they are doing what they need to do.
Next slide. In terms of enhanced tools, alongside our policy work, we've built new tools to support implementation. We have a real dashboard, a real-time dashboard and tracker that has been created to help us track departmental action items. It's more about just having data. It's about accountability and transparency. I do want to give thanks to Linda Turner for her really pushing for us to get the guidance from TS to really pull that off rather quickly. And so, that work and that system that they built allows us to really track things a lot easier, and it allows for the transparency that we need with regards to policy and procedural updates. All right. In terms of resources, the board allocated $1 million in funding for the FY26 budget for ADA building compliance. This funding will cover major barriers like van accessibility parking, striping, ramps, and curbs. On top of that, $12,000 was allocated to the operating budget to support Braille materials and American Sign Language interpreter services across departments. These resources ensure that departments aren't just responsible for compliance, but they're actually equipped to do it. So, turning to physical improvements, Phase One, Priority One improvements that were identified in the plan focus specifically on accessible parking and critical access updates. These projects are being planned and scheduled for completion this fiscal year, where they're permitting. General Services has been tasked with planning, scheduling, and overseeing this barrier work. They'll coordinate closely with other departments to manage parking lot closures during seal and curing, and to make sure that upgrades are completed efficiently and to our ADA standards. These improvements may not always be visible at first, but residents who rely on them will greatly appreciate them, and they will notice the impact and difference. All right. So, other items in the pipeline. Looking ahead, we have several initiatives in the pipeline. We're working with CMR to develop training and FAQ videos that explain ADA policies in a practical and easy way to understand. We'll also be posting the updated grievance procedure in all county facilities, including the CAB, and continuing to make ADA compliance updates on our webpage as policies and procedures continue to be approved and move forward. We'll also work to issue clearer guidance on how to request interpreter services for departments and for citizens. Again, I want to recognize CMR because they've been instrumental with helping us brainstorm ways to get this information out to the public, how to create different types of communication tools. And so, that type of collaboration will be really critical in ensuring that we meet both the procedural and policy updates and that staff and citizens understand their rights under ADA. All right. So, in conclusion, we've made significant progress since one year adopting the transition plan. We have clear momentum with 65% of policy and procedural items either completed or underway. Major budget commitments are in place, and visible facility improvements are planned. But just as important, we're building a culture of cross-departmental collaboration that will sustain the work long-term. As always, we welcome feedback on how we can continue to improve accessibility for Calvert County residents. So, comments can be submitted directly to the ADA coordinator through email, which is ADA coordinator is kind of hard to see, but ada coordinator@calvercountymd.gov. They may also visit our ADA webpage where the grievance form can be completed there, and they can submit comments and feedback there as well.
Done good.
All right. So, any questions?
So, those remaining items, how difficult are they?
Well-
We can speak to the policies and procedures.
Yeah, the policies and procedural items.
I don't think that they're ultimately very difficult or time-consuming. It was a kind of love cascade workflow. You have to do step one before you can get to step two. So, there's definitely momentum, and the departments are aware of our items. We haven't gotten any pushback on them. So, I believe that they are in progress and will be moving forward. The physical side of things, that is, you know, as funding and time permits and things come up, to be, you know, balancing new projects with stuff that's already in the pipeline.
That's your biggest stumbling block is when ADA regulations come up, and if we have the money, and how fast we can implement them.
Correct. And how ADA is implemented in general is just very difficult. It's not necessarily implemented through the standard building code process or through certain laws. It's handled a little differently, which makes it a little more difficult for, you know, the average person to understand what is impacted when. And I think one of the biggest confusions that the public has is that we're not the ADA overseer for the entire county. So, if there's a private property, private shop that you're at that's not on county-owned facilities, you know, we're not necessarily making the improvements there. But we are, you know, moving forward and doing our best to make sure all county-owned and operated facilities and land are accessible to the public and our staff.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll see you next year.
Hopefully. Next item on the agenda is Department of Planning and Zoning Priority Funding Area Certification for Calvert County and Calvert Elementary School Site. Shashida, it's good to see you.
How are you?
What happened to your foot?
You won't believe it. It was pickleball.
That stuff is dangerous.
Oh, my gosh. I ran into somebody in physical therapy, and I said, "Why are you here, pickleball?"
Yes, I stepped on a ball. I have a fracture and a sprain.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Slowly making my way. I'm improving. I started out on crutches and down to one crutch, and today you're seeing me in my best shape ever. So, just the boot.
Best shape ever?
Ever.
Since the injury.
Hi, I'm Tay Harris. I'm the Long Range Planner for the Department of Planning and Zoning, and Shashida Warner obviously needs no introduction, so.
She's with Calvert County Public Schools.
Okay. Today, we're here to talk to you about a priority funding area certification request. The Calvert County Public Schools is seeking a priority funding area certification for the Calvert Country and Calvert Elementary School Site located at 1450 Dares Beach Road in Prince Frederick in preparation for site redevelopment. Sorry, I'm going backwards. Okay. The Maryland Department of Planning advised the Department of Planning and Zoning in Calvert County Public Schools that the property is eligible for designation as a PFA under Maryland Code Finance and Procurement Article Section 5-7B-03C. To meet the qualifications, the property must qualify as an area where the principal use is employment, be served by public sewer, or planned for public community sewer in the 10-year water and sewer plan. The findings per the property include that the property is adjacent to the party funding area in Prince Frederick. It serves the Prince Frederick area, including the PFA, is designated a growth area on the 2017 Growth Tier Map. Designation is Tier 1A. I mean, you look at the definition of that, it means that it's not for residential growth, but rather the Tier 1A means it's just designated for growth, and this is what allows it to qualify as employment for the principal use, along with the fact that it is a school site. And the Growth Tier Map is included in the 2010 and 2019 Calvert County Comprehensive Plans. Additionally, the property is served by water and sewer. I'd like to correct, there's a mistake on this slide. The property is currently hooked up to public sewer and needs to be hooked up to public water. So, just keep that in mind. The property is planned for connection to the Prince Frederick Sewer Service Area and Water Service Area when the redevelopment decides. So, the sewer connection will become a new sewer connection, and then the water connection will be made. And I think I covered everything. One last thing is that this site has also been included in the draft water and sewage plan that's currently underway as a priority for connection to the sewer service area and the water service area to help it qualify for the PFA certification. So, on September 17, 2025, the Planning Commission found that the PFA certification request is consistent with the Calvert County Comprehensive Plan as required by the Maryland Code Land Use Article Section 1-304. And these findings were based on the fact that the property is included on the 2017 Growth Tier Map and designated Tier 1A, and that this tier map is included in both the 2010 and 2019 Calvert County Comprehensive Plans. So, based on these findings, the Department of Planning and Zoning recommends that the Board of County Commissioners certify the PFA request required under MD Code, Maryland Code Finance and Procurement Article Section 5-7B-08. Are there any questions?
Shashida, would I add something? Sorry.
Sure. I will say that this entire exercise that we are going through, one of the key reasons for this is because whenever we do any kind of school replacement or new construction projects, obviously, state funding is a large part of the funding mechanism. And one of the first items that needs to pass the smell test, if you will, is that the state Department of Planning, Maryland Department of Planning, needs to essentially support the project. And as part of that, one of the key things that they look for is that the project is in a priority-funded area. So, this designation is really a very important first step in order for us to get the state funding that we plan to get for this project. So, I would say that that's probably the most important element, and we've had meetings with Maryland Department of Planning to that end, and they've essentially taken us step by step through the process of what needs to occur. So, this would be the final step in that.
Oh, this is the final step?
Well, I would say that the approval would be the final step in the priority funding area designation in terms of what needs to happen here. Take and speak more to that in terms of the paperwork and the submission.
Right. MDE's approval, since the Planning Commission already determined that's consistent with the Calvert County Comprehensive Plan.
And what is long-range plan for this area for, you know, just-
New schools? That's the only reason she comes to us.
Yeah, I know. Two schools or one school or?
So, yeah, I will say, one of the things that we did recently with the Board of Education is essentially, we did a test fit study to see in terms of the green space that exists between the existing Calvert Elementary and Calvert Country, whether a facility could be located there. One of the other pieces that is important to note is that Maryland State Department of Education is also part of one of the agencies that has to support the project. So, our plan is to do a replacement Calvert Elementary School. We also have, as you know, a Calvert Country School project. However, that particular building, renovation is not possible because those students cannot be relocated. They're medically fragile. So, we've really been looking at a replacement facility. And so, in order for the project to get that full state support, it looks like it will be an adjoining facility. The specifics of how that would be fleshed out, what that would look like, we're going to be seating an educational specifications committee to really work out the programmatic requirements. We're planning on doing that this fall, winter, starting that process at that point. So, that is the plan for the redevelopment, is just to essentially utilize that space to locate replacement facilities. And then, those existing buildings, we're really looking at other uses, like the Calvert Country building. Could it potentially be utilized for the pre-K requirements that we have? We're really going to be looking at that or Alt-Add. Those are some of the considerations that we're looking at. Calvert Elementary, that building, we don't have a swing space right now for any of our major projects. We've really had to noodle them in where we could. So, it really gives us a little bit more flexibility to really plan, you know, in the future. So, those are kind of some high level.
No, absolutely. And you still have the board over on the backside of the school, right?
We do. We do. And, you know, I know that there's nothing in the CIP anytime soon or, you know, in the future for that building. But if that building needed to be renovated at some point in time, it's quite old, where would we move those folks? So, is there a swing space that could be used? So, you know, that existing building could be utilized for that and for other functions as well for swing space.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
You said that school was quite old?
Oh, I was talking about, oh, did I say the school? No, I said that building is quite old. I was talking about Brooks.
So, kind of off-topic a little bit, however, is there any talk or any plans to expand CTA?
There are not any plans that we currently have in the CIP. I do know that Principal Akins has done a great job with expanding some of the offerings. I think that there are just some internal conversations in terms of some of the programs, looking at some spaces. But no, there are no, there are no plans to expand the CTA.
I was at a meeting last week with them. I believe they turned away 84 students this year because they don't have the space for them. It's unfortunate, that's all.
It is. It's a good problem to have, but you're right. Absolutely. That's certainly something that we can, you know, look at in terms of future planning. Our CIP currently is chock-full of projects because we definitely have a lot of, you know, buildings, as you know, that were built in the 90s. Those systems have come due. So, unfortunately, that does place a strain on, you know, some of the requests and some of the things that we need to do. So, shoehorning even additional things gets to be difficult, but that's certainly something we can look at.
I believe that number's just going to increase because you've got so many more kids wanting to go into trades now, and it's being more acceptable, so to speak, than not going to college. So, I think they're going to be turning away more and more. Hopefully, we can hook up something with CSM or something if we can't do expansion there.
That would be, that would be good. Sure.
Question about Northern Middle School. Is it on target?
So, I will tell you that they had a lot of rain over the last two months during the summer. It was definitely quite wet. They are holding the same target date for, they plan to be completed by the end, so really move in in the fall of the- so really move in in the fall of the 2026 school year. We will see, we're really keeping a close eye on that to see if that date is going to need to move. So, we're in constant conversations. They are making up the schedule in some areas, behind in some other areas. So, it's a little early to tell at this point, but we basically have a cautiously optimistic view on that at this point, so.
So far, are they financially on target?
Financially? I, would you, would you expand on that?
Well, in other words, we allowed, we allow a certain amount to build the school. Are there any overruns or anything like that?
No, no, that is not an issue. And at this point, in terms of, in terms of our state allocation for the upcoming CIP, we are pretty confident that we're going to get our state allocation for Northern Middle. So, in terms of the funding stream, that is adequately funded as well. So, I think we're, we're good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for funding us for the project. Appreciate that.
We're good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So, this is under presentations, not action items?
Yeah.
So, are you asking for? You can ask them.
I would like to ask, per this discussion, is it safe to say that the Board is going to certify the PFA request? There is a letter that needs to go to the Maryland Department of Planning that has to be signed by Commissioner Hans?
I'll make a motion that we certify the PFA request and have Commissioner Hans sign the letter.
Have motion in a second. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Very welcome.
Next item on the agenda is a work session, Department of Planning and Zoning, proposed repeal and replacement of the Preservation Rules and Regulations. Jen again.
I'm back.
Rachel's coming up this time. Welcome.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'll let Jen take it away as far as walking through the PowerPoint. So, you get to begin and end your day with Planning and Zoning.
Something wrong with that?
So, Commissioners, I would be happy to read the memo if you would like, or if you would like me to jump right in?
You can jump right in.
No, okay. So, we're here this afternoon to discuss the Agricultural Preservation Rules and Regulations for the Agricultural Preservation Program in Calver County. So, the purpose of this afternoon's discussion is to talk about the proposed changes to the rules and regulations, to discuss the public comment received in response to the proposal, to discuss options to address the public comments, and to request further direction from the Board of County Commissioners prior to scheduling a public hearing. Now, to give some background on the project, in 2020, the Transferable Development Rights Committee convened to review the TDR program. And one of the committee's recommendations for improvements was to lift the moratorium on the creation of new agricultural preservation districts once changes recommended by the Agricultural Preservation Advisory Board are adopted into the rules and regulations. Now, developed in 1978, the rules and regulations have gone through several text amendments, but have not been comprehensively updated since the program was initiated. All participants are required to be in compliance with the Calver County zoning ordinance as well as the rules and regulations. And updating the rules and regulations is the last recommendation of the committee to be completed as the county prepares to reopen the program. So, primary objectives of this update are to supersede all previous versions and apply a uniform set of regulations to all APDs, to incorporate and codify policies, procedures, and decisions into a single cohesive document, to strengthen the program by addressing issues and challenges the program has faced, to provide for clarification for consistent administration of the program, and to evaluate program eligibility criteria in preparation for lifting the moratorium on APD creation. This slide gives you an overview of the timeline of the project. So, in 2020, an initial draft was prepared by staff and the Agricultural Preservation Board. As I mentioned, that TDR committee offered several recommendations. In 2021 and 2022, revisions of the document continued as other recommendations from the committee were implemented. Now, in 2023, work begins on updates to the Calver County zoning ordinance. And in the 24 to 25 timeframe, the document is revised to be consistent with the new zoning ordinance as that process moves forward. In March of 2025, we had a document approved by the Agricultural Preservation Advisory Board. And then in April and May, we took those proposed changes to be presented to various stakeholder organizations. Some of the stakeholder organizations included the Local Farm Bureau, the Calver County Soul Conservation District, and our local Forestry Board. On April 8th, 2025, if you recall, we came here and gave a short presentation to you all about those changes, and you approved for us to move forward with the adoption process. On August 20th, 2025, the proposed changes were presented to the Planning Commission for their information.
What was the outcome of that?
So, that was just an informational meeting. That was not for them to actually determine whether it was in compliance, consistent, excuse me, with the zoning ordinance and the comprehensive plan. It was purely an informational presentation for their awareness. And then on August 28th, 2025, we held a public information session to present changes to the public and provide a forum for questions and comments. So, this next slide is an overview of the proposed changes in the rules and regulations in the draft document. It reorganizes and simplifies the overall document. Importantly, it clarifies processes and procedures. I think that's really important for transparency. It includes necessary technical updates, updates eligibility criteria for APD designation and purchase and retirement fund applications. It includes a new TDR reserve program. That program, that program was approved and came into being in 2021, so that does not, did not exist in the rules and regulations, so we made sure to include that. It addresses allowable density in the APDs. It codifies policies regarding the use of APDs for private and public events. And it limits amendments or modifications to APDs within certain parameters. So, regarding the administration clarifications for the program, the proposed rules and regulations document incorporates past policy decisions and clarifies APAB processes and procedures in the following significant ways. It updates criteria and policies for the acceptance of an application for designation as an APD. It specifies the conditions for amending an APD or withdrawing an APD and outlines the procedures to be followed. It allows for the amendment or withdrawal of an APD only if it has not been permanently preserved and under certain conditions. And it defines when APDs are permanently preserved in perpetuity. So, the application requirements for APD designation. The process for creating or joining an agricultural preservation district, I should emphasize, is entirely voluntary. The application process and required documentation is outlined in Section 7 and 8 of the draft. The minimum documentation included in the draft is as follows. Course contact information for all owners of record of land proposed as an APD. Current deeds, descriptions, and boundary survey for the property proposed for designation to establish APD boundaries and to determine the net acreage of the property. To complete title history of the property proposed for designation, back to June 29th, 1967, this is the beginning of zoning in Calver County. Confirmation of or commitment to the development and implementation of a soil and water quality plan or forestry management plan as applicable, and all maps, images, and reports and certifications as required by the APAB. In terms of defining density in APDs, so once recorded, further development of all property within the APD is subject to the restrictions governed by the rules and regulations. The updated document ensures the program functions as intended and to the level legally necessary by clarifying that density shall be applied by APD and not by parcel, specifying that primary residences, buildable residential lots, and tenant houses all count towards density. Clarifies that tenant houses are accounted against density and the number of entitlements permitted as a result of changes to the Calver County zoning ordinance. For the ordinance effective March 1st, 2025, one tenant house is permitted per lot or parcel, provided that the property has received an agricultural use assessment from the Maryland Department of Assessments and Taxation, and the tenant house counts towards the permitted density of the property.
Can I stop you for one second there?
You may.
So, the first sentence, we are saying that you applied by the APD and not a parcel, but then in the last paragraph, you relating back to a per lot or parcel. So, can you clarify that a little?
That's specifying language from the Calver County zoning ordinance.
So, the first one, we're saying not a parcel, but then in the last paragraph, we're saying is permitted per lot or parcel. Doesn't make sense if we're trying to...
Is that just for a tenant house?
That's just for a tenant house, yes, yes. So, the density, so within the, within the APD based on acreage, then a certain number of lots are permitted. In the, in the current regulation, it refers to lots. And based on changes made to the zoning ordinance, then in the draft document, it talks about the number of dwellings or lots that are permitted within the APD based on acreage.
And Commissioner, I think to your question, we have a slide later talking about tenant houses in more detail. And I think that conversation will come up at that point.
Thank you.
So, I want to discuss the public response to the proposed draft. As I mentioned, we held a public information session on August 28th, and the public information night was well attended by current APD owners, potential APD owners, and the general public. Several written comments have been received to date, and we have provided those to you. You should have received those. Some areas of concern that we heard from the public were that the application requirements for APD designation, including boundary surveys, were too, were substantial and too restrictive. I'll talk about that a little bit more in a future slide. There was concern about the retroactive applicability to existing APDs. And there was some concern about residential lot and dwelling entitlements, which include the tenant houses. As far as the concerns about the APD application requirements, opposition to the level of documentation a landowner would be required to submit to apply for APD designation has been received. The requirement to submit a boundary survey of the proposed APD is of particular concern. The financial costs and burdens imposed by the regulation and the potential for unacceptable delays due to wait times for surveying services were among the reasons cited for the opposition. As proposed, the draft allows for the Agricultural Preservation Advisory Board to offer up to an additional $200 per TDR in any given par cycle to the first-time sellers of TDRs that wish to recoup the cost associated with the required initial boundary survey to encourage permanent preservation, incentivize participation, and to remove, oh, excuse me, and to remove density from the market.
So, question there. Under the other state programs, whether it be Rural Legacy, any of the other programs, do they make them pay for serving?
Yes.
So, Rural Legacy, it's up to the landowner to pay for it?
Oh, up to the landowner to pay for it. They require it, but my understanding is that they, they do, they can provide funds to do so.
The state pays for it?
They can, yes. Now, whether the MAF program does, I don't, I would have to find out and get back to you on that. So, boundary survey options. So, some options that we would like to present to you today to address the concerns from the public regarding the boundary surveys and the, and the requirements for application are to increase from $200 to $500 the proposed additional funding for TDR available to first-time, to par applicants who are first-time sellers of their TDRs. Another option would be to contractually allow participants to elect not to have a survey performed to certify TDRs based on deed and the best available data. However, all certified TDRs would be required to be sold in the first available par cycle with adequate funding, excepting only those TDRs necessary to create any lots the property would be entitled to. A third option would be to contractually fund surveys upfront from par funding with the condition that the survey shall be completed within a set period of time and that the number of, and that the number of TDRs equal to the value of the survey shall be deducted from the certification at the time of APD recording. In addition, you could consider including all of these options, part of these options, or none of these options in the proposed draft.
How much would it cost an individual to have their property surveyed? Do we know?
So, I am familiar on a personal basis with one that was about $10,000. And we were told at the event that night that someone who was interested had a... He gave the impression that the price was close to $40,000 for his very large piece of property.
Okay, and we only have one game in town, CAO Barrett. How quickly do they move?
It can... There have been projects in place for multiple years. But how much for a survey, I, just to have a survey done, I don't know that I could tell you. Have any idea?
There are, there are other options.
There are other options. I mean, they're the largest.
Yeah, they're the largest without a doubt.
There are...
But there's so many variables.
Three or four.
If, if, if you have recent surveys done next to you, it's cheaper. It's all over the place.
It is all over the place.
You know, one-stop shop, I don't think, as far as this is how much it's going to be.
The wait time for the work to be done was the second concern that most property owners had to the cost. The timing of how long it would take to have the work be completed in addition to the cost was another main concern of property owners.
And how long is the program going to be open? Would it be able to make it that fast?
What was their perception as to how long it would take to have their property surveyed? They must have heard it somewhere or been required.
I have heard someone say that it was at least six or nine months before someone could get to you. And that was just getting to you. That wasn't having the work done.
Correct.
But that's, you know...
Commissioner, anecdotally, we've heard that it's two to three years to complete a survey. But as Commissioner Ireland pointed out, it's going to be situational specific as far as that, whether that's going to be applicable across the board or not. But there is considerable wait time, and you're talking about five figures cost for most of these surveys.
If a person has a deed in place and has had a deed in place, what is the advantage to the individual to put out this kind of money and expend this kind of time? Does it benefit them or does it benefit us?
Depends on what the survey's at.
Yeah. Yes, it's gone both ways in the past where acreage has not been accurate per the deed. And that they'll come, after they have a survey done, they'll come in the door. And if they, if the survey shows that they have more acreage than what's on the deed, then they'll want to certify additional TDRs and vice versa. They won't come in the door if it's less, but then they've got an extra... They won't come in the door if it's less, but then they've got extra TDRs off based off of that, so.
Okay.
And some is one of the reasons why.
This is a property in Lesby that an individual bought for 150 acres, surveyed for 250. There's another property on Perrin Road that was supposed to be 90 acres when it was surveyed, it was 143.
Wow.
But you'll find a situation where there's less. I lost 10% when I surveyed my farm. My brother gained 10% on his farm, but it just depends on the deed. Like Todd said, if somebody surveyed next to you, their lines are sort of set, but some of these old deeds are to trees and stones and rocks, and they're just guesses.
Yeah, some of them are extremely old, and some of them are, are, you know, written in, you know, the distances are not in feet, they're in chains or in something, some other unit of measure, and they're, they're very old, and they're not necessarily, not necessarily accurate. And then as, speaking as to cost, you know, the, since they're farms, and we do have some smaller sized farms, but for the most part, they're going to be larger properties that are going to include, you know, longer, longer runs of the survey, so that's going to include more work than, than a house lot.
We've never required this before.
So, before, what would happen is that we had these old tax maps, so, and they were paper maps, and we didn't have GIS. So, what, so what we would do is we would record the APD with the amount of acreage that was on, based on the deed with the old tax maps. And those, some of those tax maps are not accurate, were not accurate anymore either. So, one of the good things that a survey does is that we would have the surveyors produce a small size sheet exhibit with the survey data on it, either in tabular form or graphic form, that would show the boundaries of that, of that APD graphically, which is extremely helpful because over the years and the changes, it, you know, we, in the office, to know exactly what's in or out of the APD, you can follow the shape of the, you can, you can look at GIS and compare the two, and that is really important for making sure that you know what's in or out of the APD.
Are you proposing that every single person that is involved in this program, that they have their property surveyed?
No, it's only for new applicants.
For new APD applications.
This is definitely for new applicants, okay? Is anything in your presentation today, does it, does it go back for people already involved in the program?
I think that's like, within two slides, or two or three slides, we'll be talking about that exact, exact issue.
Excellent, thank you, okay.
It's sort of towards the end.
So, one question on the survey. So, I decide to put my farm in the program, and I got to wait two years. Do you all hold a spot for me in the cycle?
Until your farm gets done.
Until the farm gets done, and will other people get ahead of me, and then will the money?
It's first come, first served, but there is quite a significant amount of money in the program at the present time. There have been times, I understand from Rachel, where we didn't have the funding that we do now, because back in, we reinstated the recordation tax money.
A couple years ago.
A few years ago, in that timeframe, when we were working through other TDR recommendations of the TDR committee, that was before my time. But having that recordation tax does mean there is, there is a more stable and more funding than we have now.
So, somebody could get pushed out with no funding?
Yeah, well, with the plan. If we are to reopen the program moving forward, it's, it, we're not like on a cycle like par for accepting APD applications. That's open ended. As long as the program's open, we'll be accepting and processing APD applications. That, it's different than par, which we do on a yearly cycle, and that's primarily because it's based on funding, and we want to make sure that we get all the applications at once so that we can score them appropriately per the criteria and the rules and regs, and then, oh, you know, get, use the funding that we have according to how people fall on that, you know, scale calculation. I have that exact thought, thank you. So, it's not that the par is, the par is cyclical, but you would not accept an application for an APD. We would accept that at any time, that would be continuous sign up at any time, whenever somebody is ready and has all the materials prepared, we would take it to the egg board. So, the next thing we need to discuss is the extinguishment, extinguishment of APDs. So, language was provided to the Agricultural Preservation Advisory Board for consideration of a provision to allow for the extinguishment of parcels of land enrolled in APDs which have been permanently preserved. So, this is different from withdrawal, because in the, currently, so in the, in the rules and regulations, withdraw of an APD that is not permanently preserved, that is an APD that has not utilized its TDRs, that's a different thing. This would be for the extinguishment of parcels of land which have been already permanently preserved, and from which TDRs have either been sold or utilized. And so, the proposal was for this extinguishment, only when extinguishment is necessary to provide for public services or utilities upon the recommendation of the Agricultural Preservation Advisory Board and the approval of the VOCC. Conditions for approval included that the extinguishment must serve a clearly identified and compelling governmental interest, that the applicant demonstrate that there are no feasible or prudent alternatives to achieve the stated interest, and that the program must be compensated with mitigation of newly preserved acreage or repayment of the TDRs as restitution to the Land Preservation Fund. The APAB voted not to recommend the provision as was presented to them, and they voted to remove it from the draft. Commissioner Grasso, we're, we're moving into your, your question.
Going back to that, which provision did APAD not want, if you will consider? The bottom, the bottom sentence on that last page?
What did they not want? They did not want to allow for the extinguishment of any permanently preserved properties for any reason. And so, to, to them, they had concerns about that that was opening the door to potential, So, we also need to discuss the retroactive application of the regulations. So, there was both opposition and limited support received to the proposal that the draft rules and regulations supersede all previous versions and apply a uniform set to all APDs. Comments and recommendations received included that changes should only apply prospectively to new APDs and not retroactively to existing APDs. We received comments that all rights, entitlements, and withdrawal provisions in place when the current participants enrolled should be grandfathered. That rules governing the existing APDs should remain binding unless landowners voluntarily opt into the new rules. And there was suggestion that we establish clear provisions regarding applicability and consider applying a grace period on existing APDs if regulations are to be applied retroactively.
How many lawsuits will we be opening ourselves up to?
There's approximately 500 APDs.
When someone, I'm sorry.
I, I think that's, that's the, that's the potential.
The potential to that.
Yeah, I can't remember, I think it's 519, I think that might be permanently preserved, 519.
So, when I buy a car at 2.9% financing for five years, and the bank, two years later says they changing the rate on me and changing my terms, and not giving me a free oil change, what, what am I supposed to do to adapt that contract? These are basically the same contracts that we have applied to these APDs, now we want to change them.
And this is the issue that we have received the vast number of comments on.
I don't think we ever should have gone down this road with people who already have contracts with us. I, I think it shows, I think it, I think it stinks. It stinks on our part. You're in a contract, you honor a contract, you want to make changes, start it with the new people who apply. But it, it is lousy, it is low to not grandfather these people in, in my opinion. It's awful, absolutely awful. I don't think we should even be discussing this.
So, in discussing the resident, in the residential lot and entitlements, dwelling entitlements, this is another piece of this question that we are, are debating at the moment. So, opposition has been received to the draft rules and regulations regarding changes to lot and dwelling entitlements for existing APDs. The draft rules and regulations have been changed to be consistent with the March 2025 Calver County zoning ordinance, with tenant houses being counted against the number of entitlements permitted within the APD. Per the draft, tenant houses are considered accessory to the farm and its primary residence, and are to remain in contiguous ownership as the primary residence and owner or operator of the farm. Pre, and you should also know that pre-existing residences are accounted for by the APD recording and, and/or the recorded TDR certification. And those pre-existing residences include both principal dwellings and tenant houses within the APD. I would like to, as an aside, mention that one of the things that we are working on is that we want to make sure that we are accounting for all of those and accounting for if the, when, if and when the program reopens, when the program reopens, making sure that we are accounting for the density that the property would be allowed under current zoning, and making sure that we have a good record of what the reduction in density would be moving forward for new APDs, and that is very important to the integrity of the program. So, that is something we are also working on. And that ties into making sure that those recording documents are, are, are updated. And we should also state that a text amendment to the Calver County zoning ordinance may be needed for further clarification.
Is there a limit to how many tenant houses I can build?
In the current zoning ordinance, only one. In previous zoning ordinances, there were, there were more than that.
How many?
There were, well, it was one per 25 acres, Rachel, correct me if I'm wrong, one per 25 acres, I'm doing all right? Okay, so there was one, and then there was two categories, so there was initial tenant house, and then there was up to two additional tenant houses. Each, for each one, you would need an additional 25 acres.
So, I have 50 acres, how many lots can I sell, and how many tenant houses can I build?
On a, on a 50 lot?
50 acre.
On a 50 acre piece of property? Yes, so if you had fif, if you have 50, you have 50 acres, between 50 and 75 acres, you would be eligible for two lots, and with the current zoning ordinance.
No, don't go current on me. What was it before?
Oh, I'm so sorry.
You're trying to change it.
No.
Trying to get to where you started.
Gotcha, 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 gotcha. So, you could create two lots, and let's assume there was no, let's just assume there was no house on it.
There's got to be a house.
Okay, all right, so you want to go. There's a house, so then the, the way the rules and regulations were, would be two lots in addition to the existing house, to create two lots. If you had those two lots, then you would have to have, and one of those lots was 25 acres or more, you could put a tenant house on it.
So, I can have four houses on 50 acres?
Four, the, the pre, the previously existing one, the two lots, but those lots would have to be, one of those lots would have, any one of those three pieces would have to be 25 acres or more.
And I would need 20 TDRs?
No, you would only need 15 TDRs, because your pre-existing house is already, the density has already been deducted on the recording documents. It's already been accounted for. So, but technically, yes, at time of certification, those five would have been taken off.
So, I would only have 45 TDRs for my 50 acres.
Roughly.
Assuming great land.
I'm allowed 15, I need 15 acres for my three lots, because I don't have a farm anymore, I have a subdivision. So, I'm really only allowed to sell 15 TDRs of the 50 acres. Is my math right?
No, if you had 50 acres, you don't get two lots.
If I have 50 acres, I have an original house, you're taking the five TDRs off for the original house, that leaves me 45 TDRs.
Yes.
You told me I can create three lots, that's 15 TDRs.
But you don't need one for the tenant.
No, you would have the residue, you would have two lots and the residue with the existing house on it.
Yeah.
I don't need TDRs for a tenant house.
Right, how to?
No, we, you, we require TDRs for tenant houses.
So, it will be 15, then, now it'll be 15.
Yeah, 15. So, really, I'm only selling 20 TDRs off 50 acres, or 25.
What are we trying to do here? I mean, what, what, what are we doing?
We're trying to preserve land, is what we're trying to do.
Trying to preserve land, but why are we getting involved in tenant houses? Are your, are your children living in them?
But they sell, they cut them off and sell them.
So, the tenant houses are, they're defined in the zoning ordinance as to be used for farm labor for a person or family that is associated with the operation of the farm. And there are many farms that exist, there are farms in Calver County that have existing tenant houses or have old houses on them.
So, so what, what will the change accomplish? Why are we changing it? Why are there restrictions on tenant houses?
The change intent is to conform to the Calver County zoning ordinance, which says that the, the tenant houses now count towards density. So, if you had an existing tenant house, then you might, depending on the size of the property, you might not be able to get the same number of lots that you were previously under the current rules and regulations you would have had.
Is that a negative for people who have already been in this program to change
For those individuals that could be affected, it could be.
Depending on how many acres you have, yes.
Depend on how many acres you have, yes.
They have a lot of acres.
If we change it from tenant house to ADU, then that doesn't count towards density.
Tenant house has become an obsolete term anyhow, there should be accessory dwellings.
So, from, from you going forward.
And that speaks to this slide here. So, this is a slide compares detached accessory dwelling units versus tenant houses. So, until recently, we did not have, in the zoning ordinance, detached ADUs. That came out of the state, changed in the state law, is that right? Well, not that we didn't have them, but it made them more flexible, made them more flexible. And, and with the update to the zoning ordinance, we increased the allowable square footage that an ADU could be, from 900 to 1500 square feet. So, ADUs were also known as accessory apartments, which were limited to 900 square feet previously, and they would be either attached to the primary residence, or, or if they took up the basement of the, they would have to be within the, within the primary residence or attached to the primary residence. But in this new zoning ordinance, we have detached ADUs as well, and the comparison between the two is that a tenant house is the occupancy is restricted to a person or family associated with the operation of the farm. The property must qualify as a farm with an agricultural use assessment. The property must consist of 25 acres or more and meet the same setbacks as a single family dwelling. A tenant house may not exceed more than 1500 square feet in gross floor area, and it is counted towards the permitted, and it is counted towards the permanent density of the property. Attached, detached, excuse me, detached accessory dwelling units under the current zoning ordinance, occupancy is unrestricted, all lots and parcels in residential districts are eligible, there is no minimum acreage, but the property must meet the same setbacks as a single family dwelling. The detached accessory dwelling unit may not exceed more than 1500 square feet of enclosed space, including enclosed porches, and it is not counted towards the permanent density of the property. Should also note that a tenant house is an ADU, and under state law, a lot or parcel is entitled to a single ADU in addition to the primary residence.
Again, should be grandfathered in for people we already have contracts with. This should start with new properties.
So, here are some options that we're offering to address, for your consideration to address the question of residential density, to allow the first tenant house built on the APD to not count towards density, and to only count additional tenant houses in the rules and regulations. To remove the 1500 square foot size restriction on tenant houses in the Calver County zoning ordinance. To remove references from tenant houses completely from the rules and regulations, and simply reference the Calver County zoning ordinance for the applicable regulation. And to, or to proceed with a text amendment to the zoning ordinance for clarification and consistency between tenant houses and ADUs, preserved and unpreserved properties, and to address concerns regarding the treatment of existing tenant houses dependent on the direction of the VOCC.
And just so the, for the public listening, if you have like the Venn diagram, so to speak, of tenant houses and ADUs, because of changes in state law, you've got a lot more overlap now than you previously had. So, I think we've seen maybe a couple of tenant houses in the past five years anyway, and with the changes to state law and the easier. And with the changes to state law and the easier mechanism to have an ADU, it's really the easier path of, it's the path of least resistance to go. So I think that's somewhat what we're trying to do, is find a path to address that and correct that. And I think probably pushing it more towards looking at the zoning ordinance as a means to do that is a potential option. But to Commissioner Cox's point about potentially treating it as an ADU as a whole would be somewhat in line with the first bullet point on there, by just saying, okay, you get one per APD, period. And then anything else would either be an ADU or one of your allotments.
So I don't think we want to change the contracts or the rules of those people that already have contracts. I think moving forward, I would just get rid of tenant houses altogether. Because an ADU does the same thing as a tenant house. And the state says you have to allow ADUs anywhere they want to put them. So just get rid of it.
So we have to leave it in the old set of-
In the old, you can't change the old set.
So the other thing to think about or to realize is that in the covenant document that's recorded as part of the rules and regulations, it's, it has language in there specific to tenant houses.
And you're gonna have to address those as they come along.
And I think that's where that fourth bullet point might, Commissioner, if that's the direction, would be to clarify that in the zoning ordinance that tenant houses before March 1st of this year, or whatever that date is, are treated this way. After that, there is, tenant houses are considered ADUs, period.
They still gotta comply with current zoning regs, health department, and all that stuff.
And that would require around the text amendments on the next, as y'all recall, from earlier today, we just finished one round, so it'd be on whenever the next one is here in the coming month.
So the conclusion of the presentations, the staff request the B O C C review and discuss the comments received, and the staff suggested options, and direct staff how to proceed with the draft rules and regulations. And just to remind you of the specific issues that we've tried to address here in the presentation, those issues are the application requirements for APD designation, including the boundary surveys, the retroactive applicability to the existing APDs, and to address or clarify the residential lot and dwelling entitlements in the rules and regulations, which do include tenant houses, historically include tenant houses, and the tenant houses are referenced in the covenant documents for the APDs.
So I guess, can we go back and talk about surveys? Because I don't think we came up with a-
Well, I had suggested from the very get-go that we allow 90% certification of TDRs for non-surveyed land. I think that's a lot easier than paying for surveys and figuring out how to reimburse them after a survey.
No, the timeline, the timeline is-
And price?
If you want to get them surveyed, if your land is big enough, it's worth your money to get it surveyed. If not, you get 90%.
So 100 acres?
Yeah, 100 acres, you get 90 TDRs. If you want to get it surveyed and prove you got 100 acres, you might have 120 acres, who knows? But that was my simple response. But that's just my simple response.
So, you know, I think the point for us is to ensure accuracy and integrity of the program. And to make sure that we're certifying TDRs, that the acreage of the land under easement is as accurate as possible, and that was our purpose for doing that research.
As we said, it complicates it when it takes two or three years to get a survey done.
It does.
There'll be a new board. Things can change, and money can go away. This way, they can still get in, you know? We've got a little bit of coverage there in case the survey's off. That's all we're trying to get to.
For how many sets of rules are out there previously?
So the program's 40 years old, this is the first time there's been coverage.
How many, how many different contracts are out there?
I mean, each APD has a set of recorded covenants, so each APD is essentially it's-
Is each one its own unique entity?
It's, each APD is treated as its own unique entity, yes, yes.
But the basic rules are the same.
The basic, the basic rules have, they've changed slightly over the years, but the basic rules have generally been the same. You know, the clarification for APD density versus parcel density is one of the most important things that we are, we're trying to accomplish with this rewrite. A lot, there was, and then a lot of the clarification, so, you know, there was concerns expressed about some of the withdrawal procedures and some of the other things. But those are really just policies that the board has developed over the years, and they are the way that we have to operate in order to implement the program effectively. And so, so those details have been added to the draft for transparency, and so that people understand all the steps involved in such a program. So we want to make sure that we're protecting the program so that it can be sustained for the future and have that opportunity for future landowners and future farmers.
And I think we can do that, but we have to protect our, we're working for the people. We have to protect our people that have made this county what it is. And when you enter into contracts, you don't reneg on your contracts. That is low.
Believe me, I understand.
Moving, moving forward, and I agree with President Hans, I think the survey is, and with Commissioner Cox, I think the surveying is, that's tough. That is tough. And I, so I think we need to allow for as much flexibility to accommodate our constituents as we can. And as far as the tenant houses and the, what is, ADU, ADU, I agree with that. But, but moving forward, anything previous to this, any contracts we have have got to be honored.
Well, along with those same lines, you've got second and third generations involved in some of these contracts. So you don't have any choice but to honor, when it comes down to it. And that's what we should do, that's the right thing to do. So even the other sets of contracts that I was asking about before, is that 4-2D included in all of them? 4-2D was the, every, well, a lot of people that did, it was the district standards of current Calvert County zoning ordinance, except as expressly provided in section seven of the Calvert County Agriculture Preservation Rules and Regulations pertaining to the withdrawal of property or properties from the program. An agricultural preservation district shall be governed by the laws and regulations in effect at the time of its creation.
And that is in the zone, that language is in the zoning ordinance. And that's what we, that topic came up during our presentation to the Planning Commission. And that was actually intended to be a text amendment. And so if, if you were to approve a set of rules and regulations that would be retroactively, that would apply retroactively to all APDs, then that language would have been removed from the Calvert County zoning ordinance. And, and at the presentation to the Planning Commission, that's when the Planning Commission said, well, they had two comments, was, one, they wanted to make sure that the board was aware of that, which the Ag Board was certainly aware that we were developing a set of rules and regulations that would apply to everyone if adopted in that way. But they had concerns about taking that text amendment forward until this, until the rules and regulations were adopted, in whatever form the county commissioners decided to adopt them in.
So something I would like to see is, you know, we, this is a big document here.
It is.
We done touched on survey, we done touched on tenant houses, and retro contracts. But there's more in this document for commercial use, for public events. So I would like to see a red line copy of what's being added and what's being deleted for this whole, let's get it right one time and one time at a time.
So if it's a red line based on what we have now, it's a complete rewrite, so that would be an entire red document. But we can highlight on exactly what the key differences are.
Changes, yes.
And then incorporate the changes that we get direction on today for another work session before moving forward. We are completely on-
We're completely open.
And extinguishment criteria, like he was talking about, move a border for industrial or public health issue or whatever.
Yeah, we can relook at that language and have, yeah.
Yeah, I'd like to see the big picture as well.
So on that topic, just before we move on, and we certainly will do that, we're happy to do that, but bearing in mind that, you know, part, the reason for the program is to preserve in perpetuity the land for agricultural use and to limit the residential, not to eliminate, but to limit the residential development potential of the property to what, to what was agreed upon, you know, under the rules and regulations. And so, commercial and industrial uses are generally prohibited on APDs.
And I just want to be clear, I want everybody to be clear what's allowed and what's not allowed, and let's get it right the first time.
I think specifically, when it talks agritourism is a big topic of conversation, with when does it bleed over into commercial versus agritourism?
Absolutely.
And a lot of what's going on in agritourism today was never envisioned by the traditional agriculture that the program initially started under. And so, and there's some gray area in that, and there's some, there's some, we had the discussion about septic systems this morning, right? About the septic that's required. We have similar but different conversations among the Ag Board and among members of the Ag Board as to what constitutes, when does that cross the law?
Absolutely.
So it's a challenge.
Yes.
And it's, it is, it's not the largest document, but it's not insignificant. And with the complete update and rewrite, it is a significant step, and it's important. And I'm glad you all recognize it, I really appreciate it.
Can't wait another 40 years.
Got to get it right.
And who would want to run a program with ever-changing rules? Let's think about that.
Oh, my gosh.
You don't get any egg programs. Government does it all the time. Critical areas change rules.
But we're not going to. So we will be coming back with another work session, and we will figure that out, and we'll start working on a red line, and I very much appreciate your feedback.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
And thank you for everybody that submitted correspondence, too. We had a whole packet that we read through. We appreciate you being involved.
Me too. I was really pleased. I was really glad to see that you participated. I did.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, we are right on schedule. I think that brings us to public comment.
In order to maintain the order and decorum, the Board of County Commissioners adheres to establish procedural rights first established in 1989 that are applied in a viewpoint neutral way, only to genuinely disruptive or threatening behavior. As an invited speaker addressing topics pertaining to county government, please observe the following guidelines. All remarks and conduct must be respectful and refrain from personal attacks, inflammatory language, or disruptive behavior. Prior to commencing your remarks, please state your full name for the record. Individual speakers are allocated two minutes. Designated representatives speaking on behalf of an organization or group are allocated five minutes. Individuals seeking to influence government decisions are categorized as lobbyists and are required to register with the Ethics Commission prior to engaging with the Board of County Commissioners. There is no one online, so if there's anyone in the room for public comment, please come to the-
I would like to give you all a written copy of my statement.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
And before I start, I would also like to congratulate you on your standing. Given the complexity of the topic that you-
Please, microphone.
Given the complexity of the topic you're dealing with, you were remarkably coherent, and I was particularly reassured to hear how you wanted to protect the rights of county residents, so thank you. Commissioners, I am Lenzuza. I live in Solomons, and I'm speaking on behalf of Calvert Rotary. Thank you for this opportunity to address you, to suggest an additional way to improve water quality in county waters. On June 3rd, the Chesapeake Biological Laboratory reported on the condition of county creeks. The good news was that water quality had not gotten worse. The bad was that water quality had not improved. CBL reported that leaky septic systems in boat sewage pumped overboard continued to add pollution to local waters. These problems still need to be addressed. While CBL's recommendations addressed reducing pollution from these sources, they did not address ways to remove excessive nutrients from our waters. During your discussions with the CBL scientists, you addressed cost-effective ways to minimize pollution from failing septic system. President Hans, your focus on minimizing long-term costs to county residents was particularly commendable. Thank you. CBL did not address several topics that I suggest you consider. The first is that scientists previously advocated reducing lawn fertilizer because excessive amounts can be washed into nearby waterways by rain. Second is impervious surface. This includes hard surfaces such as roofs, concrete, or asphalt sidewalks and driveways. Scientists report that when such surfaces exceed 10% of a watershed, adjacent water quality declines because pollutants wash off of these surfaces into nearby waters. The Calvert Environmental Commission reports that the Mill Creek watershed has 15.2% of impervious surface. You are considering approval of Lesby Villas that would drain into Mill Creek. This development would convert some 30 acres of woodland to hard surfaces. You are also considering the construction of data centers here. These could also add a significant, a significant amount of impervious surface to our watershed. The third topic I'd like to raise is the need to remove nutrients to improve water quality. An effective tool to achieve that is oysters. A three-inch oyster can filter 50 gallons of water a day. This removes nutrients and reduces algal density, thereby improving the water quality. In addition, they convert nitrogen from the algae into their own body tissue, and their feces convert harmful forms of nitrogen into gases that pass harmlessly into the air. On June 28th, the residents of Solomon's Landing and the members of Calvert Rotary installed 1,000 square feet of oyster habitat in our marina. We are confident that this project will improve water quality in Back Creek. Why are we so confident? This past January, due to an extreme low tide, I saw the top of an oyster reef that my organization, Smocks, had planted 12 years ago on the opposite shore across from Solomon's Landing. As Commissioner Ireland knows, that sighting was good news and bad. It was good because I could see that our oyster reef had grown. It was bad because the temperature at the time was 26 degrees, which meant that the oysters that I could see could freeze and die. But the oysters that remained underwater were thriving. I'm suggesting that you support oyster restoration to improve local water quality in addition to upgrading sewage processing systems and limiting new impervious surface. How? Calvert Rotary is requesting you to persuade Maryland agencies to allow Solomon's Landing residents and Rotary Club to identify other locations in Calvert County creeks where we could restore oysters. Such an effort would not only improve local water quality, it would also help increase the earnings of our watermen, because the larvae from restored oysters would help populate reefs harvested by watermen. Recent reporting indicates that dockside value of Maryland's oyster fisheries soared from an average of $3.5 million between 2005 and 2010 to over $18 million last year. If you are successful in helping us obtain the requested approvals, this would not cost you $1. Calvert Rotary is willing to fund such projects as part of our effort to improve the environment of Calvert County. With your help, we can work together to reduce pollution in county waters. Thank you for this opportunity to address you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Zouz, are you gonna hang out for a little bit, or are you leaving?
Yes, I will, sir.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Thanks for the opportunity to firmly address my concerns regarding the proposed changes to the existing TDR program. First, I have grave concerns regarding the lack of communication to the existing TDR owners of proposed changes to the program. I found out quite happenstance that this was occurring, and I'm very alarmed that letters were not, or at least were not received, to the existing TDR holders providing information regarding the proposed changes and requesting feedback of the same. I have, since our discussion, spoken to a few others, and have discovered that they also got no communication and were unaware. Clearly, the county knows who we are. Every year, letters are sent at least once a year to TDR holders indicating the potential purchase price for TDRs. I, like others, find it unconscionable for the county to request existing TDR owners who ascribed to the rules and regulations in place at the times their TDRs were contracted to change them under the new program. The existing TDR program is an agreement between both parties, Calvert County and the farmer, with a meeting of the minds based on the rules and regulations at the time the contract was agreed to. These proposed changes certainly do nothing to enhance the existing program for the TDR holders. In fact, if approved, would take away TDRs. In fact, if approved, would take away TDRs. Was there an understanding of the repercussions of these proposed changes to the existing TDR owners? I want to believe that there was not. I can't fathom that they'd want to keep Calvert country or, as a historical slogan, or what's found in the mission statement of the county, preserve County, Calvert County's environmental heritage and rural character, when they proposed to do this to the farmers of the county. The farmer is the real steward of the land. Many profess to care about the farmer's welfare, few actually do with actions. I sincerely hope the Board of County Commissioners are the few that do, and it looks like you are, with the actions as such to stand for the integrity of the existing contractual agreements. And thank you for doing that. Just, and I know my time's just one, just quick sentence. Everyone looks at it as preserving the land of the county. From a farmer's perspective, we have no 401K plan. We have nothing other than the land that we invest in. So, for us, we are the stewards. No one cares about it more than we do. And to be able to keep it, but also get something out of it so that we don't work ourselves completely to death and have something for 401K, that's a little bit of a spin on also what the program does.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Thank you.
No? Caller seven, five, nine, one.
John.
Yes.
Sorry.
Sorry caller, you'll have to wait a
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Beth Bubser. I'm speaking on behalf of concerned citizens of Calvert County. Children's books that embrace traditional values, whose target audiences are infants up to six years old, are not found in the children's section of the public library. They are found in the juvenile section intended for ages eight to twelve. I believe these books are deliberately being misshelved. Here are some examples. Blackjack, The Ballad of Jack Johnson. This book is about the first black heavyweight of the world. A Change Is Gonna Come. This book is about the lyrics of Sam Cooke. Inspiring Anthem, A Rallying Cry For Justice And Equality. Our Children Can Soar. The book is about a celebration of Rosa Parks, Martin Luther King Jr., Barack Obama, and the pioneers of change. Stealing Home, Jackie Robinson Against The Odds. The picture book is about Jackie Robinson and his achievements in baseball. All four books are shelved in the juvenile section instead of the children's section. These books are written for children and discuss important milestones for African, for African-Americans. In addition, religious books are also impacted. Who Was Born This Special Day is a simple picture book about the birth of Jesus. Light the Candles, A Hanukkah Lift the Flap Book is a Jewish flapbook about Hanukkah. The Night Before Christmas by Clement Seymour is a traditional book and a Christmas classic. The same book, A Night Before Christmas, retold by Nolan Nixon, retells the classic with an African-American Santa Claus and family. The Night Before Christmas, Deep Under the Sea, reimagines the same story with Undersea Creatures, a non-traditional version. These all tell the same story but are shelved in different locations. The traditional versions are shelved in the juvenile section, but the non-traditional book is shelved in the children's section. These books are written for children. There are also secular examples. Over the River And Through the Wood, A Story Of A Family's Journey To The Grandparents' House For A Thanksgiving Day Celebration. This is a traditional classic version. Another version, Over the River And Through the Wood, A Holiday Adventure, is the same story with same-sex marriages. This is a non-traditional version. Since the stories are again the same, I would expect both books to be in the same section, but they are not. The traditional version is shelved in the juvenile section while the non-traditional version is shelved in the children's section. Meanwhile, the children's section is flooded with LGBTQ books. There is an agenda to introduce children to LGBTQ books at a very young age to normalize it. The content of these books is not appropriate for children of this age and do not align with traditional beliefs and values of most Americans. Parents should not have to explain adult concepts to toddlers reading children's books. We need to protect children from radical gender and sexual indoctrination. If any of these books was turned into a movie, it would not be rated G. We need to keep the children's section G-rated. Here are some examples. I'm Not a Girl, A Transgender Story About A Girl Who Believes She's a Boy. Ten Thousand Dresses, About A Young Boy Who Believes She's a Girl And Dreams About Wearing Dresses. Jack, Not Jackie, About A Girl Who Wants To Be A Boy. OK Is Gay, About A Boy Who Has A Crush On Another Boy. This Day In June Celebrates Gay Pride Parades, Pictures Of Men Kissing Men And Women Kissing Women. It's very explicit. If a book is not checked out and goes unread, the library will remove it from its collection in a process called weeding. This is standard practice to make room for new books. Since these books get shelved in a section where they will never be read or checked out, these great children's books are in danger of being removed from the library. The system could be used to censor books. The Dewey Decimal System is old and does not work. The system does not work with books that support, support conservative values. It separates them. All nonfiction children's books get shelved in the juvenile section, which targets eight to twelve-year-olds. What eight to twelve-year-old is going to check out a children's book? Eventually, the book gets weeded out and removed from the library. All children's books should be shelved together. Libraries are funded with taxpayer dollars. There's an imbalance of books in the children's section which are politically biased and left-leaning as the library promotes a liberal agenda to children and under-represents books with traditional values. Parents have a soft, parents have a false sense of security believing the children's section is age-appropriate. A five-year-old does not need to stumble across a book describing the transition from a little girl to a boy. We need to protect our children. I'm not asking for any books to be removed. The United States is a diverse nation. These traditional children's books represent a majority of our nation's population. We must represent everyone, including traditional views. The children's section needs to accommodate all children's books in one area, but separate it into two sections. All traditional books, including fiction, nonfiction, and religious, should be shelved together in the traditional children's section. All children's LGBTQ non-traditional books shelved in the LGBTQ non-traditional section. This will help parents, grandparents, and guardians direct their children to books aligning with their values and beliefs.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the room who wishes to provide public comment? Please come to the microphone. Everybody that wants to provide public comment, please line up at the microphone.
Thank you very much for this opportunity. I'm Jeanette Reiniker, LCSWC. I have been in professional practice, I'm a licensed clinical social worker in this county for thirty, a little over thirty years, and a shorter period of time in Montgomery County. I am representing also concerned citizens of Calvert County. And I am just asked to read a book because there is a lot to process in what was just said. But this is an example of a book, of the books that were mentioned that are in the little children's shelves. And I should mention that I have, over the years, dealt with these issues constructively. I think what's happening here is very dangerous. Ten Thousand Dresses. Bailey is a little boy that wants to be a girl. Every night, Bailey dreamed about dresses. A long staircase led to a red Valentine castle on each stair was a brand-new dress just waiting to be tried on. Ten thousand dresses in all. The first dress was made of crystals. When Bailey slipped the dress on, the crystals clinked against each other like millions of tiny bells. And when sunlight hit the dress just right, rainbows jumped out. With all her heart, Bailey loved the dress made of crystals that flashed rainbows in the sun. When Bailey woke up, she went to find mother. "Mom, I dreamt about a dress," said Bailey. "Uh-huh," said her mother. "A dress made of crystals that flashed rainbows in the sun." "Uh-huh. And I was wondering if you would buy me a dress like that." "Bailey, what are you talking about? You're a boy. Boys don't wear dresses." "But I don't feel like a boy," Bailey said. That was two minutes, wasn't it?
Your time is up, yes.
Oh, I thought, well, I'm speaking on behalf of Calvert County citizens.
It doesn't exist. It's not actually an organization that's been organized.
Oh, I didn't know that.
But we did give the first speaker five minutes.
Okay.
Each individual gets two minutes.
Okay.
Mr. President, I'm going to kind of give
May I just, I won't read anymore. May I just have one thought here?
What do you want to say to finish up?
This, this book presents parents so poorly. And this book is so disrespectful to everybody. And it's being placed in that young section and it's removing other books that should be available. So, this does not help anybody when you have identity issues, which are very painful. We need to protect our children. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The larger concern I have, Mr. President, is that the Board of Library Trustees is self-perpetuating. By state law, under the Education Article, the Board of County Commissioners cannot reject any application that is recommended by the Board of Library Trustees. So, as these citizens come with valid concerns and wish to have them aired, there is actually nothing the Board of County Commissioners can do. And we try to keep public comment limited to things that are county government-related that you have some control over. You have no control over the Board of Library Trustees by, by design, by state law. So, if you wish to continue, we can certainly continue.
Well, we just hope that you share these views with the library Board of Trustees, who do determine which books go in the library and which books. But if you showed up today, go ahead. Just remember, we don't have any say over the library.
I saw when you started, was it ten o'clock? This morning. I am not going to read your book then. But my name's Maggie Gorman. I've been a county resident for about twenty-two years and I'm very grateful to be here. I love everything about this county. I have a gaggle of grown children now. We spend a lot of time in the library. I know a lot of the librarians there. And I now work with Jesus the Good Shepherd, which is a church, one of our many churches in the county. This one's up north in Dunkirk and we have about two hundred and forty of our little kids, pre-K four through nine, coming through most Sundays to learn about their faith and how to live as disciples of Jesus Christ. So, I just wanted to show you the books that are, that are in the third grade through seventh grade section. So, I want you to picture third through seventh grade. And I just, I know you can't answer it, but I want to find out, why are they there? So, one is Light the Candles and it's a flapbook. There's no third grader that's going to want to read this flapbook. Beautiful story about who was born this special day with little animal asking, is it my birthday? Till it comes to the Christ child and the Christ child's not even named. It's a baby. Very beautiful picture. It's a picture book. Goes in the picture book section. And this is one, Our Children Can Soar, which would be more towards the first and second graders of the easy reader. There's literally four words or may, under ten words on two pages, the whole book. But very beautiful book, beautiful pictures that a parent could really go and inspire their children with. So, that's all that I wanted you to know. Just know that it's there for if your children or grandchildren are coming into the library, just be alert, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
What a pleasure to address the council. My name is Steve Plyler and it's interesting, I'm an example of a concerned citizen in why government and parents are so important. Example being when I was six, I remember every so, young, young man who hung out, then Freddie. Freddie had the cigarettes rolled up. He was a seaman. He didn't finish school. He didn't go to school and he was seeing the world. And I was influenced. I even had a captain's hat. I thought, ah, that's the life for me. My dad, as a father should, kind of, he said, we can work on that. Because he knew I was a kid. Next thing, Freddie had tattoos. One of my friends had a tattoo of a girl, you know, when you're young, right? Okay? It's colored in, where you think, oh, you're being influenced. So, influence is very important. See, as a government example being, we don't allow kids to get tattoos before they're of age. We don't let them smoke or we try to do the best we can to guide them. It's a tough job. They resent us when they're young. My own son, at sixteen, I told him, when you live on your own, do anything you want, young man. And he thanks me today, he's thirty-eight. So, what's the point? We have to be responsible and guide, not influence. I'll leave you with this. Education was vital. Ms. Williams was my third class, third class, third grade class teacher. I loved that lady. She made education seem like fun. And I'm thankful because I wasn't a good student up to then. And she propelled me and I'm thankful. So, you all have to be leaders and sometimes people say nasty things to you, why'd you do this or whatever. Stand tall, do the best you can, and I pray for you that you always do the right thing. God bless you. Thank you.
I assume that's everyone in the room. There's one caller. Make sure which way they went. One caller, seven, five, nine, one. Please press star six to unmute yourself. Identify yourself and whether speaking as an individual or the designated representative of a group.
Hi there. My name is Mary Bakker and I am speaking as an individual who has resided in Calvert County for almost thirty-five years. And I basically am echoing concerns about accountability in the public libraries. I understand that the Board of Library Trustees are the people that need to be addressed. I do. But I just think that what we're trying to do is be a voice to, just, just to make it official and that our governing bodies are aware that, you know, public resources and resources for our general population are very important and just scrutiny and, and doing things in a way that is fair and equitable is, I think, what we all seek, you know? And in today's world, it's just very, it just seems to be growing increasingly complicated. We have information at our fingertips on many venues. And we, as concerned citizens, just want to bring to the attention of the public of the concept of accountability, you know? And I am specifically referencing our public libraries. And my hope is that, you know, I have the same concerns that have been expressed in this room today, that, that our libraries are not becoming venues or vehicles for radicalization. Again, I, I respect due process, but I also respect the fact that as a governing body that's been elected, that you're aware that this could be a possibility. We will continue to just keep our eye on things though and, and just make sure that books found in our public library are equally accessible and locatable for everyone, not just a few people that might have an agenda. So, I thank you for listening to me. Good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President, we did reach out to the caller zero, four, four, one and not have not heard back. They called in earlier during a public hearing. And her concern was the advertisement signs that entered.
Yep. Do they have permission? So, you know, we've addressed that issue in the past. We've done road sweeps. Those signs are illegal. You're allowed to put a sign in front of your own property. You're allowed to put a sign on someone else's property if you have permission, but a lot of those signs, I believe the caller was addressing, are those signs, they pop up on Friday nights, they disappear on Sunday nights. So, we, we don't like them any more than anybody else. And as I say, we've done sign sweeps. We even had legislation last year. We have greatly increased the fine for those signs. We, we, we do notify business owners when they do that before we find them that it is illegal to put your sign in roadways and on property where you don't have permission. But for some individuals, they still seem to want to put their signs out on weekends. So, as I said, we're not out there every weekend pulling signs, but we do randomly do a sign sweep and we do find those individuals that have those signs out illegally. So, hope that addresses the caller's issue, but it's where we are. That brings us to Commissioner Reports. Commissioner Cox?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll keep it brief because we're running over time, so.
It ain't dark yet.
Okay. Congratulations to all the businesses open that up there at Armory Square. Had a couple ribbon cuttings, so stop by there. They are open, Aldi's and Foster's Grills, so stop by there and check them out. Also had the pleasure of joining Commissioner Grasso Saturday night at the Honor Flight. And them veterans, you know, spent all day long up in DC and coming home what they got back at eight-thirty that night at the gym, pouring down rain. Hundreds of people greeted them. It was just nice to see and, and the heartfelt thank you that It was just nice to see, and the heartfelt thank you that they emphasize with what Mark and that group did to honor the flight of the veterans. So congratulations to that group, and thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Grasso?
Well, I want to thank those of you who came here today to express your concerns about the books within the library. We may not be able to put a stop to it, but we gave you a venue to let other citizens who may not be aware of what is going on, the ability to maybe investigate further. And we're about working for our constituents. You are constituents. Your children and grandchildren are future constituents. And if this is important to you, as it is to me, then people need to hear your voice. So thank you for being here today. Well, we've been, we say we've been off for two weeks, but we're never off, believe me. We meet with numerous constituents over a given, any given week. And on the twentieth of September, I was asked to speak. Charlie Kirk was assassinated, and the people at Asbury and at Solomon's, there was a rally, a vigil for him. And I was asked to speak, and I spoke at both of them. On the twenty-first, I attended the Waterman's Boat Docking Festival, and that is always so much fun. I encourage anybody to go to it. I mean, you might not think it would appeal, but it's a family-filled day, and it's just a lot of fun. They didn't ask me to go on a practice run in one of the boats. I was looking forward to it, but they didn't ask me this year. On the twenty-third, I attended Foster's ribbon cutting. And on the twenty-fifth, I spent, except for the first event, the whole day with Secretary Coker. He's the Secretary of Commerce. He's a really nice guy, and he listened to us, and he so appreciated Calvert County, and everybody did a great job. Thank you, Julie. It was really, really a good experience. Tended the Calvert County Fair. It was nice to see a lot of my constituents there, friends and people I didn't know. And I went on Friday, and that's the day the schoolchildren are there, and they just had so much fun. I know my granddaughter, who's fifteen, it was the first time she was allowed to go with her little girlfriends, and she just had a ball. And as Commissioner Cox said, we did attend the Honor Flight at Huntington High School. We were honoring Korean vets and Vietnam vets, giving the Vietnam vets especially the welcome home that they did not receive. And I was able to speak there, and we shook their hands, and we thanked them for their service. It was my third year doing this, and it's just absolutely wonderful. They're just overwhelmed when they come in, and you're cheering for them. It's always very touching. Oh, and Bob Branham, who is our Director of Parks and Recreation, he gave up his time and was really, really an influence and a driving force. I think that's about all I have now. Yeah, that's about it. Thank you.
Commissioner Ireland?
So on the fifteenth, Alliance Club had a golf tournament at Chesapeake Hills. Two things I want to take out of that was, one, Alliance Club is getting back together. I mean, a lot of these organizations, Calvert County, they're all volunteer organizations. If they can hit volunteerism, it's something that has changed a lot throughout the years. But anyhow, they're recruiting. If anybody's interested in joining Alliance Club, they help the community with eyeglasses. They're at events, they're constantly doing fundraisers, good bunch of guys. And not only that, the golf course employees, that must be a good place to work, because everybody down there is happy. I think it's come a long ways. I've been, I'm not a golfer. However, I'm down there from time to time for different events, and a good bunch of people working down there. The Longest Table Event was on the sixteenth. They had a packed house that rained, so they weren't able to have it outside. Typically, they have it between the District Courthouse and the Circle Courthouse. But I tended to have it at St. Paul's, and it was kind of unique. They split us up into different groups, and at each table, you had people you didn't know. And you talked about different programs for our youth and what we could find positive for our youth to do. It was, like I said, a very well-tended event. The twenty-first, as Commissioner Grasso said, was a boat docking contest in Solomon's. And I left there and went to the Miss Tranquility Contest up to Fairgrounds. You know, it's unfortunate, they offer decent scholarships, and you only have two males and two females apply. I mean, for two males for Lord Calvert, and two females for Miss Tranquility, I would encourage a lot more kids to try to get involved. And there's scholarship funding. I think it's a fifteen-hundred, thousand, and a five-hundred on each side that those kids get towards school. It's free money, but, you know, you have to put a little bit of work out there. You gotta do essay, you gotta do a speech, and like a poster contest, and a few other things. But it's good money, and like I said, we just need to get the parents to encourage their children to join these things and get into them. Again, unfortunately, the fair was a little damp this year, as Commissioner Hans talked about earlier this morning. Was that yesterday? What was that? But anyhow.
It was this morning.
We talked about the hospice hog and the 4H in general, that whole auction. It's a lot of fun. If you've never been to the 4H auction and you want something fun to do next year on a Saturday night at the fair, go to it. And the hospice hog, this year raised twenty-nine thousand dollars for all the proceeds, went right to hospice, which is outstanding. The only thing I want to touch back on, in the beginning of our meeting, we had M.D. in here, and they basically gave an update on the projects that Calvert County is gonna see. It looks like to me that two-thirty-one's gonna see three projects between now and twenty-eight. There's several areas on two-thirty-one that definitely need to be addressed. The Skipjack was one, Adelina and Six is, or Adeline and two-thirty-one was another to open it up, and then Toys at Mason Road was the third. But like I said, it looks like those projects are gonna be completed. They did talk about the Solomon's Bridge, but I don't know if some of us are gonna live long enough to see that, unfortunately. They're in the process now of doing a couple studies with the Coast Guard and the depth of the water and the soil types in the water. But again, as you can only imagine, that's the infancy stages of that project. So that's all I want to circle back on from today.
All right. Thank you. Two weeks. Have we met since the Aldi? We cut the ribbon at the Aldi grocery store. I don't think we've met since then. So there were four hundred people waiting to get into Aldi that morning when we cut the ribbon. The regional people from Aldi said it was the biggest grand opening they've ever had. The young lady in the front of the line says she got there at four AM to be first in line. So it was, and this was mentioned, we've cut several ribbons here lately. Michaels, Foster's, cut a lot of ribbons here lately. So it's a good sign when people want to open businesses in your community. You know, people talk about our lack of things, but we do have business owners and operators out there that want to operate in Calvert County. So that's, it's always a pleasant surprise to see how many are willing to come. Last Monday, I spoke to Southern Maryland Leadership Class down at the Harry Lundenberg School. It's really interesting. Every year, they get the three presidents from the Southern Maryland counties to come, and we do a little panel discussion. And, you know, we all say we're different, but we're really not. When we talk about the issues that we face in our own counties, we're all really talking about the same thing. And it's really good to see the leadership class of citizens who want to get involved, want to be educated about government and their rural surrounding areas. So it's always a fun event. Also, Saturday night, I was at the 4H auction with Commissioner Ireland while they were at Huntington in the pouring now rain. At least we were under a roof.
We were inside.
Oh, you were inside?
We were inside, yes.
Okay, that's good.
It was great.
But as Commissioner Ireland said, that if you've never been to the auction, you don't have to spend money, but you should really come and watch it once to see these young kids, little kids out there, and their animals are twice as big as they are. I mean, they got three-hundred-pound hogs and a fifty-pound kid out there trying to lead it around a ring. But the auction will do your hard good to see that citizens that we have in Calvert County, they're so generous, that they'll buy these animals and they just donate them back. They don't even keep them after they buy them, just to help these kids. So as Todd said, they raised twenty-nine thousand dollars for the hospice pig. Every year, a young person raises a hog, donates it to the auction for hospice. And as he said, all the money goes to hospice, and they'll resell that pig eight or nine times. People just keep buying it and giving it back. I think the most it brought at one time was about twenty-five dollars a pound a couple times.
I think this was a record breaker. I think twenty-nine thousand was a record breaker for the pig.
It really warms your heart to see that, and should go to the fair if you haven't been to the fair. I want to thank everybody that came out to the data meeting that we had last night, Town Hall meeting. Want to thank staff for doing a great job. We had some speakers come from out of the county to help educate our citizens about data centers. Want to thank them. Oh, and last Saturday, I went to Eagle Ceremony for Boy Scouts. I don't miss many Eagle Scout ceremonies. And every, almost everyone is a little unique. So Saturday, I had a unique experience. I had two young men that had achieved the rank of Eagle. They had become friends in Cub Scouts for the last fourteen years. They've been best friends. The one young man got his Eagle Scout in March of twenty-four, but his friend hadn't. So they wanted to do it together, so he waited. His friend got his Eagle Scout this past summer, and they had to coordinate a day when they could both get together, because Michael Johnson was in Marine Boot Camp. And they had to wait for him to get out of boot camp to be at his Eagle Scout Ceremony. That's the first time I've ever given an Eagle Scout badge to a Marine. This young man has already completed boot camp in Marines. He left straight from high school, went to the Marines. The two young men, I mean, these Eagle Scouts, I brag on them all the time. They are such fine individuals. Now, it's boys and girls, but it's such a great program. I'm trying to get my grandson in, because these kids, if you get in the right troop with the right leaders, it will make them outstanding individuals. You just, you hear the stories about these kids and what they do at such a young age. It's so impressive. But this young man is the first Marine I've ever been at an Eagle Ceremony for. So nineteen years old, and he's gonna do great things. And Caleb Richmond was the other young man that day, and it's the same kind of story. You know, he had a great career, and now he's in college being in computer science. I, too, attended the Longest Table Event. The theme this year was youth, and we only had one youth at our table. So we asked him, what was the greatest challenge? You know, we hear all the time, there's nothing for kids to do. And he said, there's lots of things for us to do, but we don't have the transportation to get to them, which I hadn't really thought about until he said that. And I mentioned the public buses. We do have public buses that are free that can get you around. But he said, there's a lot of great things to do. We just can't get to them. Because, you know, you just can't walk, because we are rural and spread out. But it's always a great event, and you learn a lot every time you go based on the theme. And the last, what I'll end up with is, we greatly appreciate you all coming in and talking about the library. We've had our own issues with the library for different things. They are very independent. And just make sure you express your concerns to them, just like you did to us. And they're gonna tell you it's free speech, and, but, you know, we certainly understand your point, and I think for the most part, we agree with you. You know, as a man told me a long time ago, he said, "I didn't send my boy to school for them to tell him he thinks he should be a girl." You know, we never thought, when we sent our kids to school, that's what they'd hear at school, is maybe you're not what you think you are. And so.
That's sad.
It is sad. And this man has sent his child to private school because of that. He said, "I don't want them telling my child, you know, all these crazy things, because somebody thinks it." So, you know, it's unfortunate, but you really need to express your concerns to the Library Board of Trustees, and I think the best direction we can give you, so.
I'd like to add one more thing.
Sure.
I forgot, the twenty-fourth was the State of the County Address. I want to thank the Chamber for putting that on. They put it on the Solomon's Day this year. I also want to thank our staff. We had a lot of staff that was there involved that morning, and everything went well. And just like I said, want to take the opportunity to thank everybody who was involved.
Thank you. I think that completes my report. Commissioner Ireland? Somebody have a motion put away.
Right here, right here.
You didn't think we were gonna get to the end?
Yeah, I didn't know if we would see this today. I move to recess to executive session pursuant to General Questions Articles, Section three dash three oh five B, B one I, to discuss the appointment, employment, assignment, promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation, or performance evaluation of appointees, employees, or officials over in the board's jurisdiction. B four, to consider a matter of concerns and proposal for a business or industrial organization to locate, expand, or remain in the state. And B eight, to consult with staff, consultants, or other individuals about pending or potential litigation.
Second. I have a motion and a second to go into exec session. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. So just so you know, Commissioner Cox was here this morning at seven o'clock. Hopefully, we're gonna get out of here at seven o'clock tonight. Because we're not done.
Five-thirty.
Five-thirty, he was here this morning.
How's the seven-fifteen?
Y'all have a great day.